Still have three minutes.
I don't know. I will mention it, though. Thank you. Like to call to order the town council work session for the town of Breckenridge Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. It is two P M. We begin this here this evening, just so the audience knows, with a hearing over an accommodation unit license that will go on for maybe forty-five minutes, and then we will break until three o'clock when the regular work session starts. If you are here for anything under legislative review, we will be taking public comment this evening, not during the work session. So just so you know that ahead of time. And with that, we begin with a suggested here. David Nell Accommodation Unit License Hearing for August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is a hearing in the matter of the town of Breckenridge, Single Family Accommodation Unit Business and Occupational License Number four, six, one, seven, zero, 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 one, held by David Knell for the licensed premises at two oh nine Wellington Road, Breckenridge, Colorado, herein after licensed premises. It is August ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, at two o'clock P M. Town Mayor of the town of Breckenridge, and I am the presiding officer over this hearing before the town council. Purpose of the hearing is to take evidence to determine whether the finance director aired the determination of the number of bedrooms in the licensed premises under section four dash one dash eight dash one at sec of the town of Breckenridge Municipal Code. Initially, town council has adopted rules of procedure dated September of two thousand and twenty-two that do not permit evidentiary hearings to be conducted in a remote platform, but do allow council to vote temporarily suspending the rules upon a two-thirds affirmative vote of the council members in office, or maybe temporarily suspended by general consent. The temporary suspension is presented by the presiding officer if there are no objections from any member of council.
Eric, for the record, can we? The rules were adopted in September of two thousand and twenty-one.
Did I say two thousand and twenty-two? I'm sorry. It says two thousand and twenty-one here. It shows you where my brain is. Sorry about that. Two thousand and twenty-two, or two thousand and twenty-one. You might have to. I might have to leave. Staffer recommends that council suspend the rules to allow Mr. Nell to appear by Zoom. Are there any objections to Mr. Nell's appearance? All right. Seeing none, we will counsel suspended its rules and will permit this hearing in a manner that will allow Mr. Canal to present his case by appearing on Zoom. Report before proceeding, Mr. Canal, do you request to appear today on a remote platform?
And I do. That's the only way I can appear.
Is there anyone here in person to present on your behalf?
Oh, yes, my wife, Marina and Ellie.
Thank you. For the record, I want to state that the town attorney, Kirsten Crawford, will not be involved in the presentation of any evidence in this matter. Will remain available to advise town council with respect to this hearing. Following general procedures will be followed in connection with this hearing. First, Mr. Val will be given the opportunity to present the evidence on behalf of the town's finance department. This may involve her giving testimony and or introduction of documentary evidence. Licensee will then be given an opportunity to question Mr. Val about her testimony or records. Next, licensee will be given an opportunity to present any evidence that he would like us to consider. This may involve him giving testimony and or calling or the calling of other witnesses or the introduction of documentary evidence. Town council then has a right to ask questions of any person who testifies about this matter. This will occur after the testimony has been offered. After all of the testimony and the questioning of the witnesses been concluded, the hearing will be closed. Town council may deliberate and then will render a decision on the matter by voting. We are making a record of this hearing. Be necessary for any person who testifies to identify himself or herself for the record. Are there any questions about the procedures to be followed? Seeing none. Also, for the record, town council should take notice of the fact that the licensee currently holds a town of Breckenridge Accommodation Unit Business and Occupational Sales Tax License Number four, six, one, seven, zero, 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 one. The licensed premise located at two oh nine Wellington Road in the town of Breckenridge, Summit County, Colorado. We now turn to the staff presentation. Bella?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Council. For the record, I'm Bella Del Valle, Accommodations Compliance Administrator with the town of Breckenridge. The license number is four, six, one, seven, zero, 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 one. The license was issued to Mr. Now towards the end of two thousand and fourteen and has remained active through today. Ninth of August, two thousand and twenty-two, as a four-bedroom. It is set to expire on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. County assessors G A S two shows the property at two oh nine Wellington Road as a four-bedroom. The building department permit and the certificate of completion likewise shown show the property as a four-bedroom, which the chief building official will explain in a little bit. Mr. Now sent an email on the fifth of May of two thousand and twenty-two requesting his short-term rental license for two oh nine Wellington Road to be updated from four-bedroom unit to a six-bedroom unit based on work completed in the fall of year twenty, two thousand and fifteen. The standard procedure of following up with the building department and offering a bedroom count verification inspection was offered. Mr. Now declined the offer for an inspection to to increase the number of bedrooms from four to six.
Rick?
Yeah, hi, Mayor, Council, Mr. Now. I'm Rick Fout with the Building Department, Chief Building Official. And this permit in question, B, two thousand and fifty, zero, two, five, was issued on two, two, two thousand and fifteen. While I was not here at the time, I can confidently assure everyone here tonight that documents approved by the building official at that time, namely, the application, the permit, and the C of C, otherwise known as the Certificate of Completion from the town of Breckenridge, approved in two thousand and fifteen. All reflect four bedrooms and four bedrooms only. First main document being the building permit application form filled out by the owner builder, Mr. Nell himself, wherein he writes four on the total number of bedrooms line plus states in the job description line, also handwritten. Finished bathrooms, six, bedrooms, four. The second main document, being the certificate of completion, are often called the C of C, where in parentheses, as summing up of its work description line, has plainly typed on it after remodel total, six bathrooms and six, I'm sorry, six bathrooms and four bedrooms.
A final determination of the finance director was made on June twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Confirming the number of bedrooms is set forth under section four dash one dash two and four dash one dash eight dash one was four. Mr. Now has exercised his right under the code to appeal the decision of the finance director to the town council.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
So I'm assuming that since he had four bedrooms on his application, there was no effort to be made to upgrade his piffs, his his water taps, all of that. There was no, no effort to make the change at the time of application for his remodel.
It may be speaking of two different things. There was an application for building permit to build some bedrooms, and that was the information that I was giving dates-wise, counts-wise, and on that permit, it was always stated to be four bedrooms at the beginning, middle, and end, the beginning being the permit application submitted by Mr. Nell himself. In the end being, as the job closed and finalized, a certificate of completion issued to Mr. Nell as well and accepted by Mr. Now, also stating four bedrooms.
So if he were trying to up the count at the application time, he would have to pay for extra water taps, et cetera, if it was approved. Is that correct?
And at a later time, somewhat recently, he went to the S T R department, tried to amend his license there from four bedrooms up to six. That's kind of where we're at.
Got you. Thank you.
Other, other questions from council?
So he had four bedrooms, and then he filed a kind of a building permit and improvement permit or whatever. And was that? Was that determined? Was, did he declare that was for two more bedrooms? Or did he? Was it for two more bathrooms?
Well, in the permit application, the first document, the application form.
Rick, can you pull your microphone?
In the permit application and process, the first document being the permit application form. He put in the total number of bedrooms as four. In the job description line, when describing what work was being done, the last line of that job description has a tally of the bathrooms and the bedrooms by Mr. Now, and the bathrooms were six, the bedrooms were four. The documentation that was reviewed only displayed the two bedrooms being built, none of the other bedrooms throughout the house. And the certificate of completion was issued out and accepted by Mr. Now. Plainly typed four bedrooms total. That's kind of the facts of the matter.
Holding twenty fifteen. Fifteen. With the supporting documents, is there a plan of the house, and can we see how many meet the definition of bedroom?
That's the center of the permit application packet is the drawings and also narrative. And in the drawings, the two new bedrooms are depicted, and they are labeled bedroom one and two. Narrative discusses all the work being done. And at the end, all written by Mr. Now, sums up the tally of the bedrooms as only being four. So the reviewer at the time, not myself, had those documents from the application to the drawings, to the narrative describing the job all submitted by Mr. Now, and all only exposing four bedrooms total. There were no other floor plans of the rest of the house submitted at that time in that permit application packet and reviewed by that plans reviewer back then and stamped and approved. Discussing six bedrooms, only four.
Doesn't work that way. Other question?
What I said to him is, can't we just go to the house right now and count his bedrooms?
We, no, well, he did. Wanted to consent to that. That would be the process, and yes, it's given momentarily, and that's what he wants us to do.
Easiest thing, wouldn't it?
So let me just repeat that because it's an important point. If Mr. Now wants to request and he consents to an inspection, we can confirm whether there are four or more bedrooms in that property. But he was offered that as an option, and I believe he declined. But perhaps when he presents, he could offer some context to that.
We could rent it for one night and just look it up.
No, not doing that.
Other questions for staff? Now, Mr. Nell, do you have any questions for staff prior to giving your evidence?
Um, I, I don't think so. I think probably I should lay out my side. And obviously, you know, that will probably trigger some questions from staff and from the council to me.
Very good. You may proceed.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Firstly, on the suggestion that you rent the property for a night, I'm afraid our minimum is two. So that, that, that will not be possible. Let me just address a couple of the issues which have been raised so far. One is about PIFs. When we bought the house, it had PIFs paid for three bedrooms and four bathrooms. The fourth bedroom had had a closet added to it on the D L, and there'd been another bathroom added to it as well, presumably without building permits, because those were not there on the Summit County Assessors Database. So at the point where we did this work, we did pay additional PIFs to bring it up to the four bedrooms and the six bathrooms that are there on the certificates of completion. Now, you're, you're probably wondering why on earth I'm troubling you with this when there's, you know, it's clearly four bedrooms on every piece of documentation that's been referred to so far. And the answer is that there are, that, that, there, there, there are different things that are called bedrooms. From the point of view of the assessor and upper blue, for example, it's required that a bedroom has a fixed closet or fixed storage area for it to be counted as a bedroom. And we have four of those. When we did this work, we took a seven-hundred-odd-square-foot basement recreation room. And we built out a semi-self-contained two-bedroom apartment in it. And we added two bedrooms as part of that work. The we had a chat with Upper Blue, and we talked to planners at the town at the time. And the advice that we received from Upper Blue, which I think you've been presented with a bundle of paperwork, which has an email from Blue in it, was that if we didn't add closets to these additional bedrooms that we were putting in, then we would not be liable for PIFs and so on and so forth. It also means that from the point of view of the Summit County Assessor, these are not real bedrooms either. However, they are, as I think the building official confirmed, they're designated on the plans as being bedrooms. And we were required to provide egress windows and smoke detectors and the carbon monoxide detector, all of which we did, and all of which were inspected prior to the C O being issued. Now, if I could turn to what the town code says in terms of what makes a bedroom for a short-term rental. Says a space in an accommodation unit shall be classified as a bedroom if such space is either A designated in Summit County Assessors Database as a bedroom or B designated as a bedroom on building plans that have been approved by the town's chief building official. And we have four bedrooms that are on the Summit County Assessors Database. And we have the two bedrooms on the plans which you should have before you, which were designated as bedrooms on those plans. And the plans are stamped and signed off by Glenn Morgan, who was the town's chief building official at the time. And it was for that reason that I requested that bedroom count be increased from four to six, because that is what the code says that it should be. And in terms of the rest of the layout of the house, in the bundles you've had from Marina, there should be a drawing of the four pages worth of plan which were produced by the previous or produced on behalf of the previous owner. And if you look at those four pages, you'll find that there are four bedrooms there. There are three which explicitly have walk-in closets marked on the plans. And the fourth bedroom, which doesn't have a walk-in closet, has a fixed closet added to it on the side that was nearest the stairs. And that's why when Andy from Upper Blue came around to look at the house, he saw and we agreed that there were four bedrooms there, which had these fixed closets, and sorry about the lights. And therefore, we would have to pay the PIFs to bring, we'd have to pay the PIF for the extra bedroom that wasn't there. I've got one more thing I think I'd like to refer to at this point, which is Rick Holman's email to me of July twenty-fifth. And I've, that should also be in the bundle that that you have in front of you. I've highlighted two parts on it. The first part where Rick apparently confirms that the extra two bedrooms do meet the code requirements for the second bit of the code requirements for a bedroom in that they are designated as bedrooms on plans approved by the town's chief building official. And also that the work done did not change the number of bedrooms in the property, which is the second highlighted bit. And these two things can only be consistent if we do actually have four bedrooms with closets and two bedrooms without. And the, and these two things can only be true if what I've presented to you is correct.
Are there questions for Mr. Now?
Is this advertise? Mike? Is this, is this advertise as a, is advertised as a four-bedroom, correct?
Uh, no, right now, we advertise this as a six-bedroom. There doesn't appear, from what I can see, to be any restrictions in the code on advertising a number of bedrooms. There is a restriction on a maximum occupancy, and we are required to state the maximum occupancy.
And when you, when you say that, when you say that the plant, the stamped plans all have bedroom on it, you are only referring to the place where it says bedroom in the drawing, right? At no time did it say six bedrooms. It's just where it says bedroom in, in the drawing, in the floor.
Yes, that's absolutely right. At no point did we say six bedrooms, because according to the building departments, and I think there is someone here who confirmed this, who will confirm this. According to the building department, a bedroom, to be a proper bedroom, needs to have a built-in closet. Is that correct?
And so that is correct. That a bedroom has to have a built-in closet. And so you said it's consistent with the code, but it doesn't have a built-in closet, so it's not consistent with the code.
No, it's, it is, it is consistent with the code. Looking at the code now, the building code brings into, it, it brings in the idea of a potential sleeping room, I think it's called, which is, which doesn't necessarily have to have a built-in closet. It can, for example, have an en suite bathroom instead, which one of those two rooms does. And those are required to have smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors and egress windows and so on. But really, the, the, the thing for me is that the code itself is quite clear that a room which is designated as a bedroom on building plans that have been approved by the town's chief building official counts as a bedroom for short-term rental purposes. And the two bedrooms that we added were, they had, they had bedroom, the bedroom was written on them on the page that Glenn Morgan stamped. And therefore, they meet that part of the code.
Mr. Now, are you aware of how that capacity number is calculated?
The maximum occupancy?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Double your bedrooms plus four.
Okay. So they are tied together.
Yes, indeed. And if, and if, if they weren't, if we could have a maximum occupancy of whatever we liked, is indeed we could up until two thousand and twenty, I think, then this entire, this entire thing would be moot.
If you explain what you just said, what are you talking about? W bedrooms plus four, what I?
Oh, I get you. And then my second question might be for staff, if I'm allowed to. Can I go back to staff question?
Let's finish with Mr. Nell first, then we'll ask more questions of staff. Any other questions for Mr. Nell? Mr. Nell, do you have anything else to present at this time?
And I have nothing else to present, but I might want to ask questions of staff later on, if that would be acceptable.
Absolutely. All right. Questions, other, for the questions, questions of staff?
Yeah, I just want to confirm what I believe to be the case. In the, in the accommodations unit ordinance, the short-term rental ordinance, it defines bedroom very clearly as the number of bedrooms in the assessor's records, correct?
Correct.
Okay. No ambiguity whatsoever there.
I think I might weigh in. It has the conjunctive. It's either the assessor database or if something different is on the chief building officer's plans or the building plans.
That's in the accommodation.
In the existing.
In the existing one.
We are, we are, I, I mean, I think it's fine to, to say that there, what I believe Mr. Now is trying to say is that while the assessor says four, there's something in our files that indicate otherwise, but that's not our position.
I'm struggling with that because it says four under all the bedroom counts. So I, just because it says something on a floor plan, and, you know, I, yeah.
So can you clarify one thing that he said? He said that when I asked the question, does a bedroom have to have a built-in closet? He said yes, except if it's a sleeping area with, that has a attached bathroom. Is that correct? Or is that? Is that in our code someplace?
Forterm rental code, and what, what can be considered as a bedroom by, as a short-term rental, it has to have a closet.
Okay.
Sleeping room is. Yeah, sleeping rooms just have to have the life safety stuff, CEOs.
Okay, so.
Smoke detectors and.
From a short-term rental, so, okay. Thank you for clarifying.
So the sleeping room has nothing to do with the capacity.
And it wouldn't be under the short-term rental license.
But if these are for, for PIFs, I mean, that's what, that's what we're talking about here, PIFs and tap fees, correct?
No.
PIFs? No.
We're talking capacity, right?
We're talking about the short-term rental license and, and, and do we license it as a four-bedroom, the way we have now? Or do we license it as a six-bedroom? That's what Mr. Now is.
Part of the situation is that he hasn't paid PIFs on the two additional bedrooms.
Lights bedroom.
Right.
Short-term rental bedrooms.
Yeah. But the reason he wants those two additional living spaces is so that he can rent it for more capacity. So it's all.
Other questions for staff?
May I?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. So the first thing I would like, just to, just to reiterate is, just to, just to read from the code what it says about what constitutes a bedroom. It's something which is either on the Summit County Assessors Database as a bedroom or designated as a bedroom on building plans that have been approved by the Towns Chief Building.
Which code are you reading from?
That's the code that's enforced today.
Yes.
Of the accommodations license code or of the building code?
It has the accommodations license code. It's four, one, eight, one, something A nine, I think.
It's in, there's a copy of it in that packet he handed out.
We have it right here. So do we have a copy of the building plans that have been approved by the Towns Chief Building Official?
Yes, those should have been handed to you by Marina.
Is that this la, is that this one here? Which, which one is it?
We had talked about reflecting these on the screen. So Helen, would you be able to do that?
If, if he's citing the STR regulation, I want to see, I mean, what he's, he's hanging this on is this language that says designated as a bedroom on building plans that have been approved by the Towns Chief Building Official. So where, where is that?
But it still says four bedrooms, so I don't take that as being approved.
The four bedrooms are.
It wasn't approved as six bedrooms because when the bedroom count right there says four.
Do you have a bedroom five and six listed?
What's that?
Five and six listed on the plans?
It'd be helpful to get a walkthrough of what we're looking at to understand. I don't know which bedrooms or which.
Rick, maybe you could start and show the beginning of the application and walk them through.
That's the permit application. Building permit that we're discussing right now. Mr. Nell filled out. This is the total number of bedrooms line where he put four. This is the description of the work being done. Which he culminates by putting some totals. Finished bathroom, six bedrooms, four.
I'm sorry, before, before we move on from that, may I just observe that the wording there is that we're going to create two bunk rooms. And, and that was wording which I took from my correspondence with Upper Blue, and that being a bedroom which doesn't have a closet in.
Thank you. Now continue. This is, what we just saw was the first document in the permit application supplemental packet. This is the last document produced at the closing and finalization of the permit, where it also states some totals of six bathrooms and four bedrooms.
And that's signed by the Chief Building Official, correct?
Go back to the ones that has the drawings.
Bathrooms and four bedrooms.
This is the packet between those two documents or the pieces of paper between those two documents that are the plans set. And those are the two new bedrooms constructed during this permit process.
So there's no place that shows the four existing and then the two.
They're labeled as bedroom one and bedroom two. These are some structural notations over top of assessors rudimentary. The new windows, et cetera. This is more of in-plan view. Looks at those two new bedrooms. The planner reviewer noting that it has to have smoke detectors and egress windows. These are some photos as to where the egress windows will be applied. This is a narrative describing all the work. The end of that permit submission packet. And somewhere in here, it also mentions four bedrooms total. I do believe, if anybody sees it, pointing out. I guess it's just that it doesn't create two new bedrooms is right here. Getting, bringing it to a total of six or anything. So the point is, the first document, the permit application form said for the plans reviewed as part of that show only the two new ones, none of the existing ones. The commentary that's a part of that packet of plans mentions two bedrooms without giving a total of six. And the certificate of completion. So the final document in that permit archive in our permanent address files says four bedrooms as well.
If if an applicant wants to change something like this and invites you over to look at the property, do you make a determination based on what you see then, as long as everything has been done according to code? How does that work?
So our current process to update bedrooms, which it has been that if I have, if I have a license holder that says I would like to update our bedroom count, I have a checklist that I go by the bedroom definitions from the STR code. And it's just a short interview to make sure that the space that it's in question meets all the standards. Once I, we determined that this is true and that yes, it is, it does meet the standards just with a voice interview, I pass this information on to our building department. And then they communicate with the owner and they usually schedule, we do have an inspection that is called bedroom verification inspection. There is a fee associated with it and it gets, then there is a building inspector who goes and inspects the space and makes sure that it meets all the STR code. And a new certification, certificate of completion is issued that will say update bedrooms from this number to this number. Once I receive that document, I update the short-term rental license to the new number.
I add to what she's saying, when we go out to inspect at that juncture, at that point, we only declare bedrooms with closets in them as bedrooms as per STR code.
And then would they have to pay the water PIF before you would update it?
Again, only if they had closets in there because that's part of Upper Blue and the county assessors criteria for counting it as a bedroom is that it has a closet.
It is, in addition, as part of the process, as I'm doing the interview with the, with the owner, I do mention that this will probably increase tap fees and there'll be other things that will come and it will, and the updated bedroom count will be shared with the Summit County Assessors Office. This way we're all.
May I hop in here?
Yes.
Thank you. And so just, just so as we're clear, a bedroom needs to have a closet to be counted as a bedroom.
Is that a question for Bella or Rick?
As a question, sorry, question for Rick.
Yeah, for short-term rental code for county assessor policy and for upper blue sanitation policy. To have a closet in them too.
It would have to have a closet. Okay. On the building plans we were just looking at, the two new bedrooms do not have closets. And indeed, in reality today, the two new bedrooms do not have closets.
Which bedrooms? Say that again.
The ones, the ones that are marked as BR1 and BR2 on the thing we're looking at right now.
On the screen now are the two new bedrooms constructed in that permit that we're discussing.
Yeah.
Closets.
Okay.
Mr. Nell, just a second. I do think we should introduce that you, we requested that Mr. Nell have someone in person just because of he's in Greece and we, if we had technology problems. So is it Mrs. Nell is here? I don't know if you want to contribute to the hearing, but if you do.
If you need to step up to the podium and speak into the microphone, and please state your name when you start.
Yes, my name is Marina Janali. So the bedrooms that you see on this plan are these two additional bedrooms, which are the bedrooms in question. Yeah, bedroom one and bedroom two are the ones that are the bunk rooms in the assessors database. But on the plans, they are bedroom one and bedroom two. That's on the plans that have been approved, I believe. Is that right, Dave?
No, sorry. That's, that's additional confusion. And so because these bedrooms do not have closets, and they are not council's bedrooms on the certificate of completion, they're not council's bedrooms for UBSD, and they're not council's bedrooms on the assessors database.
Yeah, right. That's what I said.
Okay. Do you mind if I? So anyway, so, so Rick, these two bedrooms without closets would not be counted as bedrooms on the certificate of completion. Am I correct?
Question? Can I ask a question?
Answer that first.
Nah, that's kind of a confusing question.
Okay, let, let, well, we've, I think we've already agreed that for a bedroom to be counted as a bedroom, it needs to have a closet.
It can have a built-in, it can have a built-in with, built-in armoire of sorts, yeah. It's French.
Yes, okay. But it needs to have some sort of fixed clothes storage thing in it.
Fixed, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Sorry. Rick, I just wanted to check that we're, that we've agreed this much so far.
Yeah, for short-term rental code purposes.
No, Rick, not, not, not for short-term rental purposes.
The juncture is being reviewed under the building codes, which don't discuss closets, they just discuss life safety items like COs and smokes and egress windows.
Okay.
It's not actually termed bedrooms. It's termed either sleeping areas or sleeping rooms.
Okay, all right. Let me, let me ask the same question in a slightly different way. If we put six bedrooms on the, so if there were six bedrooms on the certificate of completion, sorry. If we were, if we had said that we were going to have six bedrooms, then you would not have issued a certificate of completion without a sign-off from Upper Blue that we paid the PIFs for six bedrooms. Is that correct?
I'm not sure on that. That's a.
It's, 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 it's one of the items on the sign-off sheet. Is confirmation from Upper Blue that the, that the PIFs have been paid.
Yeah, that one I can confirm. Had the building application out with six bedrooms as the total number, had the drawings and the part of the permit application packet that's being reviewed had six bedrooms portrayed throughout the house and not just the two new ones in the one isolated area. Well, then the CO would have gone out as six bedrooms. Because for the building code, with or without closets, as long as they have egress windows, smoke and CO detectors are seven feet wide, seven feet long and seven feet tall. Life safety issues, they are considered bedrooms.
Okay.
May, may I make one legal point, legal interpretation point? At some point, the town of Breckenridge made a policy decision that STR bedrooms were defined one way. Whether or not it is different than the building code is, it was an additional requirement in the STR. So we are going to clean up that language purportedly tonight. And that's a policy choice. Do we want to have an additional requirement in STR and carry that forward like we're doing now?
So would, would you say the STR supersedes the, the other code?
When you're requesting an STR license, absolutely.
Other questions?
I have a question for Mr. Nell. I, this is, I'm just confused. Mr. Nell, when you were filling out the application for the work you did, you were intending to add a fifth and sixth bedroom, correct?
Correct, yes.
So why did you number those one and two? I mean, yeah, the sheet you gave the building department was that one sheet. And it says building bedroom one and bedroom two, but you already had four, so it should have been five and six.
Uh, well, okay, we were building a semi-self-contained apartment. And they're the two bedrooms that are within that apartment, hence numbering them one and two.
That would be an ADU then, if it's a self-contained apartment, which is a whole nother set of codes.
It's, but no, no, it isn't. Again, I had a, I had meetings with the planners about that. And we don't have a full-size fridge, we don't have two 20 volts in the kitchen, and we don't have mains gas, which means it's an awesome accessory apartment.
Yeah, so then it's not an apartment, it's the fifth and sixth bedroom. I, I'm kind of hearing you say both things, you know, it's. So, and my second question is, why did you put four bedrooms for the bedroom count on those documents?
Okay.
Really confuses me because now you want to get, use it as six. You yourself put four in your own handwriting.
Yeah, I absolutely did. Do you have a copy of an email from Jan Losch at UBSD in front of you? Marina should have, it should be in the packet that you had from Marina.
Yep.
Okay, so if you if you go down about two-thirds of the way, it says, the reason I asked about the closets is because it is a closet that identifies a room to be assessed as a bedroom and a toilet to identify a room to be assessed as a bathroom. And then the next paragraph, with all the above information, which I'm sure is a bit confusing, as I think we're finding right now. If you broke out your rec room into two bunk rooms, note the use of, it's a different word to bedrooms with no closets, you wouldn't, we wouldn't have to pay the PIFs because they're not technically bedrooms. You would not be charged the, 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 the worst episode, but not due at the time, which we ended up paying. And that is really at the heart of why these bedrooms are not counted as such as part of the planning application packet. And they're not counted as bedrooms on the CO. It's really that some we were, you know, we were basically encouraged by Upper Blue not to put closets in them. They're quite small. They were only going to be used for short-term rentals. They have storage under the beds. We didn't think that we needed closets. And, and therefore we have, we didn't change our bedroom count as a result of doing this work. And if I refer you to Rick Holman's email, which you should have in the packet from Marina as well, you'll find. you'll find the second bit highlighted on there confirms that this building work didn't change the number of bedrooms that we had. Finally, if I could, again, if I could refer you against that packet, there should be a complete set of the plans drawn up by an appraiser for the previous owner. And if you look on those, you can see very clearly that there are four bedrooms. And that's before we started this work. There's two bedrooms on the page that we're looking at right there. And then there's the ground floor and then there's two bedrooms on the first floor, the second floor above that.
Storage under the bed count as a closet?
No, it doesn't.
Not bought from a retail store. If it's built in, then it's then it counts. If it's bought from Pottery Barn, then no days.
Follow this like everyone else. And on one of the areas you highlighted and you were saying that space in accommodation unit shall be classified as a bedroom as such spaces either designated in Summit County assessors database as a bedroom, which we know it's not, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Or designated as a bedroom on building plans that have been approved by the town's chief building official. Like this is what you're hanging your head on and I just don't see six bedrooms on building plans that have been approved by town's chief building official.
That that's yeah, but that's fine.
Because that's the argument, right?
Sorry, could we go back to the previous page that we were looking at on the plans? So the code refers to spaces. And it says that a space shall be viewed as a bedroom if it is a bedroom according to the Summit County Assessor. And we have four of those. Or it has been, it has been, hang on, let me get the exact wording. Almost have this off by heart. It's been designated as a bedroom on building plans that have been approved by the town's chief building official. And right there, what you're looking at, two new rooms which have bedroom sprawled on them that designated as bedrooms and it's been approved by Glenn Morgan, who is the town's chief building official at the time.
Why? Why did you refuse an inspection?
I didn't refuse an inspection. Let me put that one to bed. What I was offered was the ability to I had a I don't have the email right in front of me, but I can I can circulate it later if needed. The suggestion from the building department was that we pull a permit, put in closets and then have a reinspection, at which point we would have six bedrooms for the for everybody's purpose. And we may end up doing that anyway. But my position is that, yeah, okay, it was email from Jesse Laundre, 26th of May, confirming that, and I quote, closets would need to be added in order for those to count as bedrooms, referring to the two bedrooms in the apartment. So given the changes coming up in the building in the short short term rentals code, we may well have to do that. But with the code written as it is now, I didn't believe that was necessary result in if we had to pull a permit, we'd have to do a little bit of construction, we'd have to pay some PIFs, we'd have to have an inspection. It worked, to be fair, neat and everything else. But because those spaces are already designated as bedrooms on building plans that's been approved by the chance town's chief building official, I don't believe we have to do that today.
Thank you. Any further questions? Anything to add, Mr. Now?
I'm a Bella. I'm just going to take one question for you. You said that for short term rental purposes, a bedroom must have a closet. Given the code as it is written, how do you come to that conclusion?
I'm sorry, what do you mean? How do we come back to what?
Okay, so if we if we could just scroll up, stroll back up on the building permit, we have two rooms there which are designated as bedrooms on building plans approved by the town's chief building official, which according to the short term rental code makes them bedrooms for short term rental purposes, but they don't have closets in. Earlier on, you said that short term that bedrooms must have closets for the short term for them to be regarded as bedrooms of the short term rental code. These two things seem to be contradictory. I was wondering if you could just say a few words as to why I might have got this wrong.
It's so. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. So what you're saying is that the the image that we're looking at right now, why is that the one that I did not, I was not able to approve the sixth bedroom based on that drawing?
Yeah, given that those two rooms are designated as bedrooms.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. I apologize.
No, it's good. You go ahead.
In our so in what we base our licensing on is the Cessar count. And then if there is a discrepancy between what we this on the Cessar and what the owner is stating, we have to we have to do a physical inspection, or if we're looking at plans, we have to see the entire house. We cannot, we cannot determine it based on a floor of the house. So I read that.
We've I've supplied you with plans of the entire house. And I think the council members have plans of the entire house in front of them.
Yep, and and based on that, we do have a current precision on up. Like if there is a discrepancy between what the Cessar shows and what the owner presents, we do have a process which involves an inspection at this time. We have to have a physical inspection and to make sure that all the rooms have closets, that they meet the rest of the the criteria. This is the only way we can update it.
And well, with respect, these rooms meet the B leg of the definition of a bedroom for short term rental purposes.
As your testimony on that, you don't have to be hammering that home. We get.
I'm sorry, I keep this. I did keep repeating myself.
Are there any other questions? Does the staff have anything else to add? Okay. Anything else before we close this hearing?
Dave, if they wanted to have an inspection, would that be okay with you?
If if people want to have an informal inspection, if you would like to see the four just the four bedrooms that we have, which existed prior to us doing this work and the fact that these two bedrooms exist, we'd be absolutely delighted.
Okay.
I do think it just is worth standing for clarity that it made perfect sense that they told him he would need to put in the built in closets and then they could do the physical inspection. So that seems like the path forward.
I am going to close the hearing at this point to the public and any further discussion from council?
Curious what Kelly was saying about what your point was where you're going with that.
Well, I mean, I'm just saying that the the reason that the physical inspection didn't occur immediately, I think, was that it was clear that the bedrooms in order to be a bedroom under short term rental license need to have a closet and there was no closet. And so that's why they didn't move forward with the physical inspection.
We're done with comments. But they they have the opportunity to do that after we finish this this part of the hearing, they can come back and speak with staff. We need to rule on what's in front of us right now, not what inspection may show. So other discussion on this, Rick?
Yeah, I I guess I would understand his point of the chief building official documents. If the documents actually said six bedrooms. There's one sheet of plans on this document signed by the chief building inspector and it says bedroom one and bedroom two. In another spot on document, when asked how many bedrooms, it says four. If this said bedroom five and bedroom six and we're asked how many bedrooms, it said six bedrooms, I would agree with Mr. Now's assertion assertions. And however, in light of it saying bedroom one and bedroom two and the bedroom count filled in by the app by the applicant says four, I do not agree with this assessment.
It seems like the problem is 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 we have two different definitions of a bedroom. Is it? Am I crazy here? And that's that's what he's.
Those are two different questions also.
So, you know, like, yeah, these guys have four have six bedrooms, you know, they're advertising six bedrooms and they're making revenue off of six bedrooms. But it seems that through a technicality, two of the bedrooms now don't have closets. And a definition of bedrooms for the STR thing is has to have a closet, though it might not be. Maybe the building code is not as crucial for the upper blue sanitation is not as crucial. So it seems like they're squeaking in on a technicality.
No, let me. Let me just explain first of all that Upper Blue Sanitation District is a completely separate governmental entity that has nothing to do with the town of Breckenridge. What the blue sanitation wants to do with how they charge for PIFs is their own business.
Exactly.
What the town of Breckenridge does as far as STR license is our business.
Right.
And like Dick has said, he the applicant didn't want to pay the PIF fees, which in the end, honestly, Jeffrey, you pay the PIF fees to run the sand plant. And when you're putting a bunch of people into a room, you need to pay the fees to run the sand plant. That's just part of what you need to do, having a home in the town of Brack or in the Upper Blue Sanitation. Let me put it that way. So really, in the end, the applicant didn't want to pay the fee. He sort of got some advice from somebody at Upper Blue Sanitation that doesn't necessarily jive with the way we do business. And that's really, that's, I think, where more of the disconnect is. It's between Upper Blue and the town of Brack. But that's not, we don't follow Upper Blue's rules.
No, but my, yeah, yeah, I mean, it seems like if if we amend the RSTR description, you know, that would solve it. Obviously, you're talking to solve it in this case. But it seems like the town get kind of hoisted on her own placard as far as like, but and it seems like he might, these guys might have squeaked in on the technicality that's, you know, but there again, this is incredibly confusing. And I'm sure if we all took a walk around the house, we'd say, oh, yeah, there's six bedrooms here. But by our own definition, if it doesn't have a closet, it's not a bedroom.
It's not a bedroom. Right. So there are only four bedrooms in this house. And nowhere on this plan does it have anything that says that there are six bedrooms. And hanging your hat on BR one and BR two on this last page is not, no point does that say there are six bedrooms in this house.
When is that labeled bunk room or bedroom?
I have no idea because it's not spelled out anyway, where and on the application, it was four bedrooms and six baths.
I'm confused. Are you agreeing with me?
No, I'm agreeing that there are four bedrooms in this house.
We don't know what you're saying, so we don't know.
Saying there's four bedrooms in this house. If you want to make it six bedrooms, you have to put closets in those bedrooms and pay the sand district fees.
Right.
Plus the water fees.
If you have four bedrooms and two bunk rooms, you have to do the same thing?
If you want to, if you want to.
Rental license with six bedrooms advertised, which, you know, the commensurate number of people, then yes. But if you just want to live that way, then no.
Between living there and renting it. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I move that we support staff decision.
There's a actual motion in here if you don't mind.
Proposed motion. I move that council make a determination that finance director's determination of the number of bedrooms should be four based on the evidence presented at this hearing.
Second.
There is a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Done roll call, please.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
No.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Termination in order will be reduced to writing in a copy will presented on the next council agenda. Written decision is final for purposes of appeal under section four, one dash eight dash one of the code. And with that, we are concluded with this hearing. Going to take a 10 minute break.
And so with that, it's staff's recommendation that you adopt both ordinances tonight on second reading in order to meet your sustainability and waste diversion goals. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jesse. Questions? What is the status of the county right now? Do we know?
I believe Commissioner Blanchard has asked for a work session in September.
Okay, thank you. Other questions on both pay as you throw and hollow license ordinance? This always covers zero waste ordinance, right?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Is there any possibility the county will move it up to a sooner hearing date?
I don't know the answer to that.
Supposed to know everything, Jesse.
I'm sorry, I don't.
All right. Any questions? Where is everybody good on second reading for this this evening? Good. Thank you. Building code changes regarding the ZI ERH program. This is second reading and it's going to be continued to the August 23rd meeting. Does anybody have any questions on that? It's not ready.
Yeah, correct. There's just a minor technicality that came up that we wanted to work through. So we requested continuance to the 23rd.
Thank you, Mark. We have building code fee schedule. Building fee schedule. Mark?
Thank you. Yeah, so attached is some adjustments to our building fee schedule. We had talked a year ago about evaluating our building fees in light of some changes that we're implementing to go to electronic review, which is going to be really helpful to everyone submits plans, you know, electronically and the review, they can be reviewed simultaneously by different departments rather than coming to one department. electronically and the review, they can be reviewed simultaneously by different departments rather than coming to one department, going to the other and that. So we think there's some benefits of it for sure. Anyway, so we looked at ways, is there a way to offset the additional costs? Those are going to come with building fees. So staff took a look at building fee schedule and there were some minor changes from our schedule compared to the counties. And very minor in a few areas, as you can see in the attached ordinance. So anyway, we're proposing to just move to exactly the same schedule as the county has. That will offset the dollars that we're looking at and will both be consistent in terms of our costs, which is pretty much the rest of the code provisions. We try to be as consistent as possible.
Thank you, Mark. Questions?
Makes sense.
All right. This is on for first hearing this evening. We have an ordinance amending the accommodation unit license regulations also first reading. Kirsten.
Mayor, council, while community planning and development did the lion's share of the work leading up to this, I'll just speak very briefly to the approach here. There are two bills that first is to kind of create the maps and authorize the zones. And then that bill also essentially sets the limits of the concentration of license licenses by zones. And the maps will be attached. And then the second bill is really just simply a reorganization of bolt licenses so that it makes it easier in the future to separate the two issues, even though they are interrelated. If you have any questions, please let me know. I know it's been a lot of work, but I think the framework is pretty simple in the bill.
Okay, questions?
I have a question about, a lot of the language talks about tying it to the LUDs because that's, you know, where the language really helped us determine where the higher density units made sense. If there, if as we move forward, there maybe comes out different reasons to include something or disclude something. Are we really trapped in those LUDs or can we continue to sort of brainstorm? And if something seems defensible and works for the town, make a change?
Yeah, no, it's a good question. I think that was the Lanius District and guidelines were the kind of guiding the conversation so that it was a reasonably based approach. But now the maps are the areas and if those lines want to be redrawn for some reason, that can happen anytime you want to, hopefully for comms sake, not tomorrow, but.
I had a quick question, or maybe it's not quick. On page 11 of the ordinance and it's labeled page nine on the, on this, I guess, the physical sheet on the digital. But I think it's page 11. It talks about resort properties and a resort property meeting the criteria in section four, six, five, four C that has a site plan approved by the director of community planning and development as the effective date of this ordinance. And it's speaking to, you know, what is included in this? Can, can you go through what four, six, five, four C is so that we're all on the same page of what resort properties could be included?
I think that's better for Mark or Sarah to answer, but it is a good question. And I think you're, are you at line number, like essentially 16 through 26?
Yes.
Okay. I don't, are you guys oriented with the area? Okay.
What pages is it good, Jay?
It says nine on the sheet, but on my.
What's the first line in, on the page?
The resort property zone shall have no more than.
It's nine.
And while there, are you ready to go as, go ahead, Sarah?
So that's just saying that the property that has a side plan that's approved by the director could be allowed as a resort property. And I think the section it's pointing to is just above certain properties not affected, which is section C. Four dash six dash. I'm orienting myself quickly.
We, we can check numbering and make sure it's accurate and things like that. But basically, you know, we want to make sure that we have things that are in the pike, you know, the expectations. And so if there is a site plan approval, so that's why it reverts back to what's called like a safety clause or a grandfathering clause. I don't know if that helps you. That's very legal, but Sarah can probably speak to how it would be implemented.
I guess my question is, or my clarification is a month ago, when we sat here, we talked about that. Would it be restarting the clock on grandfathering licenses in? That if it wasn't before September 2021, then it wouldn't be grandfathered. And I just wanted to make sure that that, because that was a big, I think of all of us were very adamant on that, from my understanding.
For the 2200 cap, right, Jay?
I'm sorry?
For the 2200 cap.
No, I think this was the exception that we made when we passed the initial 2200 cap about if someone had an active building permit, yes.
It's an active building permit prior to September of 2021, not prior to this ordinance.
This was, this is a resort property one that you. I don't know if I'm on the wrong page, but Jeffrey and I have totally different numbered things and we're both on the same part of Granicus.
Did, we did update, so let's make sure that they have the updated draft. Maybe you guys are going to prior link. Is it possible?
I'm going to the normal Granicus link that I.
I can't even get into mine. I had to get into, onto the town of Brack website.
That's what I did.
So if you logged into the packet prior to Monday.
Yeah.
And we made the edits to this ordinance on Monday afternoon and republished it. If you had already logged in, you need to log in again, otherwise it's going to go to the previous draft. So that may be where some of the confusion or the difference is in the, what you're looking at.
So need to log out?
Or.
You can hit just refresh at the bottom too, I think.
It didn't work for me when I did that, but. I'm on the town of Brack website now.
And maybe that would be helpful. Can we talk a little bit about the, what language was updated and why?
Yep, that was, that's a good question. So against probably Rick and Shannon's request, I was suggesting that we upload this newer version because there was a missing word on the inspection language that left people with the impression that we may just, you know, first throw their door or something. So I felt it was a good idea to clarify that in hopes that it would get out to the community that, no, we're not going to do that work and then only inspect upon your request. So I think I've created confusion with the link.
I just wanted to respond again to Jay, because I'm glad you brought this up, Jay. I, I'm afraid this wording is showing up in two different places. The goal was on the previous page. If you look under two B, does everyone see where that is?
Yep.
Notwithstanding, da, da, da. About halfway down, it says a property that is within or directly adjacent to zone one or two and has a site plan approved by community planning and development as the effective date of this ordinance. The qualifying developed amenity or conference spaces will be provided in an offsite location that could qualify as a resort property. I'm thinking that the number three on the following page is also trying to address that issue, but in a truncated version. And so I think we need to take that under consultation because we may just want to delete that number three here.
And it's referencing the wrong numbers.
Yeah.
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 Thanks, Mark. Does that make sense, Jay?
No.
Okay. Well, go, go to the one that's the, so if we, if we delete the number three and go to the one that is lines 20 through 24, what's your question on that? It's on page eight.
This is in reference to resort properties that have a tie through a site plan with another resort property in order to qualify for their amenity space. Already in existence today. So maybe we amend where it says as of effective date of this ordinance to prior to this ordinance or something.
Great. That would be great. That would, that would fix that.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion there.
Other questions?
I thought we had gotten rid of front desks as a, as a criteria for resort property.
I thought we were leaving it as one of the options.
Yeah, because isn't it the, it's supposed to be like.
Says resort prop, resort property or properties shall provide.
Page you on deck?
Nine.
Pardon me? Yeah. Page nine, lines 20 through 26.
What's the other, rest of the council think?
Okay with that.
Mark, what was your?
I just think the goal was to provide a distinction between resort properties and any number of other accommodations that might be out there. And some of the services they provide that would not typically be provided. So the security, the 24 hour front desk are a couple of those things that, you know, separate them out so that not everyone can qualify under this definition.
No, I hear you. And, and, you know, I think the other ones are appropriate, but I thought we had brought in the amenity space and the conference space. And, you know, because phones, I mean, our front desks are becoming kind of obsolete, I think.
But are they in resort properties? They're not in some of the other things that we've talked about, but.
I, I think it's heading that 24 hour front desk, I think is, yes.
I think that's part of the, how it's.
I think from staff's perspective, it was important and it always has been. It's a key component to them managing their own problems. That we know somebody, while they have access to security, security is not always immediately on the premises, but they can respond to the premises. But somebody at the front desk is going to be able to pick up the phone when there's a noise complaint going on at one in the morning. And that was the whole thought behind that original part.
You okay with leaving it? It's not something I fall in the sword on.
Other questions?
Can we jump back to four, six, five that I think Jay was bringing up? And I apologize, I was jumping around versions here. So section four.
What page are you on?
It's page seven at the bottom.
Right.
And then it goes on to page eight.
Okay.
Yeah, and then it actually goes down to page nine. So that the last clause there, resort property meeting criteria in section four dash six dash five that has a site plan approved by the director of community planning and development as the effective date of this ordinance. Is that related to cap numbers for, for resort properties? Is that saying those, those, those properties get excluded from the cap numbers?
Yeah, we were just talking about, we were going to delete that section. Todd doesn't.
It's not relevant. Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure that that's where we ended up. Thank you.
Other questions?
I think we need to take a look at that section and then the sort of duplicate language that's down below and decide exactly which pieces need to stay.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Any questions on, do you want to talk about the reorganizing, reorganizing title for chapter one? Business and license regulations also, Mark or Kirsten?
It really, I don't think there's any policy change. Well, there is no policy change in that draft. It's just to get it to read better and more clearly.
And it does. There was a lot of stuff you took out that was good, taken out. Other questions? Everybody good with going to night meeting with us? And with some cleanups? All right. That is that. We finished legislative with a resolution approving grant application with the Bureau of Reclamation.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Town Council.
Happy birthday yesterday with that broken, big broken pipe in the street. Special, special day.
It's a, what's a day off without a little bit of work?
Going down Park Avenue?
What's the question?
Like a one foot wave going down Park Avenue. Was that true?
Um, yeah, there was a lot of water that, it was a big water main break. The resolution before you this evening is for authorization, authorization of the town manager to enter into a Bureau of Reclamation grant for, this may seem familiar because we did this not too many months ago. And we were, we did not, we were not successful in getting that grant. So we're, we reshaped it and, and have resubmitted it. And this is for a water meter upgrade that kind of ties in sustainability and some of our water efficiency goals, so.
That whole bill for that will be about a million dollars?
The project is scaling a little bit just because costs are going up and we're still identifying the full scope of it. But I think as it's written right now, it's more on the realm of 1.5. And again, we can, we can scale it once we get it. But again, if we want to do everything with commercial meters and what we'd like to do inside of residential meters, this will really start to connect the users to real time data as part of our.
So you, as a user, you'll be able to have an app on your phone so you know how much water you're using? Is that?
That is the ultimate goal.
That's outstanding.
Yeah, that's the ultimate goal. So you'll be just more educated as a consumer, so.
That's great. I fully support. Other questions for James?
Any other questions I can take on the water main break or anything? I know there's, we're still, our water division is still going through and flushing some hydrants. There's still some areas that even this morning were reported with some cloudy water. And that was really just a function of the pressure loss that was such a large line in the pressure loss that was in the system. And it, it affected at least four pressure zones all the way up into the Wellington neighborhood. And we did have some pressure loss in that area. And that was a function of introducing both air to the line and then also the sediment, so.
How did it, it was underground, it broke?
Well, it was being exposed by the contractor for the work that's taking place at the roundabout. So as part of the design, that hydrant that was located on that corner needed to be moved further to the east. So the contractor is going through all the, all the mechanics of moving that. And kind of during the point that it was exposed, there was, again, a lot of pressure on this line. And the line itself started to vibrate and there's some other pieces to that. But basically it blew it, blew apart at that. It's just, it's very fortunate that nobody was inside that area because it could have been, could have been a little bit different story.
So a foot long wall of water went to this, to the north. And where did it stop? Frisco? Should we charge them or?
It basically went into the storm drains or down, you know, till it rolled into the, into the river.
No flooding that we know of from businesses or anything?
No, we, we came, we came close to getting Alpine Sports, but.
PJ said he, that's who, I'm getting my information.
They had some temporary waterfront there for a little while.
Thanks, James. Nice job handling it, by the way. Great job getting information out too. Public projects update.
Hi.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I do not have anything to add today, but I'm happy to take questions.
Is ALO making any effort?
Is ALO making any efforts to increase enrollment or are they working with the town?
Coffee talk.
There's a coffee talk with CEO. Um, I don't know if Kristen is here. I don't think she is. But Kristen's been working with them on their marketing and really trying to push them to get out there and do some more marketing. We look like we're really well-placed to ensure that we have service available to Alta Verde when it opens, which has really been one of our major pushes for this year is to ensure that we can have that building connected when it's open. We're also, I don't, I know she did a, um, site visit to a couple of multi-dwelling units with a contractor that will wire those on behalf of the town. And there are customers already signed up for service in those areas, so it's moving along, not as quickly as we hoped, but we're making progress.
How about Shawkill and, um, Christie Heights? Any movement up?
So, our hope is that we'll be applying for a grant to do Ski Hill Road next season. We hope that there's money available. It looks like that, that will happen or at least we'll be eligible and that is a similar middle mile grant to what we got to get to Alta Verde.
Yeah.
So they're looking to give money to get to anchor institutions and because there's a red, white and blue, um, station up at the top of Ski Hill, we should be able to get up there. So, right now, one of the things Kristen is working with them, working with ALO on is a a broader build-out plan so that we can look at that plan and look at the costs associated with sort of a bigger picture and then choose, you know, where it makes the most sense for us to go. Um, and so as part of looking at Ski Hill Road is what can we get off of Ski Hill as well? So we'll be coming, when we do the CIP with you, we'll have a better idea of, of what we might be asking for for next year.
Shannon, when we did this, there was, it was under the pretense that not only would we be running our own fiber for ALO, but also that some companies may be interested in buying that access. We ran extra. Has there been any, any inquiries or anyone that wants to use any of that, uh, extra bandwidth?
Really, the only, I would say, unless I'm forgetting something, I think the, um, small cell is probably the most likely customer right now for some of that extra fiber. But we're, you know, we're working on that as well. We're just not to the point where we know what they would need or that they actually have any carriers that are ready to, to install and connect.
Any other questions for Shannon or Shannon?
Coffee talk with them and we can.
Oh yeah, I'm gonna be there.
When's that?
So Friday?
Well, whenever they're.
That's a Wednesday, did?
It's like the eighteenth or something.
There's a lot of stuff yesterday. I think it was in that email.
Did we wanna schedule a site visit for the River Project?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we wanna do it on the twenty-second?
Well.
Is that the date of the next?
The bridge got put in?
We'll start setting those on the sixteenth of August. We won't be completed until, until September.
I made it on the twenty-third, your next meeting, you're starting an hour early because we're bringing in the, uh, right, two P M. on the twenty-third? Saoirse?
Saoirse, I didn't understand you. Um, Sam Light is coming on August twenty-third, yes.
Two P M.
At two P M.
Can we do a noon? Just like today?
Yeah.
Make it a day again.
Yeah. What else am I doing?
Were nice snacks today. There were snacks today.
If you're interested and you wanna get a little up close look at what's going on, we could be out there.
I'd love to go out there.
Optional site visit at noon on the twenty-third?
Perfect. When's the bridge gonna be done?
Completed in September, but we're supposed to start receiving the first pieces on August sixteenth.
Will be cool.
So.
Drive over it till September.
Closer to the end of October.
Thanks for the drone footage. That was cool.
The coffee talk with ALO is the twenty-fourth at seven thirty at Cup of Joe.
Sweet.
Seven thirty?
It's a little early. Any other questions for Shannon? Nope. All right, July ridership numbers for mobility. Hello, Matt?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Thank you for wearing a sport coat.
Just wearing black t-shirts.
Like you're, you're in Aspen.
Yeah, so as you can see, uh, uh, mobility-wise, traffic, uh, free ride ridership has been very strong. We are pretty much back up to pre-pandemic levels on ridership and that's also noting, uh, decreased service offering, so. Something to be proud of. The drivers are doing a fantastic job out there. Give them a fist bump when you can. The only other, uh, update that I have for today is in regard to the black route transition. Uh, on September first, we are going to change that route name to the gold route, so G O L D. Uh, or oro in Spanish, as we also know. So, uh, that will be happening and then, uh, that allows us to utilize the green route for Alta Verde when that comes online in early December.
Excellent.
There was, um, a reference, I think it was in like the meeting minutes, but about running, whether we would be running the buses once per hour or twice per hour?
That was Summit Stage, wasn't it?
Did, did that really mean twice per hour or four times per hour?
Uh, in regards to Alta Verde or?
I, I'll look back, but it said once per hour or twice per hour.
I thought that was in the Summit Stage minutes.
Summit Stage. Um, yeah, so Summit Stage, they had their, uh, planning retreat, uh, a couple of weeks ago and, and there was discussion that later this month, they'll decide whether they can go back to thirty-minute service or if they have to continue with their year service or one-hour service that they started last October. So, so yeah, we should know more on that. They're also looking at some of the Blue River, uh, access as well, so.
Thanks for that. I'm sorry that I confused this.
How's the dog thing doing?
No, uh, I would say that's good feedback.
Seen any dogs, really?
Yeah.
We definitely see them on the north side of town. Um, I think a lot of locals up there.
Dogs in Vale. I just found that out. I was at the Vale Farmers Market and there's no dogs on the public transit there, so.
Yeah, that don't take much.
With that and some notes on there, just so historically, we've got some context of like, hey, we didn't run the trolley this summer because of staffing or anything like that, just to kinda have some benchmarks on it.
Have just negative numbers.
Yeah. With our, with our, uh, we have a new operations manager, uh, the Free Ride, that we are working through kind of a revitalized version of this whole kind of report for you. So I, I do think maybe next, uh, next month, this time, we'll have a better version that will give you a little more background and some color in it.
Thanks. Uh, is it gonna be gold on the maps?
Yes, and we've, we've.
Worry about the gold yellow thing?
We were, uh, we took that in, into consideration. We actually, uh, kind of made some renditions. We aren't printing paper maps as we haven't been doing since before COVID. Uh, but as they translate onto a screen computer, uh, you can see the difference. We pulled a bunch of different versions to make sure that they would look good. So I feel confident we'll be decent. Until we aren't.
Thank you. Uh, committee reports. Any questions, Kelly, to, and add to it?
Just so you're all, uh, aware that we're gonna do a little bit of experimenting with the, uh, employee permit. Add a premium cost, a little bit of a premium cost to the current permit to allow employees to park in the South Gondola. And the parking structure in the summer only. Because we, we can't. It's the only time we can control is the summer. But, I mean, we know we still have some employees that are circling and looking for spaces at different times and that garage is not getting utilized, so.
So.
Some of that's due to the construction, right? We know that people don't even know it's open, but, uh, the surface lot is filling a lot, but the structure has still got a lot of capacity in it, so.
So you're charging a premium because we're concerned too many spaces will get used or?
Cause we want, I mean, it's a, I mean, the same way we charge a premium at the, you know, the parking of the, uh, this, what do we call the structure on Ridge?
Change.
Yeah, the exchange structure.
I, I guess my point, I, I just didn't, it seems like that structure is pretty empty all summer. And so my I'd almost rather say at least this year with all the construction, everything around there is to do it free and see how it's utilized. And then maybe we charge a premium next year.
Oh, we're gonna use it. I mean, there's two months left, so we're gonna go to November one, but, um, we can certainly do it and determine. You know, I still wanna see what its use is gonna be. I mean, when, when it was a dirt lot, it was used heavily. But because of the construction, I'm, think a lot of people just bypass it. But I hear what you're saying and we'll certainly just allow employees to park there, uh, for the next two months, making it very clear that it's gonna change November one.
Great idea, Dan.
It's a good idea, Dan.
Current employees, we'll let, if they have a current employee permit, they'd be eligible to park in there.
The next two months. Everybody good with that? Yeah. All right.
Eric, real quick.
Yes.
Si- since we're talking parking, um, I've had a couple of locals bring up that they, they really miss having like two hours of free parking during ski season and a couple of key lots, you know, wonder if that might be worth a look at for this year, just as a local benefit for you're talking stables and Beaver Run, really, they really liked being able to like jump out to go ski for two hours at the end of the day and park for free.
We don't own those.
What's that?
We don't own either of those is the problem.
Okay. Well, maybe there's some other spot where we could have two-hour free parking that would work for locals to get out and ski, so, just a thought.
I, I've heard that too, but to Eric's point, we don't own neither, it's a challenge. Stables and, yeah.
We could do the parking structure that, like, two.
When they park on Main Street for two hours free, eight to ten, on Main Street, employees can park.
It was, it was end of day, yeah.
There's a fair number of locals that ski at the end of the day.
They took care of that. Vale Resorts took care of that at the Beaver Run lot, that you now can go in and pay a dollar seventy-five for the last two hours of the day at Beaver Run. They fixed that in the middle of last season because they got a bunch of complaints.
Oh, we should, good, no. Publicizing that, because I think that would satisfy those guys.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Just, just put a flyer up at Pub Shop.
Yeah, that's all you need to do.
That's the crowd.
Housing and childcare.
We did also have a meeting this morning and those minutes will go in your next packet.
Uh, there was a nice event today too, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
It's super exciting.
Eric, while we're on housing, I just wanna recognize the staff. I mean, we are getting so much done and it's nice to celebrate it today with that, um, groundbreaking of, I mean, we have a con- this, this, our housing team has accomplished so much. And it's super exciting, you know, to see the next, you know, where, where we're headed for these next five years. It's, uh, you know, those meetings are, they're fun.
Yeah, I mean, it's. It's not fair for like everyone just fawning all over the council. You know, I think we should give some staff some props too. Well, you know, I noticed.
That's who I'm talking about, Jeffrey, is the staff.
I noticed how much better it got since we put ranking on though.
Oh, yeah, yeah, he's. He keeps us on the straight and narrow, I tell you. But Laurie, your team is phenomenal.
Thank you, Laurie.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, events, any?
So just a couple of things that I wanted to point out, and I don't know if Kelly has anything to add. The BTO is planning to have, try to incorporate some, um, components to Friday evening that will be more locally focused. The commission, the committee supported that idea. I think everyone was kind of excited about, um, making really making something, some part of it feel more locally oriented. So there's some description of what they're trying to do in the, in the memo and the minutes. And then the other piece, um, the events committee, uh, and I think Lucy mentioned it the last time she was here, considered of the possibility of a June event that would celebrate diversity, probably be focused more on pride, but could be broader than that. It was proposed as every, you know, anything from a one-day to a three-day. I think we've gotten sort of consensus around the one day, uh, maybe a trial of a couple of components of, of some kind of D E I event on that day. I know, and I think we're all, the, a lot of the committee members are aware and understand that there's not a, a ton of appetite for new events, one, and two, that i- in order for us to be very authentic in how we're handling D E I, it really needs to be incorporated in everything we do. We can't have a, a one event in June and say, hey, we've we've done our job. And so, um, for, for your information, uh, the Social Equity Commission, one of their goals is around celebrating diversity and they have a subgroup that's already working on looking at a calendar and Brooke is, is helping them with this, but looking at a calendar of all the different observances that might happen over the course of a year and sort of going through and deciding which ones we might use to celebrate and educate on social and which ones they would like to celebrate in a bigger way. We'll be bringing this idea of a, of a one-day celebration or observance to them at their next meeting. And I do expect that they'll probably want to be involved and, and support the idea. They do feel strongly that we need to have, um, a, a pride event in the, in the town. So I just wanted to point that out and sort of give you an overview of what they're talking about and what that could potentially look like, but obviously before it gets too far involved, we'll be bringing it back to you for consideration. Do you have any questions on either of those two things? Or Kelly, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I think you did a good job summarizing. I mean, there's a lot of discussions. I think, feel like it's just important to say this is very early on and that, um, there are a lot of different discussions going on and good ideas and we'll get to a place where we can.
Do we have any role models or is there anything that we're trying to structure this after? Is there anything that's happened in Switzerland or somewhere and that we're like, that's what we wanna get to one day?
For this one-day event?
This D E I event?
I don't think so. I think that, um, there's certainly are ideas and that's one thing. It's hard to keep the conversation sort of focused on what the purpose is, not get off on different ideas, although, you know, people do, they brainstorm and it just sort of comes. I think what we all believe is that it has to be authentically created by the community, our community. So while we might get ideas from other areas, uh, I think we all believe it has to, we need people who live here and live that experience need to say what the, what it should look like. So I think we're trying to make sure that, um, people who aren't part of that community are not the ones making those decisions.
And it sounds like it's very much in its infancy, this idea, so.
Yes, very.
Interesting. As it evolves.
Yes. Um, I had one more, just sort of share this with you and see if you have any concerns. The rec film has gotten a sponsorship from Subaru. And so similar to what they've done with Do Tour and Snow Sculpture, they, for the weekend of Film Fest, they'd like to have three cars in Blue River Plaza. Um, we just wanted to check with you and make sure that you don't have any concerns before giving them a thumbs up to move forward with that.
Be able to use them.
Yes.
Will they be electric?
No, um, that is the same question Jesse asked. It is a great question. Uh, apparently Subaru does not have an electric vehicle. So, boo, I know. That is very unfortunate, but. Well, if you all don't have any concerns about that, we'll let them know they can move forward.
I'd like to have, have that new wilderness. I'd like to take a look at that.
Okay.
New kind of a more burly SUV.
You can do.
Yeah, just run it up the flagpole.
Other questions on events?
They do have electric. Will you ask them if they could? Electric or hybrid? That's our strong preference.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't know why they said they didn't have them.
But, but if, if it has, comes between electric and the one I want. You should go with the mayor pro tem. She's very mean.
Uh, okay, anybody need a break? I'm gonna take five. Then come back with, uh, policy for mass work session. Okay, we are back and moving on with policy for mass work session.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Steffi Shrek, Planner Two, here with Mark Truckee. So we're here for a work session, Policy Four R, which is our mass, mass section of the development code. We're here to talk about mass bonuses. So staff was asked, um, that we consider policy changes related to these mass bonuses specifically for the use condos, hotels, inns and lodges. Basically due to the impacts created by giving them an additional bonus for mass. So the concern here is really whether or not the existing mass bonus in the code is reasonable for this use. And if it results in a much larger size than what's appropriate. So, um, the existing code allows for a 30% mass bonus right now for that use. And that bonus allocates, um, extras for areas such as lobbies, common areas, hallways and amenity spaces. So staff wants to discuss that figure and whether or not amenity space should be part of this. So if the areas were not counted as a mass bonus, this would obviously be need to be provided within the allowed density and mass onsite. So there's just no extra there. We did want to mention the code changes would apply to new projects only. There's a memo in your packet. There's some history of previous ordinances that went through. I'm not going to go into that in detail. I'll touch on this briefly later. So then just for some context, there are a couple of examples. Projects are usually around the 20 to 25% of existing non, non amenity common area. There were two. One was 26. Um, that's Main Street Station and Blue Sky Condo was 30%. But for the most part, they're 20 to 25% of those non amenity common areas. So we did talk about three options staff provided to the planning commission. Last week at the August second meeting, these options included totally removing that mass bonus, cutting that mass bonus in half, so 15% or cutting it down to 25% just to kind of fit in what, what's out there today. So we also suggested that all bonuses should not include amenity spaces. The commission supported the 15% mass bonus, not including amenity space exclusive. Sorry. So just a 15% mass bonus. The commission did indicate that it was appropriate to provide some mass to account for common areas such as hallways and lobbies. Um, and they thought that 15% was reasonable, um, for common spaces. And they thought that the higher percent, for example, 25% would result in additional massing and over programming of sites, which is kind of what we're hitting now. Um, and that these would be out of scale with the town character. Um, they also wanted us to focus on quality over quantity. So just really quick, we also wanted to know, um, another section of code that we'll have to look at, which is in regard to this 24A social community requires hotels in lodges. It says that they shall provide a one to 35 square foot ratio of recreation and leisure amenities. So that's something we'll have to look at and probably remove because it's kind of contradicting if we drop that. And then just to kind of wrap up, so previously, I'm sure you're all aware, the town, we were really looking to incentivize hotels and condos to provide these amenities to get people up here, make them stay. So now we're kind of shifting gears and realizing that we might not need these bonuses for some of the bigger buildings. So we did have two questions in your packet. We wanted to mention that staff is supportive of planning commission's decision to drop that bonus to 15%. So we wanted to see if you all are supportive of the 15% mass bonus recommended by staff in the planning commission. And then if the mass bonus is supportive, um, do you all want, support the decision to exclude amenity spaces from that? So.
I'll just add a little bit. Um, yeah, Steffi touched on this. I mean, 10 years ago, there was kind of a different attitude with the council at that point in time. There was a, you know, let's, let's incentivize amenity spaces.
There was a councilman that was pushing that.
Yeah.
In particular.
And, uh, and so we gave positive points back then. It's only several years ago. We took that out of the code, but we gave positive points for providing additional amenities. And those numbers got bumped up over time. We did in those comprehensive code amendments, three years ago, we adopted those. We had, um, some of the architects, granted, there may be some interest or conflict there, but, um, you know, pushing for higher percentages. And we actually bumped it up at that point in time from 25 to 30% based on the input there, but it seemed like we may be at a different point now. And I think the, the commission definitely recognizes that it does tend to drive up near the overall size of, you know, some of the buildings that you see as a result of this. As Steffi mentioned, a lot of the ones, just hallways and common areas alone have been 20%, maybe a little more than that even. So 15% is ratcheting that down a little bit. But, um, you know, Mike Giller, you know, who, you know, one of our respected commissioners, you know, he did some research. He was like, a lot of places use 15% kind of as a rule of thumb on this in terms of, you know, hotels, lodges, those type of buildings. So anyway, just a little more background on kind of how we got there.
Questions?
Yeah, that's helpful. Um, we have great commissioners. Glad he did that research. Were any of those communities with a 15% bonus similar to ours, more resort based?
It wa, it wasn't that specific. It was more just some Google searching he did on required, uh, common areas associated with, um, you know, resort type development.
Cause I asked a couple of our local architects if they were aware of any of these bonuses in other mature resort communities in Colorado. And to their knowledge that, that, that's very much a thing in the past. Aspen's done away with it. Bale's done away with it. And, um, none of them are doing it according to, to the architect I spoke with.
I mean, all we're, as you lower this, all you're doing is asking the, them to use the density that they have onsite to provide.
And I also think we realized when we were really incenting the amenities that, some of it ended up being used for day use, which was really contrary to what.
Use of what?
Day use.
Day use. And, um, which is very much contrary to what we're trying to do. So.
Other questions?
So Vale and Aspen have zero, not 15%.
According to the architect, yes. Yes. And she was pretty, pretty sure of that. And I think she's done some work over there as well.
And thing we might want a little, um, feedback from you on is how you feel about conference spaces. So that can be considered amenity, but it's also kind of a, that's something that's, uh, also valued in some, you know, from some perspectives.
Honestly, I think it'd be nice to make conference space part of a development agreement.
Agreed.
Yeah. You know, if a developer comes in and says, I want to use, you know, our 80 SFEs for the hotel, but we really do need some more for a conference space. We think it's important to the town. Then we can have some say in exactly what size.
Yeah. And what's your market and so have me learn more and really make it tailored to the, to the project.
Then.
My feeling is there's, none of our other businesses get these kinds of incentives in these, you know? I mean, you think restaurants, retail, you know, they've got non-income producing square footage in their spaces and none of them are getting bonuses. Frankly, the PIFs for those are quite high. With no bonuses or incentives. So I, for me, I'm, I'm a zero, um, to level the playing field. And also we're hearing loud and clear from the community, they feel like some of these bigger projects are over programmed for the size of the lots. And, uh, so for those reasons, I'm at zero.
Yeah, I'm at zero as well for the same reasons and.
I'm sorry, can I clarify zero for amenities or zero for any?
Zero for bonus at all.
Any bonus. So no extra area for?
Let's make it like all the other businesses. Nobody else gets that.
Yeah, I, I'll, I'll just clarify for you. Summit County does have that same exception we do for like hallways and, and lobby areas to let you know.
Um, I'm also a zero. I was, I wish that the planning commission had discussed that more. I mean, they were very clearly for the reduction, but I didn't see in the notes much discussion on zero. So I feel like if staff's, um, very concerned about going to zero, I would be okay with looking into specifically, do some of these other mature communities, um, really have they all gone to zero? Just to, you know, for our knowledge and comparison, I'd be happy to give staff more time to look into that. But that's the direction, zero is the direction that I would be.
Zero.
Yeah, we have the, the development agreement as a tool for other situations, but would love to hear staff's input, but I'm a zero.
What are the ramifications, long-term ramifications that I wouldn't be thinking about by eliminating the bonus? Like, I, I know that this was something that was put out in the seventies, I believe, uh, originally was having a bonus mass structure for, and, and I think during those days, we were seeing like exterior staircases and things like that. But wha, what could happen? Like, take me down the road five years of what would happen if there weren't bonuses for hallways, for lobbies, for maid quarters or whatever it might be.
Yeah, dude. It's hard to, you know, predict that obviously, but I mean, it, they may just work it. I would think to have a good product, you would still just provide that amount of space, but it's possible that, you know, people could have architects looking at cutting corners to make things smaller that still meet code. But kind of, you know, reducing the size of things like lobbies and other things to, so they're minimizing the amount of space that they're giving up that they can't use as actual density for units.
So hallway, but hallways aren't they go to three feet wide, right? Like.
But there's, there's a limit with the building code, but yeah.
They have to be what they have to be.
But, yeah.
If, if the lot, the area, it has a specific amount of mass density to it. Then if we're bonusing, whether it's 15% or 25% or 30%, we're over developing that lot. Am I not thinking about it in the correct way?
Yeah.
That's how I see it.
It's a matter of perspective.
It, it just seems that like the market would drive the, the, not the amenities, the common area spaces that if you're trying to put a nice product out there, you're not going to have, they still have a lobby, right?
Yeah, that's what you would think. And yeah. Once again, to Steffi's point, um, you know, this obviously can't apply to any application that's in the door already. So be for something new.
I also am at zero. Thank you. Didn't expect that from everybody. Nice job.
Would everybody be interested? Kelly asked about some additional research to see if other resort communities are implementing zero?
Yeah, I'd still like to see it.
Let us ask a question and put it out.
Stress mature resort communities because I think this comes into play appropriately for us years ago, when you're not mature yet, you're trying to grow your, your, your business.
Our fellow past members and see, you know?
All right, CMC Housing Courtesy Review.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Sarah Crump, Planner One for the record. Tonight we'll have the public hearing on the CMC Housing Phase Two building. It's, um, identical to Phase One and on the same site. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time, but I'll give a short presentation tonight and we'll have comment period for the public hearing.
Questions? Are these prefab type? No stick built?
No, they'll be built onsite.
Everybody good with this?
Oh, yeah.
He's a group today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Planning 101. We didn't think we were going to have time for this. Oh no, this is good stuff.
Kirsten can really talk now. Document.
We got an hour and a half.
Can I request just? Put it in wherever it seems like it makes sense to put in. I would love to hear more about besting too. Tell besting fits into this whole 101. I mean, I, I, I know, but I think, but I'd love to hear a little more.
So we've provided a super broad overview of a number of topics and that's exactly kind of, I think, what we want to hear at the end, Dick, is things that you guys want to hear more about so we could follow up with subsequent conversations. Um, I'm just going to hand it off to Kirsten for a minute to just kind of give you the overall context and then I'll take you through some of this. And then she probably has a few things to talk about at the end.
We're going to go through every single slide in the deck that I provided. Um.
And then solve, is that what you're saying?
We're not, we're not going to do that at all. Um, the, the reason I put it in here, in, we are having this presentation on August 23rd where the deck may be more relevant to that conversation, but I put it in here simply to, um, highlight one thing, and that is when you are sitting here in the amenity bonus discussion is a perfect example of your, in your policymaking capacity where you can do your own research, run your own numbers, talk to people. And then when you get into most land use decisions, you're putting on more like a judicial hat. And you're not supposed to be running around and, um, talking to people and doing your own research because it's typically based on criteria that and the evidence in the hearing. And that's just all I wanted to highlight. I think Mark tried to kind of distinguish in the materials that some of the decisions that are legislative versus.
And the criteria is primarily the code.
And that criteria is the code, exactly. And the, the trigger is when the application is filed at planning commission. And I am told that, um, Tim Berry always made that very clear. Um, an application has been filed. So when that has happened at planning commission, that's why you'll find us saying the application's been filed. We need to discuss that at a hearing. And, um, when we, on August 23rd, I know we can, um, go into more questions about the legal kind of parameters and risks, but that's all I wanted to note.
Okay. So I brought some documents up on the screen just to kind of show you what I'm talking about here. But first of all, some of those legislative items are like plans that we've adopted and actually the, the code itself that we had, you guys adopt going through a process and the comprehensive plan was done. Geez, it's 14 years now, Eric.
I can't believe that.
But, uh, that was one of my first projects when I came in here, um, to help finish up. But, um, anyway, that just provides overall guidance on any number of issues. Um, we use that actually to kick off this sustainable rec plan. Um, that came up as a big issue in the whole comp plan process, but it provides overall guidance on kind of what's our philosophy towards land use. Moving on from that and using my thing here if I can. There it is. Sometimes, um, the Joint Upper Blue Master Plan. This has been a guiding document as well. This has been a guiding document as well. Now, this is one we adopted both with the Town of Blue River and Summit County. So it's an overall vision type document that looks at future land use in the, in the whole upper blue. And it's a pretty important document. I think it was originally done in ninety-seven. We updated it back in two thousand and eleven. But there are some pretty important concepts that were adopted in that plan that have helped shape the future of this basin, one being backcountry preservation. I mean, our open space efforts, our TDR program are all kind of around that, you know, evolve around that. Kind of was started as policy here. And really, the TDR program was based on a major policy in here is like, we're not gonna allow upzonings in the basin as a whole. So the amount of density that's in the basin today is, is not gonna be exceeded in the future. And so for individual properties, you could upzone, we call it, where you increase the amount of density through like a master plan, something that would come to the council. But the only way you do that is by transferring density from somewhere else in the basin. And so that's how our whole TDR program got kicked off, where we're, we're locking up open space in the backcountry, moving the density that's on those open space parcels down into town to add density to some project. And we've had any number of them over the years that we've done. It still has to go through a review by the council to make sure, and the planning commission and council to make sure that it fits on the site, whatever we add in terms of density. But that's been a big program that we've been involved with for many years now and continue to coordinate on with county.
Mark, on the.
Yeah.
TDR, we always talk about the TDR bank.
Yes.
Have a ton of housing projects in the work, like how is our bank, do we, how close are we to?
So that's an interesting question, Karo, because we actually have kind of like two different banks. We have a TDR bank that the county administers on our behalf as well. That's for all that backcountry land. When we buy land, we put it into the bank, we strip the density off of it, take the development rights off the land that we bought out there. But then those development rights become available in the bank for sale for someone down in town. And that's usually like a private developer. So that's, that's the bank for the normal TDR program. But then as far as housing goes, we have a bank of density. It's really our town inventory of density that we hold. And so we have a spreadsheet that has some like five hundred and fifty units that we hold on areas like the Ice Arena F Lot, density that's assigned around town on pieces we own. And what we're doing then is we're actively going and stripping that density off to account for projects that have workforce housing. So like, we'll have to come to you pretty soon now to do the same thing for Altitude Verity Two. We've gone through the process of approving it now before they, you know, get their, you know, CO, they're gonna, we're gonna make sure that the density's been moved over there. And we did that recently on Altitude Verity One, for example, so. Yeah, you're welcome.
Mark, how much density is left in the backcountry bank, do you know?
Quite a bit. I don't think they've even touched the B and B mine yet. Tried to kind of leave that alone, and that's eighteen hundred acres. And the way it works is it's one unit per twenty acres, so that's, do the math, I don't know. A lot of units right there. And then there's other, we've also continued to acquire other backcountry. And so the, the county and us will kind of go in and strategically pick which ones we're gonna take density off of and then put it in the bank. And so there's, there's not a big limitation on that in terms of there's, there's future opportunities to utilize that potentially.
Is there a danger to having density in a bank where we're allowing for additional, instead of just extinguishing the density from the backcountry or from open space, of having the ability to transfer it in that allows for larger structures or?
Well, yeah, good question, Jay. I'll say two things. We have safeguards. One is the planning commission and ultimately you guys still have the control on what you allow in a piece of property. Someone can propose to bring ten TDRs over to increase density. You don't have to allow that. And then the other thing is the TDR bank itself, the county typically will not put many units in there. And in fact, a lot, a lot of time, we've had a general rule of we'll keep fifteen units available in the bank. But sometimes it's stripped, it's down to three or four. And a big project comes in, we're gonna need to strip some density to add in for this particular project, but we never have much in the bank at one time.
Thank you. Jay, I think a better question is why do we charge so little for a TDR? And that's something that Gary Gallagher used to sort of rail about on all the time, that the, the value of that development right is way higher than what we charge. The problem is because this is a joint deal with the county, that's where we've sort of had.
Have we talked to him recently, Eric?
No, it hasn't. It's been a while. It's been since Gary that we've tried to push that along.
We could bring that up again.
I'd like to revisit that.
I think it got bumped up to like, and quote, correct me if I'm wrong, you're like ninety in the upper blue a couple of years ago. But you're right, that's incredibly low. You could double that and it's still a deal.
Yeah.
It's ninety-nine thousand right now, and you're right. But to Eric's point, it's a lot of work. And not that it's a problem for staff, but just getting the county on board with making the change. And, and so what we do is we base it on methodology. What does it cost to go out and buy land in the backcountry? And we, that's the nexus we've used. So there's always been a nexus related to it, so that's.
Shouldn't it be on the valley floor? Because that's where it's going.
That's where the nexus should be. That's always been the argument is between those two valuations. The valuation should be where the density is ending up, not where it came from. And that's how Aspen claim is, you know, irrelevant.
Aspen has theirs based on some kind of market.
And that's what it should be.
So there's good, it's been skyrocketing. And that's exactly what it should be, I think.
Yeah.
Get on that, would you?
What's that?
Get on that.
I think it's a great joint topic with VOCC, that's the entree to get that started.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, I agree.
It is a great idea.
Any other questions or comments on Join Upper Blue? All right, land use districts, we, you guys have been getting really indoctrinated in this one over the last couple of months with STRs. But there's our land use district map and it outlines all the areas. And this is our zoning, essentially how we use it. Most, most jurisdictions will have zoning, you know, C one for commercial, C two residential, R one, R two related to density or something like that. Ours is a little different. It's geographically defined like most zoning districts. But it's, it's, it's land use districts and it allows for, i- i- it sets out the type of uses that would be allowed and the densities that are allowed. So the example I think I gave was the Weishorn, two units per acre up here, residential. And so, but, and then I think I provided an example on the, on the next page of what that looks like. And I think you guys, some of you have seen these, if you pulled up our land use guidelines, and there's all kinds of them there.
Hey, Mark, how big of a project, I'm actually, that's probably a dumb question, but how big of a project is it to update those?
So the issue with up, we could, Dick, but the, i- if you're updating these, you're essentially changing the zoning for a lot of people's, hundreds of people's property, just in one district alone. And so you, there'd have to be a notification process that went out to everyone and give everyone an opportunity to participate. It's a legislative process, but there'd have to be notifications sent out to all the landowners within a particular land use district. And they, you know, it'd be up to you guys, obviously, but then you'd hear the pros and cons of, if you were proposing some update regarding doing that. So typically, it's not something we've historically done hardly any of, but it's not impossible. It's just, you know, you have to go through that step.
Would you do, just, you could do them like one land use district at a time. You don't have to do all of them, right?
No, right. Yeah, if you tried to do them all, that would be a.
We've been working with them so much, it's kind of, it seemed somewhat evident that a few of them are pretty outdated. But I mean, I, it's also a, you know, we're opening a can of worms there, I think.
Yeah, there's definitely some outdated language in some of these, Dick, for sure.
But on the other hand, though, a lot of that stuff's already been built, so.
Okay, moving on, I just wanted to briefly talk about master plans. The one I'm gonna pull up right here is just an example, and that's the Peak Seven, Peak Eight Master Plan. And it outlines in this, in this you have just a few different defined areas. And then like C peaks, well, B is a good example, Peak Eight Base, or A, Peak Seven Base. And then we'll have a table up here, which I'm not gonna blow up, that talks about the density that's assigned to these areas. And then a number of other-ish things that are associated with it, you know, some might talk about, you know, avoiding cucumber gout, protection of that and that. So the master plan is essentially, is a document that you guys ultimately approve. It would go to the Planning Commission. We just approved one for, for the North Gondola Lots. And it replaces the land use districts. It's more specific. It looks at, a more specific look at, rather than just a one-size-fits-all that the land use districts have. So we look at at least staff-wise as a tool to actually guide better development in terms of that we can get more refined in terms of how we're looking at something. So that's, that's essentially what a master plan does. It takes a place of the zoning that was on the property previous to that.
Can they be contradictory to the logs?
Yes, they can.
Yeah.
We'll certainly look at, we typically look at what the lug says when we're evaluating the master plan. But end of the day, there can be something that's, you know, varies somewhat from that. But we typically try to stay within the parameters of the lugs. The next thing I provided is an example of a subdivision. So really in the subdivision process, and you just saw one of those two come through after the master plan at North Gondola Lots. This one's of the Highlands. And the, the, the real, the only purpose of the subdivision is to break the land out into pieces that then can be conveyed. I mean, that's essentially the purpose of them. In the case here, what you can see is not only do you have lots shown, but then you have disturbance envelopes within those lots. And that's an important thing because back in the day, we didn't have those. So like, neighborhoods like the Weishorn is all we had was setbacks to say where a structure could go. In our newer subdivisions since the late nineties, maybe around two thousand, we always have these disturbance envelopes that define, this is where the home and all, pretty much all disturbance, except for the driveway, has to, has to occur. And that's to, obviously to reduce the overall disturbance, but in some cases, there's wetlands, steep slopes, other things. Usually, these are in these locations for a reason, a lot of it. And sometimes it's environmentally based on why they're in those locations. So those routinely come through, you know, we don't see a ton of subdivisions. You know, the county will see more because they've got a lot of raw land out there that people are out dividing up. And obviously down in the front range is where those things are just going crazy out into the, towards Kansas. But, uh, but anyway, but what we do see a fair amount of is, is, they're called subdivision, but like condominium plats where someone comes in and breaks up a building into different ownerships, that type of thing. Or when a duplex is created, you got, you're gonna create two, two lots on that duplex or two building envelopes there. So that's just a little overview of subdivisions. I wanted to step back. I missed one item, and that's just, we, in our permitting, in the, in planning, we have class A, B, C, and D applications. As are all the big ones, like the big condo buildings, commercial, any major big things. Class B, the good example is a new single family in the historic districts. It's not historic property. Class Cs are, include some residential primarily. Class A and B go to Planning Commission for usually multiple hearings, preliminary and then final hearings. And then eventually show up on your Planning Commission decisions. Class Cs show up as a consent item on the Planning Commission's agenda. And the Planning Commission can just accept those, or they can, like you, they could call up an item. And so if they, and they do that routinely. And so more, more often recently, I think, because Jay would attest. And so anyway, when they do that, then they make a decision on that. And finally, class Ds are, we've got two kinds of Ds. D majors are for certain single-family residences, basically, they already have building envelopes like this subdivision right here. We just go through a staff review process. And then finally, D minors are really minor things that, that we process on a daily basis. We, we do hundreds of those a year, you know, painting, gates, fence, excuse me, fences, hot tub permits, all kinds of stuff. So tree removal goes on and on, so.
Hey, Mark, speaking as a planning commission, when's, when's the new, are there new appointments available pretty soon?
Yes.
When's that?
In, their terms will end at the end of October. And so I've already heard from George Swinson, he's not gonna be re-upping. And then we have three other commissions, I think Mike Giller, I think Alan Frechter, and one other that's up for reappointment. I don't know if they're gonna re-up or not. We're hoping some of them do. So, yeah, so that will be advertising in September and will be coming, they'll be coming to you guys for interviews in, in October. Yeah. Uh, let's see here. Moving on. Development code, I just pulled a page out of the code just so you could see it. But anyway, that's our, that's kind of our bible that we use to review developments against. And we've got fifty-two policies in the code that address all kinds of different issues. And then the staff has to do an analysis. There's absolute policies, and then there's relative policies. The absolute policies are basically you're required to adhere to those. And if you're not meeting an absolute po- policy, your project fails, has to meet those requirements. Most development codes and most other jurisdictions, that's all they have. It's like you have to meet these standards. What we have also are these relative policies. And what those do is those are more subjective, but they allow us to incentivize good development and to provide a disincentive to bad development practices. So for example, under Policy Seven R, which is about site buffering and site disturbance, if there's excessive site disturbance associated with the project, it's, it probably is gonna get assigned negative points. Now, on the other hand, there may be, there, there's other ways that they can overcome those points by getting positive points in some other area. I think the example I gave here, a strong landscaping plant, might get a couple of positive points. And so there's ways to do that, providing EV chargers gets positive points. There's a number of envi- energy conservation ways that points are made up as well. But anyway, you finally have a point at the end that tabulates all the positive and negative points that are assigned. It has to be zero or better in order to pass. If it's a negative number, it doesn't pass. And at that point, by definition, it has to fail and, and get rejected. We, we don't get to that point because what happens is applicants change their, you know, their applications. so they get to a passing analysis, or a lot of times, which Jay can attest to, we've had to like, continue a hearing, then they come back and make changes, so they, you know, so they get to that passing analysis. So, that's just a real high. High-view look at the development code, we could go into it for days, but.
Hey Mark, one of the things that, yeah, we spoke a lot about was precedent recently, and how that applies to absolute and relative policies. Can you give like a 30,000-foot overview on, when does precedent overrule policies, and when do the policies overrule precedent?
Thanks, Jay, that's a great segue to my very next topic here. So. So. An absolute policy. There's not a lot of. There's not a ton of precedence there, because it just has to be met or not. Now, sometimes there's still an interpretation of those policies that we have to make. But, where this really comes into play, is on the points. And, it'd be nice to say that our whole code, our staff can just go and look at the points for site disturbance and say, yep, that's negative four, that's negative two, or that's positive two for good landscaping or whatever. But it's not that simple, because it's not all quantified, unfortunately, it's hard to quantify some of these things. And so, we rely on precedent in order to come up with a point analysis, it's something that's legally defensible for us. And so what we want to do is be as consistent as we can from project to project. If we said that, you know, this large area was disturbed, and it got minus four points last time, and there were some trees associated with it, if we had see a similar type of proposal come in again, a couple months later, we're gonna go back and look at those previous point assignments and say, yeah, this is what it fit last time, and so we think therefore it should get minus four points. Now, what we do is every time we have a project that gets points, we have spreadsheets, and this is an example of it right here, that I pulled out of, we have spreadsheets for every single one of those policies that I was talking about, that show you what the point assignments were, and this doesn't have all the information on it, spills over to the next page, and I wasn't able to pull that in. But anyway, it will say, okay, minus four points was assigned for site disturbance associated with this project. And so, then we can go back, look at the site plan, make comparisons, and so typically, what you'll see in a staff report to the Planning Commission, ultimately to you, is like, here's past precedents, three or four projects that we approved in the last couple of years, that very similar in terms of, you know, the point that, assignment that was done there, this project is very similar in nature. And so that's how we use the point assignments and precedents, and basically, we just build it up over time. So the more examples of this we have, probably the stronger foundation we have in terms of feeling pretty good about where it's going. Now, where this changes sometimes is if we change the code. If we change the code, and we start to say, well, example is that, is we change the way we looked at retaining walls, and you don't have, they used to get negative points pretty much if they were over four feet tall. Now, the code says, if the retaining walls, if there's, you know, a taller retaining wall, is a better option and reduces the amount of site disturbance, instead of putting in a couple four-foot walls, that may make sense, and so we won't assign negative points to it. So at that point, then we're gonna change our whole way we look at precedents to go, only going back to recent projects that were evaluated under the new interpretation.
But, do you ever look at a precedent, you, you do something, and you say, oh, we screwed that one up. And then, and then, then does that set a precedent down the road, or do you ever kind of say, yeah, you know, this, this presence, this one should not be considered a precedent, because we, whatever, for whatever reason, you know, in retrospect, it wasn't a, it didn't work, it wasn't proper, you know, so, do you ever kind of like.
Well, we try to be.
Take back a mulligan.
So we try to be consistent, but once in a while, that issue will come up for some particular reason, sometimes it's very site-specific. And so we'll actually do findings about it, that in this case, we, you know, made this decision on here, this should not be considered precedence for other projects, because there's very site-specific reasons why this happened. But probably the better answer to that question, Jeffrey, is, if we're running into that problem, we need to change the code, because staff needs to be administering the code and interpreting it correctly, and there is some problem there where we weren't able to do that.
I mean, we're always, I mean, every, we all learn from our mistakes, you know, so, do, well, I mean, yeah, like, I'm reevaluating Rankin's number right now.
But what you're saying, it can't be retroactive, we have to kind of recalibrate through legislation.
Yeah, I mean, we can't just arbitrarily decide we're gonna change how we assign points. No, so it's, it's based on our body of evidence from past projects we evaluate.
I think that's such an important question, to just put a finer point on it, also, when an application has been filed, that's not the time that you can change the policy and apply it to that applicant.
I can't do it on the fly.
No.
Real quick, you talked about these absolute policies, I feel like we've seen a couple of different applications come up where they violated absolute policy. Explain to me the process of like, approving that kind of project, does it come to council?
Yeah, so, the, the ones you saw like that, Todd, were town projects. So, now I was gonna hit on that a little earlier, but.
Talk about that.
You guys have the flexibility, basically, so I'll just hit on town projects now, what we're. So it goes through a review with the Planning Commission, they do a point analysis, and they'll look at if, whether it meets all absolute policies. In the case of a recent project, it didn't, didn't meet one of the absolute policies. But, overall, you know, it, you guys, the town, the town council has ability to still approve a town project, if it's in the best interest of the community, even if that's the case. And the other example is our CMC courtesy reviews. So that's the other place where, I mean, we don't actually, you know, they, they're doing it, because they need to, with our MOU that we have, they have to go through that process with us, but they don't technically need our, you know, to meet our code.
Thanks, that's great.
On town projects, is there an example of, because I feel like it's informal policy, we try and pass the point analysis, but is there any like, recent example where it failed and we passed something?
I think Justice Center, the parking, and, and, don't even, wait, yeah, actually, was the parking, some of that parking was off the property, it was on the adjacent lot that was next to the cul-de-sac. And so it technically didn't meet it, but in reality, it met parking. So it was a technicality, but, I mean, on any private developer, we're gonna say you have to meet your requirement on site. And so, you know, to be fair, we said it failed that policy.
We have, the last series of councils has really wanted the town to meet the code. There was a time when there was no code review, the town just, you know, we're like boss hog.
Yeah, pretty much so.
So one thing I was wondering is, if we could have, I don't know if we have this policy, and we just sometime more strictly adhere to it, but, like, when we made the McCain parcel, all chopped up and not, it was supposed to be squares or circles, and we made it all weird. It was never really, that was never discussed, and me not ever having been on Planning Commission, I had no idea we were doing something that wasn't what we normally do. So I did hope that, going forward, we can make sure that all of the things we're inconsistent with, we can discuss before passing a project.
Yeah, you know, and, so honestly, when you look at a site like McCain or many other sites, those square lines, you know, straight lines and that, don't always make sense. You know, they don't consider environmental features, stuff like that. They make a lot of sense for a grid, like the historic downtown and that, but not always in other locations. So, I, we're actually gonna be bringing a code amendment to you fairly soon that provides an exception, like in master plans, to allow for those lines to vary, assuming you guys are supportive of that. So, we, that would help with the consistency in that we would meet the, we'd meet that standard in the code then, the future.
So that's just an example of some time when we were over and over inconsistent, so now we're changing that.
Yeah. Right?
I don't know if this is for you or Kirsten, but back to precedent, I, you know, it seems like, so, sometimes it's, it's subjective as to whether, you know, how close it is to the previous project, and.
It is.
How much latitude do we have there? I mean, can we call up a project and say, you know, you guys ruled with precedent, and we don't agree with those points, because we don't think that precedent holds?
I mean, yes, you can call it up, and I, you know, a borderline call is probably a good example of that, where you may think, you know, no, probably deserved minus four instead of minus two or whatever. I think that's happened before. What? But we'll, we'll still provide you the precedents from the past, and you can look at that, and that will help hopefully inform your decision. But, yeah, I, you know, to Jeffrey's point, staff doesn't always get this 100% of the time, neither does the Planning Commission. So, there are times when that may be necessary.
Thanks.
Okay.
Real quick, just to go on what you were saying, Dick, is that, there, there's a difference between not agreeing with the precedent and having a shifting of priorities since the precedent was set. So, you know, I think site disturbance is up there, where if in the past, you know, a certain amount of two switchbacks was minus two points, and we look at that same kind of disturbance, now we have less of a stomach for it, and we want to give it minus six or minus eight, that's, that's not disagreeing with the precedent, that's a shifting of our priorities since the precedent was set. And I think that, that should be distinguished, because I think they're both valid, but I think one is kind of acceptable, where if our priorities have shifted since precedent, then we need to change the policy to almost make that precedent obsolete.
Change the multiplier.
Right.
Is what you would do. So, you know, if the multiplier is, is two, and you think that precedent is more important, you change it to a four.
Yeah.
And that's how you do it, and then all the previous precedents wiped out, and then you start all over. Then you make new precedents. Yeah, that would be, that would be us doing it.
But, but I think that goes back to, I mean, I feel like we should drill into this a little bit more on August 23rd, because this is like, the crux of where we get into, are we changing it in the middle of the process or future, and we can't do it in the middle?
Of course.
Okay.
I'd just say, Jay's absolutely right, and to be honest with you, the Planning Commission has got more, I guess, aggressive about negative points on certain items. And what works best for, from staff's perspective, is that's kind of incremental, that's happening. Okay, this was minus four, this is minus four, okay, this hits that threshold of minus six. We really pushed back on the Planning Commission a couple of months ago, because they wanted to go from four to minus eight. And it was just, and it, it just was too big a jump for us, and we felt like it, there wasn't the, we didn't have any precedence to support that, but going to six, we could, because we could compare it to other things, that, yeah, it's a little beyond that. So, anyway, that's, you're right, that's, that's kind of how this evolves over time. Okay, a couple items that aren't, I don't have anything on the screen on, but, and Kirsten already hit on this, but, application timing. Once a complete application is submitted, it's in the door, and it basically goes under the rules in place at that time. So, any code amendments that happen, that the council enacts after that, they're not gonna affect that active application. We have timelines, if it's Class A application, it's seven weeks from the time of the middle till the first preliminary hearing. It's like, around three weeks for a Class C. So, but anyway, just to reemphasize that point, and then call-ups, you guys are pretty, pretty savvy on those now, after.
We're getting good at them.
KG vets. With those a couple times, but, obviously, everything that comes to you on your, on the Planning Commission decisions, you guys can make the choice to call up, and then you schedule for a meeting, I will let you know that we changed the rules. You do not have to do a call-up the following meeting, you have the luxury of several meetings down the road. So, this came up a few months ago, honestly, if it was a meeting like tonight, you know, if you knew, okay, we called, you called something up two weeks ago, but you know, know you already have a night meeting that's going though, late like tonight, you may decide to postpone that out a couple of times, until you actually do the de novo hearing, but that's, that's your guys' discretion on how you want to handle that. But, decided to make you aware of that. We didn't, we didn't really touch much on development agreements, but basically, that's a, that's not a quasi-judicial hearing-type thing. It's a deal that you guys strike with an applicant, and basically, you can choose, like, you're looking at right now, then trotted to waive certain development policies, or the, the point assignments associated with those, in exchange for some public benefit, like housing, or something like that. So, that's a discretionary decision on your guys' part.
Is there any sort of roadmap for this discretionary decision, or have we ever discussed, you know, like, valuation of employee housing versus whatever they might want, put it into numbers, or we just get to?
There's no criteria for the decision in the, that, that's in the development agreement language, other than there's some public benefit that's proposed in exchange for it. So, it's kind of up to the council, if you guys wanted to set some parameters like that. I know, like.
It would be hard, but it's also crazy to say like, well, it's a public park, and not really.
We do look back on past projects.
I mean, you look back on past projects and say, what, you know, what did, what did so-and-so give, what did this project give?
We're getting.
Changing, just like we just talked about, past projects.
Kelly, a lot of what we're getting these days is workforce housing, and we're getting a lot of data in that housing committee on workforce housing, because of our housing helps and our buy-downs and all of that, we're starting to. More data there.
Unrelated to that, annexation agreements, that's where, in the past, we've had a policy of, someone can come in, we'll give 20% market, and 80% of them have to be deed restricted, that was a deal with David O'Neill, right? But, we've altered that over time, that's kind of still a starting guideline, but then if they're willing to put AMI targets and further restrict things, then we'll be flexible with that percentage, maybe it's 50/50 market, whatever. So, that's a place where we have, kind of like Dick says, some data, we can go back and look at a number of deals we struck before on that. Okay, I'm just about finishing up, then just, just wanted to hit on the Conservation District, this is just a whole other animal, our Historic District. We call it the Conservation District, because it encompasses more than just the Historic District, which is, you know, downtown up to High Street, centrally. We do have some areas just outlined on that, Briar Rose Lane is an example, it's in the, what we call the Transition Area. So it's not in the Historic District, but it's in the Conservation Area, so we've got some standards that apply to development in there, to try to maintain some semblance of compatibility with the Historic District, before it just goes out further from there. But the Historic Design Standards themselves are a whole other animal, really complex in terms of, there's a lot of requirements there. Really what we're trying to do, big picture, is preserve our existing historic structures, which we've done a really successful job of doing, and then making sure that any additions, which they're located to the back of the property, but they also don't overwhelm the historic structure up front, that it's more, they're subservient to that. So that's, you know, big-picture-type look at the Historic District, but it gets into. So that's, you know, big picture type look at the historic district, but it gets into all kinds of details. And I gotta tell you, these projects are incredibly intense, intensive in terms of the time with planning commission, but also staff. Um, you know, Chris Kulik will tell me, he says, I, I can spend as much time on a building here as I can on a big lodge building up at Peak Eight. I mean, it's that much review involved with these, but I think it's important that we get our historic district right. We think we've done a pretty good job.
Who do you call on for that? Like how, like in other words, if, if Chris needs some sort of verification or backup or a, a second opinion on, on what the ruling might be or what the ask might be? How do we, how do we verify that stuff? Remember we used to have Rebecca Law?
Oh, you mean whether there's historic material?
Yeah, just all that stuff, I mean.
We can take a look at it and we can take a, a guess based on, you know, staff's, you know, what background we have. But then there are experts that we can bring in to help and there's, um, you know, historic preservation people from down in Denver and that. Come up and we've got a whole survey of pretty much every historic property in town that, you know, it says this is contributing. So if it's contributing to the district, we're not gonna allow a demolition of that property. If it's not contributing to the district, sometimes there may be a small part that has some historic fabric there. But, um, we're probably gonna allow the demolition in that case, but it depends on how much of that would be there. But anything that's contributing to the district, we're, you know, we're gonna preserve, do everything we can to.
Remember a few years ago when we got downgraded on like six properties?
Yeah.
Have we, do you think we've resolved that situation? I mean, I know the connectors was a big part of that resolution. Um, I guess I just wanna make sure that we have, you feel like we've stopped that degradation? And or when will we get another analysis done or eval of that?
Well, good question, Kelly. Um, I think we addressed it in the changes that we did to the standards several years ago. Cause we, like you said, we dealt with connectors, we had that committee. We dealt with, you know, the size of the additions, so, um, and, and scaled those down considerably. So I think, um, and we got some, I, we did send it to the state for comments and they, they're like, yeah, this, you know, they were supportive of seeing the direction we're going. Were we going far enough? Maybe not. Um, we got some wild interpretations sent to us from the state like, you know, that, you know, these things should be like a third the size of the principal structure and stuff like that. So anyway, we might not have gone all the way in terms of, you know, meeting everything they were expecting. But they're honestly, their interpretations change over time too with their staff. And so we feel we've gone in the right direction. The only way we'd find out is if we did another cultural resource survey down the road here. And they looked at some of these recent projects and they bade in on those. And there's good and bad with that. It's good, good if they say, yeah, you guys are, are, are doing well. If they say you're, you guys are still messing up, then we gotta go through this process again potentially. And we think we made a good step towards addressing their concerns last time. So that's, thank you for taking your time with me on this.
Everybody gets a basic understanding of.
Yeah, if there's, like I said, if, uh, in Kirsten will get more into details next meeting. But if there's any other topics, like you said, vesting or that, that you'd like to hear more about, just let us know. Glad to come back and talk more about it.
Mark, thanks a lot. Yeah, let's knock out some of the mate stuff so we don't have to deal with it later.
I have one thing for the council, remember town manager's report?
Yep, town manager and staff.
Yeah, so we have two, okay. The backstage theater gala, they would need to know by tomorrow morning if any of you wanna take them up on their offer to attend their function Thursday, this Thursday evening.
I think I'm attending, but I think I, I was invited by one of their board members. So I think I'm already counted. I'm guessing I'm not the only one that was invited.
Where is it?
I can't, I can't make it.
Backstage.
Oh, I, yeah.
Five thirty to eight thirty. Okay. What's the other item?
So the taping for the council recap, uh, needs to be moved to afternoon tomorrow. And Jay can't make it, so we're wondering if there is someone else who would be available around two to get with Brooke and film with Brad for a few minutes.
I've done it twice already and I've won out my welcome.
Hey, we'll figure out something internally too.
Able to do it, I'm working.
I can do it. I just have to look at my schedule.
Oh, okay.
Took me one second, sorry.
Okay, if she can't, I'm at work, they can come.
Yeah, pro town.
With Kelly for now.
Frisco's.
Yeah, oh, kill Frisco. We're having a housewives of Las Vegas.
Oh, I can't even follow you today.
No, I couldn't.
Anything else for manager and staff? No, alright. Uh, cast and CMC, MMC, hey, you went to MMC for me. I was out of town, what happened? I'd like to know.
Absolutely nothing. I was not impressed.
See?
To get some interesting updates on some ballot questions that's going to end there on some tax that we're gonna see.
Thing this year.
So Dylan is looking at eleven percent lodging tax. Eleven. I mean, they got six percent, they're doing a six percent on lodging and additional five percent excise on short-term rentals. So many short-term rental would have eleven percent.
In addition to their other tax.
In addition to sales tax.
On top, on top of.
Kimball said today that Steamboat is going for twenty percent tax.
Add up to everybody.
Might have been short-term rentals, but.
Put on white and protest.
We are mellow.
Anything else from MMC?
No, there was a, you know, more discussion around the pay as you throw and, uh, they did a site, some county people did a site visit at the Picken County landfill. And they've got a really interesting, um, process, I guess, that they have instituted there that allows for construction.
Recycling.
Waste. Am I doing this right? Reuse?
Yes, they said they're out of stuff. It's so popular.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
But they only have seven more years on their landfill, so they're in quite a panic. And the only reason they're on Picken, and the only reason they have seven more years is they just did an expansion like last year or something, so.
They do pay as you throw?
Uh, they do, yeah.
But yeah, it was a whole different area that they've set off aside. They capture all the waste construction.
Can you build on a landfill that's closed down?
I think there's some rules around some stuff, yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, dormitories.
Senior housing.
So many things.
Other than that, though, there wasn't much else.
Miss me. Open space?
Uh, no. Tourism. Um, just looking that up. We had a meeting on the twenty fifth, I think, or twenty something, at the end of last month. Oktoberfest, I think Lucy's been giving us updates on that each week. It's a go. I mean, trigger's pulled, we're doing it. And, uh, you know, I think they're, they're gonna need volunteers.
Yeah, that's.
Rotary had failed. Uh, they wanted, they like doubled the money they wanted from it. So, uh, if any of you guys feel like pouring beer. Could be fun. Um, you know, they're, they're having some turnover. I think you guys know Brett's leaving and, uh, you know, and Lucy's looking at some, some different options for, for filling those, some of those roles, some of that role. Um, she updated us. Talked about the DEI event quite a bit. Which was great. Uh, uh, that, I think that's exciting. And then just all the upgrades, so.
Cool.
Good meeting.
History.
We are having a joint meeting with, with BTO.
When?
During work session and next meeting.
Hey.
We actually have, uh, three outside presenters. Sam Light coming in to talk to you and then we'll have, we have the BTA board and I think we're bringing, is this Sustainable coming back?
Okay.
BTO board?
I have nothing but good news about BRAC history. Sally Barbermine is looking incredible, what they've done. Larry Chrisfels spearheaded that. Um, it is really neat what they've done, being able to save different parts of the original structure and really create the story around there. So I would definitely bike past it to check out the progress. It should be done in about a month or so. Um, otherwise, History Colorado awarded BRAC history, the Caroline Bancroft History Award for the work on Barney Ford's two hundredth anniversary. Um, so it's an award given to an organization that has made a major contribution to the advancement of Colorado history. So a big deal and pretty great.
Awesome.
Kevin Bartsch.
Yeah, I had a good meeting last week. Um, interestingly enough, the board and staff recommended on, uh, on the Paley, on Sim Klein, uh, with the graffiti there that they do just a restoration. They said if momentum from the council to, to move it, that they'd like a directive from council on that. Um, some of the estimates to move it, and this is just like relocation, not site prep or anything like that. We're, um, and, and get ready for this number, one hundred and fifty to two hundred and fifty K. Some guidelines in the contract on who's allowed to touch it. Um, I've actually got the, you know, and how, how it's supposed to be moved. Um, so anyways, there's some, there's some interesting layers there, not to mention, you know, the effort and the work and, uh, maybe some of the potential public outcry. So something to consider there as, as, as you think about it.
It, do you kind of, do they foresee pushback?
Yep.
From the public?
Yeah.
From, from the board and from public, yeah, I think they.
I mean, we've gotta realize that we could get, you know, we could be like in the New York Times with this artist.
Oh, really?
Good. I mean, he's known, he's well-known.
Yeah, they, they.
And they suspect he may not like the idea of it moving.
In the contract, though, it says he, you can move it. It says you can store it. The contract says what you can do and he signed the contract, so he may, I mean, I'm, I'm not arguing with you, but it, you know. Well, and, and let me keep going here. So right now they're in kind of this, I would call it like crisis mode, you know? Tamara's working lights, um, so they're, they're, they're working on stabilizing staffing, um, for utilization of the Riverwalk to make sure that we've got, you know, successful events going off there. So in my mind, I think they need a little bit of space to get staffed up to kind of handle normal everyday operations and have success there. I think throwing in this layer, they're happy to look at it if that's the directive of, of, of this bunch, but.
They're restoring it right now so we can get the fencing off of it.
They're going to.
They're going to, yeah.
The plastic has come off of it, so it's been temporarily repaired so that it can be displayed without hiding that part of it. But it needs to have a, and, and actually it was, at least one vendor had a reasonable estimate, like the, the ten to fifteen thousand dollar to do the permanent repair on it. So, uh, to the standard that's required, so.
Do we have to run that by the, the artist?
No, no, there's some, there's some language in there about use, you know, that, how, you know, you use companies or use places, right, that exercise certain familiarity with public art and blah, 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 so.
Yeah, they're, um, they're also working on developing their contributed revenue, exceeding targets there, which is good. Sounds like the air stage swing went great, so they're excited about that. Um, they're working on hopefully a new website here down the road and from an IDE perspective, they were hopeful to maybe add, uh, Spanish translation, everything to, to make sure folks are aware of good stuff they're doing. So yeah, just keep an eye out on that and maybe keep an eye out for an ask for the funding to do this, the Spanish website. They're working on moving the ticket office to, may sign a call by next summer. And then, uh, FIFA starts, uh, August twelfth, so get out and go see some cool stuff.
That fundraiser at, uh, golf course was awesome. They did an amazing, great job on that.
That was mislabeled though.
Yeah.
I thought it was gonna be a swing band, but it wasn't. Swing band? Well, it was called Air Swing.
Oh.
That was. She wasn't, they were bluegrass. They were awesome.
Pass that along.
Yeah.
Make, I, I agree, that's why I didn't go, cause I had room in years together, but that was my interpretation.
They were awesome.
Yeah.
I mean, the whole thing was great, but I really thought it was gonna be swing band.
Yeah. What do you got?
Talk about how like, um, they're a little bit at odds with NRO, or at least they don't embrace NRO is because it's not their organization. Has, have you guys talked about that at all? Is there, is it the NRO being in the arts? Kind of having the. Not bring them under the umbrella, but, you know, at least, um, embrace them as a, a local art.
That's the term I first I heard.
Think we've ever, are you hearing that?
There's like a. There's a history of that, but, um, Tamara's done a really, really beautiful job over the last few months. Probably year, I guess, since she, whenever she came in too.
Is that recent? Yeah, like Dave's been super helpful too.
Well, and he, and Dave's been the first one to say, like Tamara has reached out. They, um, have pulled way back on their classic music scene, so they're really working.
It's just like having them on their calendar or something like that, since people go over there.
I mean, historically, that's been a big issue, but I know Tamara's really tried.
I think it's greatly improved. I mean, we always, we recognize early on when we were looking at some integration that NRO would never be an entity that would integrate under this umbrella because of just their structure is so different, what they do and so.
If you remember who it is, find out some specifics. It'd be great to know some specifics.
But I wanna make sure that we have an answer to that because, you know, the last direction when we asked a question about move, if there was an interest in moving Paley, there was at least four of you that thought there was a better location for it. I think based on what we've heard right now, I'm not saying that we have to say that we're never gonna move it, but I think now is not the time to, to, to push this and we're gonna table it for down the road.
You talked about the Paley?
Yeah.
Son, agree with you, Rick, just.
Wanna make sure that all of you are okay with.
I agree with you, Rick. I smudge, I mean, I'm kind of agree with Eric too, but I think now's not the time.
And, and I'm fine with that. I, I agree. Got other stuff to do. It bothers me that they don't. I know some of their reticences, they wanna keep it there, so they're not gonna cooperate. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna expect us to, to push this thing and they're gonna expect us to take the heat for it and that's whatever. But I've heard comments from people in that realm that say, we think it's great that when people take pictures home, the Paley's in all their pictures. And I don't think that's what this town is about. I don't think this town is about that big blue sculpture there. That's not, I, I just, it, it just drives me mental. Not one person has ever come up to me and said, I think that sculpture's great. The vast majority say, I can't believe you allow that to be in, in town. And this is where we always take pictures with our family and now we can't because of that. So I'm fine with waiting on this. Art should never overwhelm what is an incredibly beautiful surrounding that we have. I mean, I have a, I have just this general belief and I know it rubs everybody in the arts world wrong, but I was against ever putting art in the river too. And we had a couple of instances where that was a big deal. And I was the only one that spoke out about it, but why would we spend millions and millions of dollars to beautify a river? That is amazing to look at and then put art in it. I mean, you can have your own opinions of what is art and what isn't, but I just have a different opinion about our natural surroundings and the place that art should be. I think they've done a wonderful job in the, the art walk down the, down the bike path. The art walk that we see through the, through the, um, Blue River Plaza, I think is great because it's subservient to the trees and everything else around it. The Paley is not. We cut down a stand of like twelve unbelievably beautiful, mature aspen to put that thing there. And it bums me out every time I look at it. So you can tell them that.
I wouldn't tell them that, I filtered it.
I wouldn't filter it all. They already know, but I, at some point, I'd like, I want to have a more serious conversation about about getting that center of town back to what I think it should look like.
Yeah, and I think that'll be fair. I think the, we gotta wait a little bit on that.
That's fine. Events, anything to add?
No, I don't think I have anything to add to you.
Todd, you? They canceled and then re-upped a meeting for last Wednesday. It was just for Jesse Burley to kind of talk to the childcare committee with regards to sustainability. How was that?
Awesome. Recently, I met with the CMC trustee that spoke about their different early childhood education, education options. And I was interested, do the directors talk about that at all? Because it seems like from this trustee's perspective that they're very willing to work, like provide either scholarships or super discounted tuitions for these teachers that want to continue to pursue this as a career path. And then on top of that, anyone taking, it's not a super high threshold of amount of classes would also qualify for their workforce housing.
No, I've never heard that brought up.
They they work with them really closely. Almost all the teachers have gone through the programs at CMC. And a lot of the directors have either taught classes at CMC or that's how they get accredited with the state. That's how they get the big raises. So they are like super involved with the CMC classes. And we met with Dave, I don't know, probably three months ago and talked about the whole housing situation. And he's very willing to work with us and hoping that, you know, that they will get, I mean, we even talked about using some of their space. If we got some sort of a feeder program figured out, like where you would learn to, you know, like a childcare center onsite or something like that. And obviously, that's a lot bigger of a question, but I guess my point is they're, they have been really willing to work with us and looking into different options. But I was gonna save this for later, but they said they've seen a huge uptake uptick in just signing up for other classes, going to conferences. And I talked, spoke to at least one of the directors who really feels like it's directly related to the big raise they got. And that so many of them feel like this is, you know, a career opportunity and they're willing to stay and they're not going to be ski instructors for the winter because this, you know, that's enough money for them to make a bigger impact. So it's, I think it's been a meaningful.
That's awesome. Speaking of the, of the young people who are future.
Recognizing.
Amazing programs at the rec center. Amazing summer programs, skateboarding, mountain biking. Does it have like a pirate camp or something like that?
Mermaid.
There's just a buttload of kids out there and, yeah, it's great and kudos go to the staff at the rec center and, yeah, it's pretty cool. There you go. Social equity.
We have a meeting on Monday.
Awesome. Any other matters?
I would love to, you know, they were talking about the kids pool at the rec center, speaking of the rec center and like the three different options, but they didn't include any details. I'm not sure where, if those live somewhere or if we can take a look at them. But I'd just be really interested in option one, two, and three, and how they are kind of set on.
I would figure yours, when we do the CIP.
Okay.
At the retreat. So that's where you really kind of decide on where you want to plug this stuff in and and what it looks like and how you do it. You know, one of the things we want to make sure is that you have a good options on the cost relative to whether it's, you know, one point eight, two point four, or what can you do for a million, you know? Because we do know that slides got to come out. And they see they got, you know, something's got to change there, but they're, so we're, the plan will be to have a short presentation to you to really look at that. You can decide what you want to plug in and when you want to do it. I think the slides got to come out, though, so I'm not sure we have a lot of choice on certain things.
That'd be so cool.
Deteriorated, I think.
Oh, okay.
All right, didn't mean to jump the gun on that. Sorry.
No, that's fine. No, I mean, you shot it in the report, so yeah, it definitely has to, that's a big ticket item, though, so you gotta weigh in.
What do you think of slide after Paley?
The other thing that was in transit was union negotiations.
That's a county. They're, they have a, their transit people are union.
Wow.
That's some of states.
None of them?
Unionize.
So they can opt in to.
Collect bargaining. We're thinking of unionizing the council, just FYI.
Oh, my God. Am I going on strike here shortly?
When you go on strike tonight? This'd be great. Other matters? Todd?
Two easy things. Um, seen some articles just with other municipalities and obviously with Vale doing their pay raise coming up here soon. Other municipalities, you know, focusing on pay and, yeah, just want to make sure we keep that front and center and, you know, that's super important. And I know it's on everybody's radar, so just wanted to say that out loud. Look forward to seeing some options and possibilities to improve there. And, yeah, that's it, actually.
Oh, that was only one?
Well, shorten it.
Anyone else? Well, I took the the Todd Rankin hike along with Jay about looking at some open space possibilities and I'd recommend everyone checking it out. He came up with some really good ideas and, yeah.
Cool.
I agree. Yeah, I did, too. It's great.
And Carol took a history ride with Larry Chris Bell and Tim Casey.
That was fun.
Well, yeah, they they both have taken the rest of the summer off. You crippled them. He said, next time I'll write you a letter.
That is the best needed, is tour de Breckenridge history and the amount of knowledge that Larry has and passion. We're so lucky to have community members like that.
You're right. He seems to get more passionate every year about it. It's cool.
I do have one.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, there's a program called Give Like Local. Probably others here know more about it than I do, but I did want to put a plug in for it. Summit Foundation is, you know, kind of pushing the information for volunteering, for donating, community involvement. Sounds really cool. They're trying to push it out to as many, you know, people who have been here a long time and very, very newcomers as possible to make sure that we continue cultivating a real sense of community in this.
Cool.
Town, which, you know, is why we're all up here fighting for it. So make sure that you're telling the people who are, you know, just complaining or just saying, giving us kudos, that there are ways they can get involved, too.
Duty free Breck.
Duty free Breck.
You always write on the coattails with duty free Breck.
Yeah, it's my baby.
Shoveling like a twenty gallon bag of stuff.
Yeah, he caught me in the act. He caught me, he caught me.
Anything else about the matters?
All right, should we just adjourn until the end of August?
Yeah. It's going to strike.
Looks like a huge bag of weeds.
Yeah. All right, you guys ready?
Yeah.
I called to order the town of Breckenridge Town Council regular meeting Tuesday, August ninth, two thousand twenty-two. It is seven PM. Thank you for joining us this evening, everyone. Approval of the minutes for July twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. Any changes? Questions? Nope. Minutes stand as presented. We have approval of the agenda, Rick.
No changes.
Agenda stands as presented. Communications to council. We start with public comments. These are non-agenda items only, so if you're here for the STR discussion, this is not your time. If you have something else you want to talk about, there's a podium, three minute time limit, please. And anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Mamula, you didn't do roll call. Can you?
Oh, geez. I'm sorry. Give me a moment. Let me back all the way up. I've never done this. Roll call, please.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Mr. Carlton?
Here.
Mr. Bergeron?
Here.
Ms. Sade?
Here.
Mr. Beckerman?
President.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
That, Helen? I'll never do it again. Now, ma'am.
But I love standing in front of a mic, so. Really no problem. Good evening, Mayor Mamula and Town Council. I'm Tamara Nitsachi Park, president and CEO of Breckenridge Creative Arts. I just came tonight. I know Todd has given a great report and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But just to say thank you, thank you for the public investment that you make in our organization and specifically in the Breckenridge International Festival of Arts, which starts here on Friday. We greatly appreciate the the support that you give us and that you believe that the arts can truly connect people from all walks of life and take them out of their comfort zones and into wondrous experiences that we have planned. So if you choose to do anything in the arts over the course of the year, we invite you to participate in the coming weeks. We've had a great response so far, about a thousand visitors walking into Old Masonic Hall, getting their hands dirty by rolling clay balls for our installation called Altered Ground. We have a unicorn made out of trash on Moonstone. We have benches in Ridge Street Square that are made out of the sleds from from Carter Park. And a truly extraordinary arts experience on the Riverwalk Lawn Friday and Saturday, a project called Up by Palobulus, a community art experience with umbrellas made by MIT. You can come out and see your community make a smiley face on a big screen. So if you choose to do something, please join us over the next week in any of our workshops or or events. It's truly exciting. And thank you for investing in the minds and spirits of our community to open our hearts to one another through through art. But also thank you to the town staff who, everybody had a role in this, from bringing in our lift over the Riverwalk Lawn. So Scott Jackman and his team, the Parks and Trails team, who used their electric wheelbarrows to move the unicorn and everybody on the town staff who was involved. So we couldn't do it without you. We couldn't do it without the community. And it's a privilege to do this work, so thank you very much.
I was startled by the unicorn on a very early ride. I came around that corner. I was like, I thought it was something had to get me, but it's just a unicorn.
Well, actually, we have.
I like the mushrooms.
The mushrooms are made by kids in our community, yes, over the the last five weeks of of workshops. So all of our kids came in and made those out of a misprint of the Summit Daily News and some some Mardi Gras beads. So we're, it was really great. And that unicorn is made out of milk jugs and clam shells and all that kind of stuff. So, yeah, it's really, it's a wonderful thing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else with public comments, sir? Step up to the mic, please.
In theater, we try to project, but I'll use the mic.
Yeah, it's just how we do it.
I'm Jim Anderson. I'm chair of the Backstage Theater and I hope you guys came to see the recent play. It was a record breaking net and gross for us and a bunch of silly actors goofing up the entire play. But I wanted to introduce Jacqueline Stone, who just came here from Chicago about two weeks ago, our new director.
Oh.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you. As Jim said, I'm Jacqueline Stone. I'm the new producing artistic director for Breckenridge Backstage Theater and just wanted to introduce myself and say hello. And as I'm getting my feet wet and embarking on this new journey, I am so thrilled and inspired by the community here. And I also am just very excited to hear Tamara's words before coming up. And so to hear back to back, you know, focus on the arts is really exciting. That says a lot about the town that we're living in. And as we're moving into our upcoming season, I want to just invite the town to have dialogue with us. I am open and available and interested. Many of you will be hearing from me. I've been saying that I've been embarking on a listening tour these first six months to a year to really understand and hear what this community wants and not to simply assume that I know that coming in as an outsider. My hope is to be able to bring all of my experience and my passion, working in both theater for adults, but also a lot of time in theater for young audiences and really bringing that all together under one roof so that we are able to serve ages zero to a hundred and really be an exciting family destination here in Breckenridge. So if you see me on the street, I will wave at you because I'm coming from a big city and I love the local charm. And, you know, hope, hope that you all come out. On Thursday night, we are having my coming out party, so to speak, our Back to the Backstage to the Future fundraiser. But really, it's just an opportunity to get to hear a bit about the vision moving forward and what we're working on and just to come to a great party in our house that all of you so are so wonderful to support at the Breckenridge Theater. So thank you and I hope to see all of you at the theater soon.
Into town. Thank you. All right, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I am going to have to read what I wrote and hopefully stay within the timeframe. My name is Marty Summer. My husband, Paul, and I have lived in the town of Blue River for forty-two years. You may already know Paul as a U.S. Forest Service employee, extra. for forty-two years. You may already know Paul as a U. S. Forest Service employee extraordinaire who retired after thirty-eight years and still does contract work for the Forest Service. My background includes serving as a longtime Spanish-language educator who played a key role to bring Spanish-language education to the elementary schools in Summit School District. Little did I know that I would become a dark-skY advocate and serve as the International Dark Sky Association Colorado Chapter Western Regional Coordinator. On Friday, you all received a letter from me, including an attachment with comments that was sent to Jesse Burley, Sustainability and Parking Manager, regarding the importance of addressing light pollution in the sustainability, sustainable BREC plan. Pulling highlights from the email to the Town Council, these highlights include the Summit County Light Pollution Map, a proclamation Governor Polis signed declaring June two thousand twenty-two Dark Sky Month, legislation that Representative Julie McCluskey successfully championed in order to provide some funding for selected places going for international dark-sky certification, and more. Looking at the Sustainable BREC Plan, I noticed that addressing light pollution was completely left out of this plan. Light pollution in the forms of glare, skyglow, spill light, light trespass, overlighting, light clutter, and uplighting is appearing to increase in Breckenridge as well as spill out into the surrounding areas. The comments I provided to Jesse Burley are based on research with links that support the comments I noted. At this point, I would like for the town of Breckenridge to know that I applaud the leadership role that the town has taken regarding sustainability efforts and the fostering of best stewardship practices. Julia Puster and I first started talking over a year ago, and actually just met about a month ago. With the Sustainable BREC Plan moving forward, now could be a good time to include minimizing light pollution in Breckenridge's sustainable efforts. To me, it appears that Breckenridge is poised to get into the pipeline to become a certified international dark-sky community. By going through the application process, Breckenridge would be guided by.
Time, please.
Oh, time. Okay. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Marty. And we'll get your letter from Jesse. We'll make sure we get your letter from Jesse.
Oh, I was thinking you already had it.
Oh, then, yes, we.
It came late today.
Anyone else? All right, with that, first public hearing is closed. We have a Breckenridge Ski Resort update. Jacqueline, thanks.
Hi, everybody. My name's Jody. My name's Jody Church. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Breckenridge Ski Resort. Good to see you all. Have some great updates today and some exciting news to share. So happy to see you all. I'll start with our summer update. We were fully staffed. That's exciting news these days. So great summer. We'll be open through Labor Day, and we have had a challenging summer. I think we could count on one hand how many days we have not had lightning or rain, which is great for fire season, but a little challenging to operate the ski resort in. But overall, great season, great summer, and we are having quite a robust wedding season. So things are going quite well there. But really, the exciting news today that I'm happy to share with you all, and it's just a really important and critical community issue, and that is childcare. And as a member of this community, we know childcare is a critical need. And as we look to bring back our guest-facing daycare services at the resort this winter, we're also looking at the ways we can utilize our facilities to support our broader community. And with that, we have started the process of hiring a childcare manager and getting licensed for year-round care in hopes that we can offer year-round spaces to benefit our employees, which will in turn benefit the broader community. And I just have to thank council member Kelly Owens, Todd Rankin, and Jay Beckerman for all of, you know, I was on my listening tour about a year ago, and thanks to you all brought it to my attention as, you know, a critical issue. And so, super excited to announce this today. And if everything goes as we hope, this means we could bring online close to twenty year-round spaces in year one, and then in year two, growing that to be even bigger and with more spaces in the future. So we're dedicated to being a good partner here in the community, and projects like childcare, parking, and affordable housing are key to a sustainable and thriving community for all of us. Moving on, we have an exciting lift project going on right now. We're installing our new RIPS Ride chairlift. We're taking it from a two-passenger to a four-pack high-speed lift. This will debut on Peak Eight. We are moving on schedule. We hope to bring in our towers and start building out our terminals here soon, and this will really greatly enhance our ski school experience and really our access over to Peak Nine. We've changed the top terminal just a little bit in its position so that you can jet right on over to Peak Nine, making that easier transition. We're also embarking on a Peak Eight Reimagine with our five-chair project that was announced in June with a pretty significant investment. I think all of you may have heard that on our earnings call. So we're really excited about that. We plan to upgrade the Peak Eight base area to enhance beginner and children's experience and better assist with flow and circulation in most of our popular access points to the mountain. This investment plan will include a new four-pack as well on the five-chair, which is currently a two-chair or a two-person passenger as well. The new terrain, teaching terrain, will enhance our ski school experience greatly. So I'm very, very excited for this. It'll also open up quite a bit of sightlines. By, as such, we will be removing our kids' castle. That will be coming down this fall, as will our sprung structure, and we've already removed the earth. So really opening up the sightlines, and as people get on to Peak Eight, they're going to be able to see a lot more of our beginner terrain and get over to RIPS Ride. So excited about that new development coming online. And, yeah, that's all subject to town approval. So we hope that you support this project. We do have some outreach going on and hoping to get some site tours going to give everybody a glimpse of what we have reimagined for Peak Eight. For winter, our number-one priority again is staffing, and our goal is to be fully staffed for winter. With benefits like childcare, it will be a helpful recruiting tool, as will our twenty-dollar minimum wage that will go into effect this fall. So that's it for the resort. Hope you're as excited as I am about our big news about bringing full year-round licensed childcare to the community.
Well done.
Yeah.
Questions for Jody?
Patience.
Great job, Jody.
Good job. Jody, you even submitted any kind of application to the town yet for the reimagine stuff, right?
We have not.
Okay.
Just the demolition of the kids' castle at this point.
Then we can come up and have a look.
Exactly.
God.
Healthcare. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Jody. Appreciate it. We know with BREC tourism.
Yeah, no.
Okay. All right, we move on to continue business. We got a couple second readings to start with. Second reading of Council Bill Number Twenty-four, Series two thousand twenty-two, An Ordnance Amending Chapter Sixteen pertaining, why does that seem wrong? Sixteen pertaining to requirements of licensed hauler providing solid waste collection and disposal services in connection therewith adopting fines and penalties. Matt?
Mayor and council, good evening. We have before you our second reading of an ordinance that would establish requirements for haulers related to residential volume-based pricing for trash and recycling services, as well as establish universal recycling requirements for commercial services. As noted in your memo, two questions from the first reading have been addressed, and I'm happy to answer any questions, along with Jen Shank with H C Three.
Thanks, Matt. Questions? And if we don't get buy-in from the county, if this just becomes a Frisco and BREC thing, are we going to continue with it? Is it going to change sort of the impact with the haulers and what they're going to charge? What's your feeling?
I think we can address it when we get to that bridge, but everything's up in the air if we need to.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass Council Bill Number Twenty-four, Series two thousand twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion, council? Roll call.
Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
We have a second reading of Council Bill Number Twenty-five, Series two thousand twenty-two. This is an ordinance adopting regulations pertaining to generators, solid waste, and in connection therewith adopting fines and penalties for enforcement of violations. Matt?
This ordinance is related to the generators of trash. Therefore, anyone who generates trash on their property is subject to this chapter. In large part, it carried over regulations that were already in place in town code related to when you can place containers on the curbside. What was added is around commercial generators. Therefore, anyone that has trash available in a common area accessible to the public will need to add an additional recycling bin. This is about equal opportunity and access. Wherever there is publicly accessible trash, there also needs to be recycling. That is the only change of this chapter. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Matt. Any questions for Matt? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? No, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass Council Bill Number Twenty-five, Series two thousand twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman? Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
Oh, we've Council Bill Number Twenty-six, Series two thousand twenty-two. This is an ordinance amending the building code pertaining to energy efficiency, residential construction, repealing outdated provisions. And this is the one we're looking for a continuance, Mark? We would like to seek a continuance to August twenty-third. So if there is a motion that way.
Do we need to make it now?
Yeah.
I move we continue Council Bill Number Twenty-six on the second reading till August twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Beckerman?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Ms. Owens? Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. We have first reading of Council Bill Number Twenty-seven, Series two thousand twenty-two. This is an ordinance amending the building code pertaining to building permit and inspection fees. Mark?
Council, the attached ordinance will adjust the fees we currently have for building applications permitting and inspections, and it essentially mirrors Summit County's fee schedule. There are some minor differences between the two schedules, and we are now consistent with the county's schedule.
Thank you, Mark. Questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? No, public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill Number Twenty-seven, Series two thousand twenty-two, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Helen.
Mr. Carlton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Sade?
Yes.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes. Okay, we have the first reading, Council Bill Number Twenty-eight, Series two thousand twenty-two. This is an ordinance amending the Accommodation Unit License Regulations to establish mapped areas based on the underlying land-use characteristics of the town, and in connection therewith setting limits on the concentration of licenses by mapped area and establishing fines. Before we get started, so when we do the public hearing, I have three sheets of names right now. If you have not signed up and you want to talk, please sign up in the back. I'm going to call your name. Some of you are obviously doctors because I can't read what you've written here. So please forgive me when I call your name. It's a three-minute time limit. We have a timer up on the wall there. When I call your name, please stand to the podium, say your piece. Please be respectful. You know, we expect everybody in the room. Do you want to sign up? Go ahead. Please be respectful, and no clapping and no booing. I know it's hard enough to stand up at that podium. It's, I know it can be difficult to stand, you know, in front of a room, so we want to give everybody the respect they deserve while they're talking, whether you agree with them or not. And with that, staff presentation.
Mayor, council, this first bill is to essentially establish the zoned areas and set the limits by zone. The zoned areas that have been created, and as you mentioned, the rationale underlying them is the land-use districts, are now reflected in the attached maps that will be part of this ordinance and eventually codified in the municipal code. There are some other kind of procedural aspects that you may have questions about, and please let me know. I'm happy to answer anything. But those are the two significant policy changes from the prior two thousand twenty-one ordinance.
Thank you, Kirsten. Any questions?
We were to vote no on this. Would it just go to the twenty-two-hundred, and there wouldn't be overlay zones? Or what would that happen there?
Yeah, I mean, if you just voted no without doing anything else, then the two thousand twenty-one version, which sets the cap at twenty-two-hundred, would still be in effect, yes.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions, I should say? Okay, now we'll go to public comment, and the first three names, if you could, one person, the podium, and then two people behind, will be Andrea Still, Gloria Nunez Pizarro, and Haley Sales. Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Andrea Still, and my husband, Tony, and I own a historic property at one oh-two South French Street, which, under the proposed plan, is slated to fall into Zone Three, single-family residential. We do not believe Zone Three is an accurate designation for our block, and we are respectfully requesting that our property and the entire block of French between Lincoln and Washington be changed from Zone Three, which is single-family residential, to Zone Two, which is downtown core, with the following considerations. First, the block directly adjacent to our block to the north on French Street has already been designated as Zone Two. Second, our block contains a restaurant, Amazing Grace, the Breckenridge Laundromat, which is open twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and is extremely busy, Saint Mary's Catholic Church, Saint John's Episcopal Church, and the French Street Public Parking Lot. Our own property previously operated as the French Street Inn under a commercial license. It has eight bedrooms, six-and-a-half baths with a lock-off unit in the back. It's clearly not really a single-family home. Another consideration is that the public library property, which also houses the Eclipse Movie Theater and the Summit Foundation, stretches behind our entire block with parking lots on both ends. In fact, people often walk down our driveway and hop over the fence into the movie theater parking lot. In light of the number of businesses, churches, parking lots, and public buildings that are on our block or surround it, we feel that a Zone Two classification, downtown core, would be a more accurate designation for our block. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Haley? Haley Sales? No? Oh. They're right here in front. They just thought they were signing up to sit down and watch, which is awesome. Thank you. Marina Giannelli? You know what? This was from before. Okay. All right. Julie Costa, followed by Mary Waldman, and then Mark Gasper. So Julie first.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Julie Costa, Executive Director of the Summit Alliance of Vacation Rental Managers. While we may be a little far along in this process to effect actual change in the ordinance, I do want to say that I'm really proud of the work that we've all done together to this point. I'd like to say thank you to all the council members who have engaged with us and our members in this process, knowing that it's not easy crafting legislation that will have such a profound impact on our community. I would be remiss if I did not ask you to consider opening Zone One up to. I would be remiss if I did not ask you to consider opening Zone One up to 100% vacation rental ability of saturation. This is the most tourism oriented area of Breckenridge and the character of these areas of our town is directly tied to tourism. I've heard several of you say over the last several months that we should accommodate guests in areas designed for them based on the amenities and access to town services. Restricting Zone One to 90% may not feel like a big deal initially, given our historical lack of saturation in that area. But from the outside, it looks more like Big Brother flexing his muscles than offering a concession. Historical data shows that these areas have never been more than 70% saturated with vacation rentals. And if you remove some of the timeshare companies and things like that out of that zone, it's actually more like 55%. So I think it's unrealistic to think that every single property in any of those neighborhoods would become a vacation rental, but by opening it up, you show some more flexibility for growth in an area designed for tourism. Next, I would ask that you consider eliminating your hard cap of 2,200 and instead allow for these caps to grow over time as Breckenridge develops and grows. Rather than setting in stone an exact number of units based on today's numbers, allow our businesses to evolve as new development arrives. Stifling growth does not benefit our economy and simply promotes the impression that we don't want outsiders here. Lastly, while we're directly involved in the process and have a perspective on things that are being done and how they are executed, and I mean myself and you guys, the public perception is a totally different matter. As we move forward in this process as a community, we must consider more than just the details that we all know and see and look at on a daily basis and look at this from the bigger picture. Try zooming out the screen a little bit and look at what things actually appear to be in terms of the public eye. Act as if you're a person who had never been here before and seeing these regulations for the first time without knowing the backstory. How would you perceive our community? Would you want to come here? Would you want to stay for the summer? Would you want to buy a house? So just a few things to think about, and I've said this before to many of you in passing and via email, but we are here to support you. SaveVRM is more than happy to share any data, any constructive criticism, or any insights into general happenings of our businesses. I'm happy to offer a different perspective also as somewhat a third party, as the Executive Director for an organization that can help you look at some of the potential consequences for our community locally, but also on a larger scale. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Julie. Mary?
Good evening. Thank you, Counsel. My name is Mary Waldman and I am a proud vacation rental property manager based here in Breckenridge. I would love to ask you to remove the bulk ISIS cap, but that's unrealistic. So instead, I have a very simple request for you today. Stop calling me STR. STR label makes me a target. By using some meaningless initials, STR, you make it any easy to dehumanize, but you aren't doing, and I apologize. I feel very strongly about this and this is not about the ordinance, but about us and our industry here in Breckenridge. Please change STR to VR, Vacation Rentals. You vacation. I vacation. We don't short term rent. When I think of STR, it is a no face entity that has no emotional connection to me. But you know, that's not true. We have a connection. According to study provided by the CEO Boulder from Boulder in April 2022, a whopping 53% of tourism jobs in Summit County are directly employed by vacation rental businesses right here. Everyone you know in some way is related to our vacation rental industry. I am one of you. I am not STR. In every discussions, I ask you to change calling us STR to Vacation Rentals. I think it really reflects who we are. And it means something to us. In many ways, we have differences. And that's okay. That's, that's who we are. But do you recognize that we support, we are the mycelium that generates this tourism business and industry here in Summit County? So please show respect to everyone, all those hardworking people who work in this tourism industry by referring to us as Vacation Rentals. Please, no more STR. It may take months, years to change and make this difference, but I believe it can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Mark?
Good evening to the mayor and town council. My name is Mark Gaskin. I live at 18 Timber Hill Drive in Upper Warriors Mark subdivision. I'm a full-time local resident since 2015. We love our neighborhood the way it is currently and we do not want to see the neighborhood character changed. Lud 30.5 has a history going back to the 1970s with a high density of STRs. Lud 30.5 currently has 52% STRs that are ski in, ski out. Lud 30.5 has strong support from full-time residents that support our current STR density. Lud 30.5 provides Breckenridge tourists with over 50 single family home rentals. Lud 30.5 is recognized by the United States Federal Government and US Forest Service as ski in, ski out. Lud 30.5 has purpose-built, has a purpose-built ski run, lower layman for our homes to ski out in. And if you've ever skied lower layman, you'd know it's not really good for much else. Lud 30.5 doesn't include any of this language largely due to the fact that in 2002, 30.5 was annexed and already developed. The Summit Daily News reported this in 2002 that this was an electric lud that didn't match the town's definitions. If the town passes the new STR restrictions, it'll reduce Lud 30.5 STRs by 80%. This will change our neighborhood's character dramatically. And as I said before, we love our neighborhood the way it is. If these changes are implemented, it could have a dramatic effect on our home values, the services our town provides, provides our beloved shuttle and more. If homes can't be rented, they'll sit empty a majority of the time and that will not be good for our town's restaurants and businesses. And this solution will not provide more employee housing. Please consider to correct the lud language for 30.5 to accurately reflect the true character of this neighborhood and allow them in Zone One or Two where we belong. The studies the town did recommended that 30.5 be in Zone Two. The updates need to reflect 40 plus years of established character. This lud represents over $500 million of real estate in which many owners have no voice. You are their voice. Families from all over the world come to Breck and rent homes in our neighborhood. They add to the richness of our culture and they contribute to our economy. And we would like Breck, we would like Breck to be the way it was 20 years ago, less crowds, less density. But that's not the way it is. We're a, we're a world-class resort.
I'm.
And we should offer our tourists options of large homes to rent for weddings and family get-togethers.
Mark, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we have Ashley Kubus, Kubison? I'm sorry if I butchered that. Jan Rodasovich and Dan Donner? Hi, Ashley.
Oh, you did a great job. Kubison. All right. Good evening. I'm Ashley Kubison. I'm with River Ridge Rentals. And I wanted to reach out or come to you tonight to talk about this bill. And I wanted to just kind of talk about back in November 2021, when you originally passed the cap in Council Bill number 26. You talked about your goal. Your goal, you said, was to protect the unique character of our town. And I wanted to talk about your character of the town. And one of the things that makes Breckenridge unique, I moved to Breckenridge in 2004. And before I came to Breckenridge, I would visit here with my family. One of the things that I loved about Breckenridge is how it brought families together. And when I moved here in 2004, I came here to come to work for my family's business. And part of our business is that we rent homes to families. So since 2004, we've been renting homes to families in areas like Warriors Mark and Shock Hill and French Street. And Breckenridge has such a unique and wonderful way of attracting these multi-generational family groups. They get to come together, grandparents and aunts and uncles and cousins. They get to come together. Some of them don't see each other for years on end and they get to come together and spend time with each other in these amazing homes in these areas like Warriors Mark and Shock Hill. And they aren't going to be able to do that if you guys don't move those areas over out of Zone Three and into an area, a zone that's more appropriate like Zone Two or Zone One. So these changes that you're looking at tonight are going to fundamentally change the character of Breckenridge by no longer being an attractive destination for these multi-generational family groups that make Breckenridge part of what attracts all of us that all, I think most of us probably came to Breckenridge for the first time as part of a family group. So I wanted to talk about if you don't move these areas, like I said, Shock Hill, Warriors Mark, and the French Street area, as the first speaker mentioned, out of Zone One, or excuse me, out of Zone Three and into Zone One, or at least Zone Two, there's not going to be a license available in probably any of our lifetimes. And the consequences are going to be drastic. There's going to be fewer families in Breckenridge. You're going to see more singles, younger people, more, you know, smaller groups. You're going to see fewer overnight guests, more day trippers, more vehicles. You're going to see less tax revenue, fewer luxury travelers, more budget visitors. You're going to see more vacant homes sitting empty. You're going to see less tax revenue. It's, there's, the impacts are going to be significant. So I would really urge you to take a moment. I know there was pressure put on you to make some decisions here and I certainly understand that and I appreciate the sense of urgency, but I really want you to take a moment and think about what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Jan?
Hello, all. Thank you. I would like, well, first of all, I'd like to say I'm here to speak out against adopting the ordinance as it is written tonight. And I would echo all of Ashley's comments and people before. I feel this ordinance is placing the majority of the workforce housing problem on residential property owners. And I don't see where the business owners, the restaurant bar owners are doing their part as this ordinance impacts our community and the residential property owners. Another thing in this new ordinance to change is it went from the cap of 2,200 short-term permits allowable to now it's 2,140. So 60 permits have been reduced, which I think should not have happened. Last meeting you looked at when you were making the overlay district, one of your options was looking at proximity to the ski runs, ski lifts, ski, you know, and should those properties be included in the tourism zone? And it was like, no, we're going on the land use district guidelines and it doesn't matter how many feet you are from a ski run or a lift or anything. So I just have a question on land use District 40, Timber Trails. And it says the primary function of District 40 is to allow a very low density development directly adjacent to the ski runs, thus allowing for an area with immediate ski and ski out convenience. It's land use residential, one unit per three acres, very low density. Whereas District Guideline, that Land Use District 10, which I know you guys have discussed a lot, says district, it is recommended this district be developed into a low density, not very low, low impact residential area. It's a residential zone with two units of density per acre versus one per three. So the only difference I see is the ski area, the addition that it has the ski runs next to it, where Land Use District 10, you've got the pines, Tyra Summit, and Breckenridge all on the same four o'clock ski run. Oh, shoot, I'm running out of time. So anyway, I'm just questioned about that. On a selfish basis, I'm, was number one on the waitlist. So my property now has gone into residential Zone Three. So before I had 540 permits to expire before I was the first person to get a short-term permit. Now it's 877. I would like to see the exemptions, the exemptions for the other things added to the waitlist people.
Thank you, Jan. Dan? Once going twice, Chuck Sebold, followed by Stu Van Anderson and Beth Eisenman. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Sebold, representing Woods Manor Condominium Association on Broken Lance Drive. I am here to request that Woods Manor be included in Zone One in your ordinance. In support of our request, I offer that land, our land borders Zone One. In fact, per the overlay map, a portion of our land is in Zone One. Also, Woods Manor was built specifically for the short-term stays in mind. It was constructed 24 years ago. Six units are were actually timeshares. So out of the 24 units, we now have and have had 318 separate owners. We have a clubhouse that includes hot tub, sauna, steam, game room, common room, conference room, and a full clubhouse built. These facilities are open to all of the occupants. Woods Manor has a resident manager, home on site, providing 24-hour security and guest services 365 days a year. Woods Manor met all of the previous requirements published by the town of Breckenridge. Village Point Town Homes, which borders this on the north, is a town home community with more than 50% full-time residents. They offer no amenities, no onsite manager, nor security or guest services. They fall in Zone One. Woods Manor has less than 10% full-time residents with the majority of its owners wanting to rent and be associated with the Columbine Neighborhood, which we are adjacent to. We are directly across the street from Tamarisk, which is also in Zone One. The properties to the south, yes, are in the Warriors Mark neighborhood and are more single family and they are owned then by those single family townhomes. We are now a part, we're not a part of Warriors Mark. Our makeup is consistent with Columbine Neighborhood, which falls in Zone One. We're asking you to include us in Zone One with the properties that most resemble our association. To do so would not create an island in a residential neighborhood, but merely require aligning and then including us.
That's time. Thank you, Chuck. Stu?
Hey, I'm Stu Van Anderson. Nice to be here tonight. Hello, everybody.
Nice to.
I am actually not here to battle the ordinance, which I have many feelings on, but we're not going there today. I'm more focused on Woods Manor. It was built to be a short-term rental facility. You can walk to the lift in about six minutes. Bus stops at the end of thing. We have heated underground parking elevator service to the garage, ski lockers in the garage. You know, the place was designed to be a rental property and a timeshare property at the time. We also have full, full facilities in terms of clubhouse and amenities and those kinds of things, as well as 24/7, 365 onsite management. We've been there a long time and we do think a portion of our property is in what currently is designated zone one back between Maggie Plaster, that JB's old place and Village Point Town Homes. We have a piece over there. So we have a, we feel a pretty good, pretty good case to be included in zone one. At least if you look at the world rationally, nothing personally, don't get me wrong. I know you try, I know you do it. Precedents, though, when we go there, we talk about you know, master plans and LUDs and subdivisions and condominium projects and annexation, all these things changed the general values of what originally was here, which wasn't very much into what it is today. A minute and thirty-eight seconds, I'm gonna try to speed this up. Precedence has been already set, you know, by by doing the resort property zone. That is an exception to an LUD. That's what it is. We made a big exception for the village of Breckenridge, taking them from exempt to non-exempt or non-exempt to exempt because of amenities. That's why that happened. And they're still in the resort property zone. So I encourage you to consider this for Woods Manor. We'd really like it, obviously, as some of these other people I believe have very valid cases. And on second, I'll get to a more personal perspective. I really think you can should consider not passing this on on this reading and re reconsider some of the effects it's having on a lot of these property owners. It's going to affect values. And the town of Breckenridge knows this because they buy stuff and put deed restrictions and sell it. These, this is the big deed restriction, particularly in zone three. And in there, at least as of this morning, there was warrantless you know, you could get into a property without a warrant to inspect it. And if you weren't allowed in, you could get in there by any, any, any means deemed necessary by the town. And I think that's out of line. I can't believe it's even in there. You should get a warrant if you want to get in. If somebody isn't wanting to enter property, you need to be in there for some reason. Otherwise, you can go there with a with a cop. And if you won't let him in, he can get you for resisting arrest and go in anyway. That's how that works. So I really think we should consider.
Let's do it. Um, we think we changed that part already, just so you know.
Fact that it was in there, though.
Well, thanks, Stu.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Beth Eisenman.
Hi, I'm also here on behalf of Woods Manor. But as the two other two gentlemen in front of me spoke so eloquently and they covered most, most of what I wanted to say. I will not take up your time.
Beth, can you tell me how many units are in?
Four units in Woods Manor.
And that includes the timeshare ones? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have like Deshawn maybe or and then James Bradley and Sarah. Yeah, 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 just give it to me and I'll I'll pass it to everybody. Great. Thanks, Deshawn. It's Deshawn.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name's Deshawn Lutz. I'm the president-elect of Summit Realtors, which is a local association that advocates for private property rights and the property owners across Summit County, Park County and Lake Counties. We represent nearly eight hundred Realtors and affiliated small business owners alike. I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors and majority of our membership. SAR continues to seek to work with the town of Breckenridge on details of the ordinance to craft a policy that is fair, equitable for everyone involved. Believe it or not, forty-nine percent of local workers are related to the vacation rental industry here in Summit County. Your decisions are impacting these jobs and potentially in a very negative way. Our message is pretty simple. Slow down. Now is not the time to restrict short-term rentals with the intent is as it's outlined to protect community character through regulation. If this, if this is truly about community character, we can slow down. We believe the market will self-adjust. Business brokers, business and brokers already see a big shift in our community, even if our locals haven't noticed it yet. COVID caused an explosion of visitors and buyers to summit. Now that the world is reopened for business, the visitors are moving on to destinations throughout the world. I shared a statistical chart that shows new inventory and pending listings are almost back to twenty-twenty levels. Traffic is down through the Eisenhower Tunnel this summer. These are no question the COVID frenzy to be in Breckenridge is easing. What will happen in two years when the national economy has slowed with SDR restrictions still in place? Is it easier to slow an economy than to ramp it up? Overlay zones are a hot topic. We respect the short-term rental overlay zones. We need to reiterate the obvious concern that limiting short-term rentals on properties adjacent to ski runs seems counterintuitive to the demands of tourists and our marketplace. The properties in resorts zones are quite simply designed to be short-term rented. Properties in zone three are most affected with limitations on permits. In neighborhoods, properties without will sit empty most of the year and neighborhoods will become dormant. Lastly, it's about measurement. How do you intend to measure your goals as outlined in the ordinance? To quote, provide the safety, preserve the health, promote the prosperity and improve the order, comfort and convenience. We'd like to say data collection, we'd like to see data collecting collection that shows you are achieving your goal. If you don't have a plan to measure your success, why are you implementing the ordinance?
Thank you, Deshawn.
Thank you, guys.
Bradley.
Hey, Rick. Oh, I'm James Bradley. Two oh six Marksberry Way, which is in the Highlands. I've lived here twelve years. I'm a full-time resident. Our house is about three and a half miles from the gondola and so we're in zone three and I certainly support the ordinance. At least as applies to zone three, I don't know about the rest. That's up to the town council. And I want to thank the Task Force, the town council for looking out for us in zone three. My neighborhood is a single-family standalone home neighborhood. It's mostly four-bedroom. There are about thirty-five houses in what I consider to be my neighborhood because it's one inlet and outlet. And thirteen, I believe around thirteen are short-term rentals, or should I say vacation rentals? I don't, at the moment, and one is next door to me and one's across the street. The full-time and part-time residence is best I, meeting them, we have block parties once a year and things like that are mostly retired people. And some live there full-time, some live there part-time. But I don't know any that that rents their house short-term. They, they, it does sit vacant. But having lived next door to a short-term rental for eleven years now, I would much rather have a vacant house six months out of the year than the noise and parking issues and the like that that we all face, the ones that live in close proximity to it. So I think you're looking out for us and I appreciate that. The you know, thinking about the typical vacation rental home or the short-term rental home. They that allows about twelve for our four-bedroom houses. And twelve people. You might think that's an extended family with grandparents and all that. I had grandkids here last week, my daughter and her husband, but it's not. Twelve people usually amounts to four or five cars. I don't know what their connection is. And a lot of times we have twelve and talking to a few, it's because they can spread the cost per night by staying that way, by having a big, big house. I'm sleeping and maybe on the floor. I don't know how they do that. And then you compare it to the houses on the either side. You've got typically two residents and two cars off usually in the garage. So you don't see any. So you got the big car parking lot. The
Time, James. Thank you, sir. Sarah. We have Tom Cloppel, Jim Anderson and Trace Caker, Cacker.
Hello, folks. Wasn't actually planning to do this today. Sort of a last-minute decision. We live in the Denver area. My wife and I, Myra's her name. My name is Tom Cloppel. We are real estate brokers in Colorado. Most of our work is in Denver. We've done some work in the Summit County area as well. I wanted to start by saying I'm very familiar with Breckenridge. I started skiing here, I think in sixty-eight. Remember when I drive up to the ski lift that was there, park about ten yards away from the lift and had a wonderful time. Met a bunch of great friends, had good times, actually married Myra and started raising a family. Spent many times, many vacations up here at Breckenridge skiing. And it's a just a spectacular place. And in, I think I understand the idea back then was you wanted to create a world-class organization and and that is what you have done. And it in the basis for that, that growth and how strong it has become is due to the fact that the short-term market provides income for the community. It provides living experiences. We've actually ended up purchasing a home condo and tire chalet on the four o'clock road there. We also manage another property, also on in the same area on Riverbend. And both of those have been great income earners. And I think that the main thing I want to get there, so many people talking about maybe how this short-term cap rental is going to cause a lot of problems for income for the the community, for the town and and for the whole general feeling of the community. But I think another thing that hasn't been raised is we, when we purchased property, we worked hard trying to save enough money that we bought a condo here. We bought it like ten or eleven years ago now. And if we cannot sell that property and transfer that license over in some way to the buyer, that value of that property is going to collapse tremendously. We currently have the Riverbend property on the market now. We've seen very little traffic. I think people are holding off, trying to figure out what's going on. When we learned that the the val, the the overlay zones included our communities in zone one, that was a good thing. But it doesn't help us if we cannot sell the property and transfer that license to the new buyer. Nobody wants to buy, you know, I shouldn't say nobody. There are some people that just want a property that they can come up ski for a few months and enjoy it. But the majority of people that would be wanting to purchase it, they would want to enjoy it, but they also need an income stream to help them, especially with the high cost of these properties. So I would ask that, again, I'm running out of time, so.
Tom, thank you. Jimmy Anderson.
I think it was Jim earlier with backstage.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Rick. Trace? Is it Tracy or Tracy?
It's Trace.
Thank you.
I'm Trace Caker. I am the one of the owners of PMI Breck Property Management Company here in town. I am against this ordinance, especially the overlay districts, the zones. For a number of reasons, many have, which have already been stated. I'm going to try and go through my notes and skip those things so as not to take up too much of your time. But I do want to know that most of this, you know, I don't see a correlation between the reasons that you give as to why you're trying to pass this and what you're actually accomplishing with this. Many of the things that you talk about as far as noise and parking, they're not just caused by vacation renters. They are also caused by all the tourists in town, by the people who work here. And I think by enforcing the rules that we already have in place in this town and using the money from the fees to do that, you would be much better served to make this town what people want to see of it. And I think that you know, you've increased the fees to address these types of things. You talk about the unique, unique character of the town. Personally, I think that this town is wonderful, beautiful little town. Shows its mining roots, its ski history, an old mining town turned into a tourist town because of the beauty around here and the old historic places. Breckenridge will become a hotel central if we do not have vacation rentals. You know, families want to stay in in large homes, a lot of those zone three homes where they can enjoy each other. Mom and dad can go out to the ski, grandpa and grandma can watch the kids, things like that. Skipping some of this that's already been said. As far as workforce housing is concerned, you know, you've got the fees in place now to hopefully take care of a lot of the problems that we do have with that. I pay my people very well, but many of them are sometimes overqualified for the affordable housing that we have in town. And but they do not make enough money to buy something here in town. So I think adjusting those numbers would help also. You know, we want to have a world-class experience. I don't think that the vacation rentals and having people who are on vacation stuffing themselves into condo units is going to be good for that world-class resort that we've all been looking for and the world-class resort experience that you talk about. I like Breckenridge, the history, the old homes, the new homes. I even like the people who come here to visit. Most of them are nice and respectful and appreciate our town. The added bonus is that they spend money here so that we can have a nice life in one of the greatest places on earth. I have never been a believer in the I am here now, so close it down approach to development. You are trying to use short-term rentals in the same way by limiting the type of people who can own a home here or even those who want to visit here. Thank you.
Thanks, Trace. Nina Head, Louis Rozell and Andrew Biggin.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hello.
I love to go to Eric's and good evening, council. My notes are a hot mess. I've been scribbling all over everybody comes up here. So excuse me. And so I'm Nina Head. I've been coming here since nineteen seventy when I was in college. We bought in the nineties. Our address is four fifty, four o'clock road. I'm in Sunset condos. Zone one, we're right next to Pine Ridge. Thank God, near the bottom of the ski slope. I consider myself and my husband locals. When I'm on the ski run, I consider myself an expat along with all my other friends back there. I am very outspoken. Hopefully she dyed my hair red enough to let you know that. I was there today. I'm not soft-spoken like this young blonde Julie here and I won't go to tears like you. And and you can't make me. I don't care. I just say what I think and it gets, it comes out of my mouth and I can tell by your eyes, I said it out loud. And I don't care. And I'm, and I deserve it at this age. So I don't know where you got these stats. I talked to Sarah yesterday, the twenty-seven thousand to twenty-two and now twenty-one something. She told me it was from twenty eighteen. I heard it was from other places, but I'll go with her because she's so polite. So I also couldn't find on the website when we were going back to normal stats, what I call normal. So let's just say five years. I tried to call her today, but she was gone. So let's say five years, that's twenty twenty-seven. Then are we going back to normal stats? Hundred percent in my zone, one hun, you know, zone one. I don't get it. I don't know why we're going backwards. I heard from my interviews across town, we're trying to appease people who came here to retire and they're not wanting to assimilate to our resort town. This is a resort town. This is a resort community. I go downtown all the time. I welcome people. I welcome people at Eric's. I sit on my ski slope and I tell everybody, welcome, welcome. Where are you going today? Do you want to hear the new places to go? Do you want to hear all the fun? I love this town and I think we all should. And if you came here and you're expecting something different, move on. You're in the wrong community. We are a resort town. We've grown so much since my kids moved, we're here at one. And I love it. We should embrace it. That's all there is to it. We have people, we need more pockets. This map is screwed up. We need more pockets. These ladies have told about where they live and all the things on their We need more pockets. These ladies have told about where they live and all the things on their block. Where are those little pockets? My little pocket is right here and there are all kinds of condos around me and all kinds of condos where I walk my dog every day, my exit dog. But they're not on this map. You cannot vote for this map today. These pockets aren't here. We have all kinds of expats who moved here, open places. It's a wonderful place to live. If you don't like it, move on.
Thank you. Louis Rozell? Sorry, is that? I hope that's right.
Rozelli, it's all right.
Rozelli, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council for taking us today. I'd like to thank Shannon for responding to my email so quickly. I do appreciate that. I wasn't expecting it. I own over at Woods Manor, as Chuck previously and Stu stated, there are a lot of amenities. I found myself in a unique situation as I bought and I know Shannon, you said there were no maps. I found they were the workforce maps that I was using with my realtor. And we were specifically looking into the Columbine neighborhood to invest with the town. A little history with me, I owned a restaurant for better half of a decade here and just sold it. I've looked at the town as a partner of mine. I made money with the town. So I had no problem of reinvesting into the town for his specifically his own one license. As we all know, the inventory was short for the zone ones when I was looking to buy back in April. And we picked Woods Manor for their amenities and sitting in those workforce zone one maps. So I kind of feel we shouldn't be zone three. It's nobody's fault. I understand the zone line switched over when it got more official. I'm just hoping that we can reconsider those lines. And I'd like to finish with a question before I concede my time. If you do vote no, as Mr. Bert Bergen.
Bergeron.
Bergeron had stated, would that put the workforce maps back in play?
It would go back to the twenty two hundred cap throughout town. That's all it would change. They would just revert to the current rule that we passed in November.
So the overlay maps would still be in existence?
No, the overlay maps would go away and everything would be in the same zone where there was a twenty two hundred cap totally.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Louis. Hi, Andrew. Good evening.
Honorable counselors, Andrew Biggin. We were told that the STR ordinance was created to help create availability for long term housing for locals. The town then acknowledged that this would not create more long term housing for locals, but it would help maintain the fabric of the town. We were told that the STR ordinance is just one tool in the toolbox. This tool has been changed a number of times. But now if you take it out of the toolbox, it almost appears like a medieval mace. A bludgeon to use, it seems, against the undesirable and unrepresented but majority of tax paying property owners in our town. The second homeowner. Your staff have laid out this path for you to wander down and explore. This path is not the right path. And I ask you to turn around and walk back from whence you came. There is no shame in it. You are already starting other efforts to alleviate the long term housing for locals. We all here want to help you prevent the dilution of the brand that is Breckenridge. Please let's work together on this on a new path and in a new direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Andy Ford, Matthew Schroder and Lenny.
Hi, everybody. My name is Andy Ford. I first came to Breckenridge in ninety two, stayed at the village at Breckenridge. That was a pretty amazing place that I could have a chairlift at my backyard and Main Street and South Park Avenue, right across the street, restaurants underneath the building. Little did I know that over the course of the next thirty years, I would work for a company that developed the neighboring Main Street station. I would get a promotion based on a job being vacated by somebody going to help open and sell the higher residence club. And that I would now become the general manager at Marriott's Mountain Valley Lodge, all of which are around Maggie Pond. I'll keep it short. Just have one little quick thing. Two little quick things on behalf of a few people. Marriott's Mountain Valley Lodge sits approximately one block from the end of Main Street at the bottom of the Quicksilver Chairlift. We asked for the deletion of the shuttle services requirement from section four dash six A and E of Council Ball twenty eight or at a minimum, the delayed implementation of the requirements. Were mostly a timeshare property that runs seventy to eighty percent timeshare occupancy over the course of the year. This would hit the homeowners or the timeshare owners in our building disproportionately with a major expense without much planning time. At least if you do pass the ordinance as currently planned, requiring a shuttle vehicle and a shuttle team of drivers, which could run anywhere from one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand a year, depending on how many you have. At least please give the associations time to build up their budget so that we can choose to impose everything into our next budget. Thank you very much.
Andy, thank you.
My name is Matthew Schroder. My wife and I own the home at eighteen eighty three Highlands Drive, which is located in zone three. We are retired citizens who have an STR next to us. We don't rent and he's a good actor. I have his text. I have his cell phone. He's a good guy and we get along really well. We embrace Breckenridge, as the previous speaker said, it is a resort community and you have to recognize that and we do, we do as well. We do not rent our, our, our home. At the July twenty sixth council meeting, I petitioned the council for relief from the crushing ten percent cap in zone three citing the negative effects it is having on property sales and values in zone three. At that meeting, I offered a compromise proposal that would address the concerns of my fellow neighbor on Marksberry Way. I understand his concerns, but would also provide cash flow, some cash flow to zone three property owners. And my compromise proposal would allow, what I, what I proposed was that STRs be permitted in zone three only during the months of February, March, July and the holidays, three and a half months out of twelve. Provide some cash flow to property second owners, but also balances the concerns of my neighbors in Highlands Drive and so forth. From what I can tell, and maybe this will change this evening, from what I can tell, the council has ignored my petition for relief. As a citizen, I would appreciate knowing why the council has decided not to provide relief to zone three property owners. Will the council explain why? Will it explain its reasonings to the citizens like myself and others? Assuming no relief is forthcoming, zone three owners will suffer an economic loss as a result of the new STR rules. They purchase their properties with the right to STR. When they go to sell, they will sell without the right. While the council clearly has the right to regulate, is it fair? Is it fair to wash its hands from the economic consequences of its decisions? Is that just? Calculating the economic loss is straightforward. It is the net present value of the marginal cash inflows, net of marginal outflows that would have been received over a suitable time horizon, say five to ten years. There are three thousand eight hundred and ninety three homes in zone three, properties, excuse me, in zone three, according to the town's website. With an average value of say approximately one and a half million, you get, you get an approximate market value of six billion dollars. Six billion in zone three. A one percent economic loss would mean a loss of sixty million dollars.
That's time, Matthew.
This will be much greater. Thank you.
Thank you. Lenny.
Hi, Council. Lenny Westberg, I've lived for eighteen years in Warriors Mark West and I feel just like Mark as someone who lives there, I still want to see the, the short term rentals in my neighborhood because right now we are about forty percent cold beds, ten percent owner occupied like myself and Mark. And the rest are short term rentals. We bring that from fifty to forty, you'll have eighty percent cold beds and I won't have any neighborhoods and it'll be an abandoned neighborhood. I think my first question though is, why are you doing this? I mean, if you go back to the beginning, originally it was about long term rental availability, making war homes available for long term rentals. Then you realize that wasn't really going to happen with the caps. Then you decided that you want to preserve neighborhood characteristics, but my neighborhood, for example, will be completely revamped and it won't be preserving neighborhood characteristics at all. So if you don't really know why you're doing this, then you shouldn't vote for it. You have to have, you know, so think about it. Why are you doing this? The other thing is, is you've seen, all these people come up and say, well, what about my neighborhood? What about my neighborhood? What about my neighborhood? That tells you right there that there's a fairness issue as the last speaker spoke about. There are other solutions where you really could do things about long term renting. You know, where, you know, things that you really could do that would help that issue if you cared about that issue. Such as maybe you have to earn a license, like you long term rent for a year and then you get a twenty year license. Then you would automatically throw long term rentals into the pool. You know, there are, there are plenty of options without picking favorites and saying, I like this neighborhood. I'm going to reward them and I'm going to punish that neighborhood. And if a neighborhood and there's several of them have over fifty percent rentals and you're putting them in a zone three, you have to ask yourself, why am I saying that this isn't a vacation neighborhood if it already is? Instead of basing it on outdated blood descriptions, you should base it on the reality of what it is. If something's already over fifty percent vacation homes, why are you trying to change that and make it ten percent vacation homes? So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thanks, Lenny. We're going to have Tim Painter, Toby Babich and Carl Batista.
Good evening, Council. My name is Tim Painter. Of Breckenridge. I live here six months a year and then I travel and let the seasonal renters have it. I also wanted to talk about the shuttle service. I remember twenty years ago when I bought that by the time the shuttle could get to us when we called them, we could get on the bus. It was quicker. And in the meantime, we had somebody hanging around the condo association with nothing to do. It wasn't economically feasible. And so I don't see why we have to have a shuttle requirement for resort properties. It just doesn't make sense. Laundry, when I sold commercial real estate, if you had a laundromat, it was hazardous material. We, we didn't want a laundry in your business and I don't see why we should have a laundry requirement for resort properties. Bedrooms in the old legislation, we had an exception for resort properties. I have a studio loft with two bathrooms. It's bigger than a one bedroom. The problem is because a seaster says as a studio, I can only have four people, but you can have six people in this, in the one bedroom. Doesn't make sense. And so I would encourage language in the, in the law that would allow us who have two bedrooms and more square footage to have more people. I'm really uncomfortable with hard caps in the language and I would much rather see it as a percentage. Because I'm distrustful that will include additional complexes and then all of a sudden that hard cap makes a hundred percent turn into eighty percent. I also really am encouraging you to allow a hundred percent in zone one because I one day want to sell my River Mountain Lodge and buy in zone lot one. And the only way I could possibly at these prices afford it would be to rent out and then my grandchildren will come and live with me and my, my son as well. There was ten thirty one exchange language in the past bill and that's not in this current bill that I could find anywhere. I also appeal to the fundamental fairness of how do we decide warriors mark no, but River Mountain Lodge, yes. And it seems like there has to be a fairer way, but I'm with you. Certainly, we don't want to leave it the way it was. This legislation is much better than what, what is exists right now. Finally, I want to really thank all of you because I know this has been very difficult and I admire you all for making the hard decisions and and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Toby.
Hey, everybody. Hang on a second. I'm a little tall. Toby Babich, I own a company called Breckenridge Resort Managers in town. I wanted to back up a couple of things that I heard here tonight and introduce one that hasn't been heard. Rental demand is down both for the summer and the upcoming winter. Price reductions are coming by the dozens every day in the real estate market and transactions are almost at a standstill. And we are either in a recession or entering into one. So we need to be very cautious about the steps we take as a community. Overall, I appreciate the town being open to collaboration and taking such a deep dive into this. I know it's been a lot of hard work for everybody. I appreciate it. I know it's not an easy equation to solve and I thank everyone for their time and energy. Of the three zones we're talking about, I would make a request that we take a deeper dive into zone three and we've heard that consistently tonight. The majority of the area has three characteristics that do not warrant such a vigorous reduction from thirty five percent saturation to ten. First and foremost, local workers, probably myself included, aren't able to afford homes in many of these areas, most of these areas. Secondarily, many of these areas are closely proximate to the ski area, ski runs and ski lifts, which appeal better to visitors that are coming into our community. And thirdly, these homes bring in visitors with more disposable income, which benefits other local industries such as restaurants, retail and activities. A ten percent cap has no direct benefit to the workforce housing issue, the business community or the community at large, though it does force communities to present very peaceful neighborhoods to wealthy retirees. If you do slash this from thirty five to ten percent, it'll create a ghost town in many areas, again, with no benefit to workforce housing issues and it will likely reduce in town spending. This is a miscalculation in the process and I'd like for you all to consider correcting it before you vote on the ordinance tonight. You do have the option to table it and instruct staff to work with the task force to potentially carve out or include more areas in zone two, zone one, or potentially even develop a different zone. I would request in zone three that we cap current licenses at least at what they are, or maybe somewhere around twenty five percent. So it would allow a little more transfer of licenses in these areas and be more commiserate with their current use. We could also allow for single family homes to be exempt from the cap and we can always lower it post recession if needed. And with my last eighteen seconds, I'll implore you, please don't raise fees on second homeowners again. They've been beat up enough. We owe them a little respect. Let's just take a pause on the fees. It's four hundred dollars a bedroom. I think that's plenty right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Toby. Carl Batista.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I had no idea I'd be here tonight, but here I am and I took the opportunity. My wife Christine and I, we are real estate professionals. We own multiple properties, one in Shock Hill, one in the Village. So everything you're doing is of course affecting us. Everybody here has said such great things. Every, every thought that I had, every point that I was going to bring up has been brought up and articulated very well, especially like you. And you were great. I don't, I don't know. Yes, you, the redhead. Yes. Great job. And not to blow, everybody that came up, everybody said something I thought was great. Even the gentleman who came up and said something about the fact that, you know, he's retired. I don't know where he is, but he would like to be quieter around his home. When we bought here and we were going to buy something in the two, three million dollar range, we looked at something and someone came. When we looked at it, the next door neighbor came over and talked to us. We knew right there and then that person didn't want us there. So we didn't buy that property. We didn't buy it. They didn't want it. But then I asked myself, why would these people move to a resort area and then expect something like this? Doesn't make any sense. Just doesn't. Doesn't make any sense. Just doesn't make any sense. So all I can do is ask you to listen to all these very articulate people, very passionate people. Mary, I love what you were saying. That was a vacation rentals, what it should be. Uh, I, I think if you were to put yourselves in the shoes of these people who have articulated their feelings and understand where we are, and then make a decision based on if you were in our shoes, listening to what you're about to do. Please pause, regroup and rethink what you're doing.
Thank you. All right, Myra Kloppl. I'm assuming Marty Semner was earlier.
Yes.
Thomas, Thomas Berry and Terry Sweeth.
Ready for me? Yes, I'm Tom's wife. My name is Myra Kloppl and we own a condo in Tyra Chalet at 624 O'Clock Road. We also manage another one across the street and I'm, I'm very proud of what we do. We have an excellent like 4.9 star rating on VRBO for both of our condos. We work very, very hard to keep them clean. They've always been licensed. We've always followed all the rules. We've paid all the taxes and all the fees that we were supposed to. We've contributed to the community as best we could. Because like Tom said, he started skiing at age 18. And then when we met a few years later, he taught me how to ski when I was 21. And we've taught our children, our grandchildren, and we've been season pass holders. And we are truly committed to this town, even though we feel like we couldn't really afford to live here full-time ourselves because we had to work at real estate in Denver. So one of the things I want to come to you and ask tonight is that our condos, both the condos, the one we own and the one we manage are in zone one. It's going to be impossible to sell those. Now, as you can see with my silver hair, at some point we're going to have to sell our condo because we'll just be too old to do all of the work we do on it now. We are the kind of people that go in and give it the white glove treatment and try and see, is it clean for our guests? Are we proud of it? We change out the bedding, the mattresses when we need to quickly. And we put in new pots and pans. We want it to be a nice place for people. So we've got lots of five-star reviews because of that. So what we'd like to ask you is, and I'm speaking only for zone one, which is what our condos are in. If you could please reconsider and maybe take a pause and just try to think if it would be the right thing to do to allow these investment properties on the 4 o'clock road corridor to give their license to the next person who buys the condo from them. With them, of course, paying all appropriate fees and so forth. They're doing that in Steamboat Springs. Anybody that has a license now and sells their home can, the next person who buys it is guaranteed. They can get that license and continue running it as a short-term rental. I want to tell you, when you go up 4 o'clock road, you look at it and you think, gosh, these condos look great. I mean, there's great landscaping. The buildings are all painted. There's no peeling paint. Everybody keeps these buildings in great shape and that's good for the whole community. And one of the things I want to tell you is the HOA dues are being paid very regularly at these condos. And the reason they're being paid is because of the short-term rentals that are coming in. Those HOA dues are really super high. I don't know if any of you own a short-term rental. But for years, Tom and I had dreamed of owning a condo in Breckenridge. We used to drive up 4 o'clock road and think someday, maybe we gotta eat more macaroni and cheese and with hot dogs and peas in it, you know, to save money. And we always bought used cars instead of new ones because that was our goal from the beginning of our marriage. Oh my gosh. Well, I got to tell you, the HOA dues, if, if these get turned into short-term, I mean, get turned into long-term rentals. A lot of the HOA funds aren't going to come in to take care of those properties to make them look good. And if they turn into long-term, there's only one parking space for a lot of these. Where are you going to put people if, if two married people?
Thank you, Myra. Appreciate it. Thomas Berry.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thanks for having me tonight. My name's Thomas Berry and my wife and I have a company called Hosting From The Heart. We have, we just managed a couple of small homes in Summit County. And I just wanted to tell a story about the fabric of the type of people that we host that come to Breckenridge to enjoy this beautiful town. We, we recently welcomed a girl named Caroline and her father was terminally ill. And they came and they stayed in our little cottage. And after they left, she, she wrote us a full-page letter thanking us for this experience. For the fact that she got to come and spend one more time with her father in this town. It's so important that they grew up skiing together and that was just, it just touched our hearts. And so I kind of want to throw this out there to put the onus on all of us property managers. I think it shouldn't be about zones and everything. It should be about responsibility, being responsible hosts. We welcome families. We welcome good people, five-star vetted people. We want people to come here and create unforgettable memories for the rest of their lives in Breckenridge. And I think that's the most important thing. We can host responsibly. We can mitigate parties or too many people or too many cars. That should be on us and put, we would get right into our licenses that we need to follow all these rules and make it hard on us. And we'll follow those rules because we want to do this because we want to welcome people to this community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Harry.
Hello, I'm Terry Sweeten. People of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Do ordain and establish this constitution for the United States of America. These are the words of our forefathers, words established by them for us, for all generations. We, the people of the town of Breckenridge deserve a voice, how the town is governed. I have written to the mayor and town council twice and have never received a response to either email, email. Justifying the zone overlay by land use district without the involvement of the people who own there is not the way to govern our town. Well, my land use district 30.5 Warriors Mark West was annexed into the town. Colorado law required that every homeowner had a right to a ballot vote in order to move forward with the annexation from Summit County into the town. We are not a large community. Each homeowner and each LUD should have been able to vote as to whether they were on board with the SCR restrictions being imposed by our town council. In fact, if the decisions that you're making are so right for our town, why don't I see any of you canvassing in our subdivision and getting buy-in for these restrictions? Furthermore, when I bought here, I had the right to short-term my, rent my property. When my neighbor down the street was annexed into the town with the perimeter fence, that fence was grandfathered in. Why do we have to take such a radical stance on short-term rentals instead of fixing what may be broken? Where is the data to justify that this is the right decision for the town? I watched in the July meeting as our lives were moved around like pieces of a puzzle with statements like, I feel, I like when determining the percentages for each zone. There was no scientific data to justify the decisions made by council. Like it or not, SDRs are a big part of the character of this town and financial livelihood for a majority of our locals here. Who is benefiting from the short-term rental restrictions? The timeshares.
Terry. Amanda Stewart. Kim Stevenson and Dave Wilcox. Dave, you don't know, you can wait to stand up if you want. You know.
Oh, sorry. This is going to be tricky.
No worries.
Here. Um, thank you all for letting me speak. I don't vote in Breckenridge, but I own, I've owned here for 15 years. And, um, I guess four weeks ago I spoke just about what I remember and my family remember as the character of Breckenridge. And it is that ability, unlike what you couldn't really do in Vail and you couldn't do in Keystone. Really couldn't do it in Frisco either, Copper, because you could rent a house and come with grandma and grandpa and all the kids. And then as we got older, you could bring more kids and it was a lot of fun. And by, by basically, um, creating a zone three that significantly restricts the rentals or the intent is really to, to constrict that rental pool of homes. I really am concerned that you guys are fundamentally changing the character of Breckenridge. But what I wanted to talk about tonight in, as a real estate professional, as a developer back in Phoenix, I've dealt with a lot of issues for takings and I've dealt with a lot of issues of dark communities in areas. And I want to talk about how that can impact the fabric and character of a community and how that can actually kind of basically create a bit of a civil war in a community. If you have a large takings lawsuit, which though you may hear, it may not come. When you're looking at 500 million, when you're looking at a billion dollars with the real estate and you begin to significantly impact that during a recession, those taking lawsuits will come. So what I wanted to talk about tonight is how instituting a moratorium on rental licenses in my community of Warriors Mark West or Upper Warriors Mark. And basically what that will do to your short-term and long-term maintenance income in those areas. So we're not talking about employment, but those are the funds that go into painting the house, taking care of the landscape, making sure you don't have rodent and raccoon problems, keeping the heat on so the house doesn't freeze and mold. All of those kinds of things, paying those property taxes, paying those rental tax fees, all of that kind of thing. You're not really sure what people, what any particular homeowner's financial situation is at any time. But I can tell you, when 2006 hit, Warriors Mark West became a bit of a dark community. Property values decreased by over $200,000 on those homes. Multiply that by 110 homes and you'll see what a takings issue would be. Start to look at the income. Most homeowners, second homeowners do not actually make a net income on their rental income. That income is basically used to counterbalance the maintenance costs for the property. So again, I would either say, please vote no tonight or increase your enforcement from the city perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Hi, I'm Kim Stevenson. Uh, I'm a Summit County resident and I own a couple of properties in Breckenridge. I'm also a Breckenridge business owner. Uh, I wanted to talk about the resort zone requirement to, for each complex to have their own town shuttle system. A lot of the resort zone properties are next to or a half a block away from Main Street. So the renters park their cars in the provided garage parking and they walk around town. They do take advantage of the town shuttle. So I'm wondering if town council can consider that they each don't need their own shuttle system. They can ride the town buses and that's what they do now. Because I, I think there's going to be problems with more shuttles added. Uh, I believe it will clog the roadways more and cause more pollution. Uh, I don't think it's needed. And, um, I think that, uh, the, you know, town bus system is sufficient. Uh, also, you know, the renters walk around town. They can walk around if they're next to Main Street or half a block away. They don't need a car or a shuttle. So my other point is, uh, I believe that zone one should have 100% rental licenses available. Uh, if you are the unlucky seller, when zone one reaches the 90% cap, then your potential buyer will not be able to obtain a short-term rental license. And probably you will not be able to sell your property. That's, you know, the, the zone one properties were zoned for, built for and sold as short-term rentals. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. David. Nice to see you.
You as well. David Wilcox from Summit Mountain Rentals, mayor and council. Uh, thank you for allowing me to address you and give voice to one of our homeowners. One of our partner homeowners who's written a letter, which I'll read shortly. My role at Summit Mountain Rentals and working for Mark and Mary Waldman affords me contact with second homeowners are within our portfolio on a daily basis. It's a committed, passionate, intelligent, community-minded group. They have an emotional attachment to Breckenridge and I think they deserve a voice. I hope I do credit to Paul and Kathy Huffman from Wichita, Kansas, who are 23-year-old, no, sorry, they're older than that. They've owned a White Wolf property for 23 years. It gets hot in here. Ay, ay. As the owner of our White Wolf property that has always been part of us, a vacation rental program for resort guests, along with probably more than half of the other properties in the neighborhood. It's very frustrating to now learn that White Wolf will not be in zone one as originally proposed. I would strongly ask that you reconsider this decision. Trying to base this decision off old LUDs in today's environment, I guess I'm supposed to say LUDs, I guess, sorry.
You're good.
That we're not even in existence at the time the LUDs were established makes no sense. White Wolf is a half mile from the base of Peak Eight on Ski Hill Road and the Nordic Trails in our backyard was, and the Nordic Trails are in our backyard with access to town and the path. White Wolf homes have never been and probably never will be the type of property or location where resort employees or young people moving to Breckenridge are going to be long-term renting or trying to purchase. I do not agree that vacation rental licensing restrictions is the solution to community affordable housing, especially in neighborhoods such as White Wolf, Park Forest and the Settlement. The very existence and success of these neighborhoods is due to their desirability to resort guests and second homeowners. Most of all, home, most of all, the homeowners in these areas are individuals, not large corporations and very much share your love and equally want the best of all of Breckenridge and its future success. Very important that the interest of all those that love Breckenridge, whether they be part-time or full-time residents be considered. It's, it's a wonderful group of people. They're very passionate. Paul and Kathy, I hope I did you justice.
Thank you, David. Last two, Kelly Hepburn and Tim Calkins.
Thank you. I've written 10 pages of notes thus far. I'm going to try to keep this going. I live here in Summit County. I'm not in the town of Breckenridge limits. So these zones do not exactly apply to me in my specific property. That bus has already left for me. I didn't get a short-term rental license. And while I can't speak for myself and my property here, I can speak for those that I do know that own in these zones that are impacted. Much like I was. Um, I have a client, a human, a person, not an entity, not a billionaire, that purchased a unit next to me. He's now making 10,000 a month and I'm renting a bedroom for about a thousand. So you can see the difference there. Um, I scrapped every penny that I had to be able to afford to buy my own house here. As a single, young, maybe not that young anymore, um, young professional business owner. I live and breathe in this community and this is a lot, a lot for you guys to decide, a lot for us to take in as property owners, as our rights have changed, as the use of our properties continues to change. I just ask that you pause again. Um, we don't have to say yes today. I actually emailed council and the mayor suggesting zones. You can call me the big bad wolf. I don't know why he was doing it. So, uh, it was better than restricting everyone, but why not use these areas that are resort-known areas? Give them at least those rights. So my clients, um, yes, I am a big bad wolf realtor. Not really. I'm not scary, right? But I'm really having a hard time directing my clients of where they should buy because everything keeps changing. We've seen properties go down in value. If that was the goal, um, they're still not affordable enough for locals. I'll run a quick scenario because my time's almost up. But there's currently nine listings in the town of Breckenridge that are under 600,000. This is where this conversation first started. And in order for a local to be able to afford that unit, this is not a deed restricted unit, just a Val d'Isère. It's reduced three times thus far in 88 days it's been on market. No locals are scooping up to buy it because it would require them to make a hundred thousand dollars a year and pay over $3,600 a month if they are able to put 5,000 or 5% down. Our locals can't afford that. I commend you guys for the projects that are on the way. We're waiting for them eagerly, my friends, family, et cetera. But these ramifications will impact our community for generations. What's ahead is a pending looming recession. We've been through a pandemic together. All of these things has impacted different statistics. So none of them are correct in my opinion to make these decisions right now. opinion to make these decisions right now. People rushed here from the cities to get away from urban jungles to retreat to the mountains, just like we all did when we first came here.
Thank you, Kelly. Tim. And then Tanya.
Good evening. I'm Tim Calkins. I have a place up in the Highlands. I was lucky enough to get it back in 2013. And, and we have the place and we do vacation rentals on occasion. We've always had good rentals. It works out great. No problems. It's been a great experience. But I'd like to tell you about the house next to mine because they bought the house the same year we did back in 2013. And we are really looking forward to getting to know the new neighbors. And we were looking for a time when they would be there, but 2013 went by and we were never there when there was a light on in the house. And then 2014, there was never a light on in the house, 2015, 16, seven. My kids started joking. They would say the people who bought that house, they must be from Australia. Because then they were asleep during the day and they would be up at night. And finally, they sold the place last year to a very nice couple and that's great. But for over a decade, it sat there empty, never used, never the whole time, just empty. And my worry with the proposal is that in zone three, what you're going to do is create a community that's just like that. Totally empty, full of people who bought it. They don't have to rent it and they just leave it empty. And I don't think that leads to a great community. It certainly is not the community I think any of us want to be sort of part of. So I would encourage you not to do that. Also, the zones, I would really encourage you not to do that. People like a variety of places when they come to rent. It's not all about just being right by the slopes. People like a variety and I think that's important. Finally, we're all a community. And I think we like to think of ourselves as all being part of this wonderful town. When you start doing the zones, you know, some zones get 100% and then other zones are 10%. If we think we have too many of the vacation rentals, well, let's be in it together. And if we need to limit it, let's all do it together and take the pain that comes with it. But we're a community and if we're going to restrict one group, let's move that across the board. Anyway, thank you for all you do and appreciate you.
Thank you. Tanya.
Hi, town council. I'm Tanya Delahose. I reside at 616 Highfield Trail. I also chair the Town of Breckenridge Planning Commission. After this, you guys may ask for my resignation. And I will give you that. I have sat here at home listening to all of our public comment and our, our constituents of like everyone's comments of concern about this. And while I am not on town council, I implore you to listen to our residents, listen to our community. I am a realtor. I have skin in the game. However, and I have several like buyers and sellers that are tied to this, but I'm going to lose those transactions. It doesn't matter to me. I would prefer to go into this with fairness and with equity. And I would rather you listen to our residents and our constituents and listen to the two hours of comments that we have had and listen to what they have had to say. And speaking as the chair of our planning commission, I'm not going to speak of everyone on the planning commission, but I will speak with on behalf of several of the members of planning commission, that this is not the way that we want the town to go. We have concerns with this. And I ask you to take that with consideration and take that with what you will as you go into tonight's vote. That's all I ask. Thank you for listening to me. If you want my resignation tomorrow morning, I will respectfully give that to you. Listening to me.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
All right.
Can I ask what planning commissions don't agree?
No, no, I don't even go there. That concludes, that's all the names I have. That concludes the public hearing for the evening. Don't see any other hands. All right. And we'll move on to council, but we're going to take a five minute break.
Which was a mix of industry, community members, staff. That's what the direction they suggested to us. And using those tools, I think this ordinance does make it stronger. And we came to this point because we listened to the community and this is that next step. So I am supportive of this.
I'll go. You know, someone asked, you know, put yourself in our shoes. I think we're all in their shoes. I guess seven of us, six of us are in zone three. And I think it will probably affect all our property values. Personally, I'll take the hit for the good of the community. No one is losing their license. And, and I think we'll be flexible enough if we see, you know, the prophets of doom, the dire predictions that come through that we turn into a ghost town or Kremlin, we can, we can make, we can make adjustments. But you look at zone one, 71% VR licenses in zone one and we're saying 90. If it gets to a point where that is an issue, maybe we can talk about it. But, you know, and then I hear that we should all listen to the community, you know, listen to the public comments. And I, and I did, I listened to all of them. But I also have to hearken back to the last election. We had 10 people running. Three people supported the STI, the VR regulations. Six were vehemently against it and one was kind of neutral. The three that supported it got twice as many votes as the seven remaining down ballot applicants. I, I do think, you know, someone mentioned, I think, I think it was David mentioned, you know, a 23 year owner at White Wolf. And he's bumming that it could have properly, it could affect his property value. Well, first of all, I don't think there's been any, any indication, any quantifiable indication that this has really decimated the property values in, in Breckenridge.
We sat here and listened to you folks. Okay.
So.
This is not, if you want to go outside and yell at it, please leave the room. Okay.
So the, the deal is talking to realtors, yeah, the property value has taken a hit, but there's a recession, there's a war in Ukraine, interest rates have gone through the roof. I don't know if you can blame any sort of adjustment on, on this, this regulation. And if we vote upon this regulation, at least that will put uncertainty to bed. At least people will know what they're getting into. I think, you know, I, I would be totally fine with just voting no on this, going back to the, getting rid of all the zones completely, going back to the 21, 22 cap and, and just, you know, let attrition take its course. But I do think I see the logic in, in the various zones. So I, I think, yeah, this is a, this is a difficult thing and none of us take this lightly. But I, I think this is a triage situation. Bottom line is people assume that, oh, we're doing this for, for affordable housing. Well, no 10 snowboarders are going to live in the Highlands, but they might live, as they might rent out a gold camp or a Peak Eight village where 25 of those long term units went to short term in the last 18 months. So there is, there is some movement. It will help to a certain degree, but it's just one of many tools in the toolbox that we're trying to do to try to make Breckenridge not lose and not be diminished, the product that we all know and love. And the bottom line is we don't have enough people to service the visitors that come to our community currently. So I'm going to vote yes on this. I, I will down the road, be flexible if we have to tweak it. But we have to do something and I, and I, you know, I've been getting, I bet I have, I bet I have 10, 15 texts from, from realtors that are friends of mine, that one of their big things that they say is, is let's eliminate the uncertainty. And actually I've had just so many realtors write me, say they support what we're doing. So, and, and property managers, it's, it's amazing. So there it is. That's what I, I'm going to vote yes on this thing and I, I do think we will be flexible. And if this is something that isn't working as we'd like or the recessions gets horrible, then, then we can make adjustments. But essentially I think we're going to do something and we should stop tonight.
Okay. You ready or you need to go?
I'm good. I, I want to take a second to, to shout out to staff and how much time you guys have all spent on this researching. Every request that we had for additional data and more numbers. And I want to thank Severn for coming to the table and, and speaking with us and, and providing the data that, you know, in spreadsheets that I, I, I love to look at. And, and the realization that this is an imperfect process. But there, there is no perfect, there, there's, you know, we've looked at communities across the United States, resort communities that are in the same boat. Some have put on much stricter regulations than we would ever dream of. Some aren't. And we have to find our place in that, in that spectrum. And, and I find that our place utilizing the zoning that's in place prior to any of us makes a lot of sense. It's not using our discretion. It's using the discretion of the people way before us that designed this town of where the infrastructure should be. There will always be a house or a neighborhood or a complex that is beyond the bubble. That is, I say, hey, move the line just one to the right so that we can be included. And then there'll be someone else on the bubble, right? And that, and that thing, that, that line keeps moving over and over and over again. And so to draw, to use. And so to draw, to use the lines that are already in place, that are not random, that are not discriminatory against any units, it's not carving in, it's not carving out, I think is, is imperfect, but it's the best we have at this moment. Regulation is, the ordinance is not about killing tourism. It's not even about decreasing it, at least not in my mind. It's about placing tourism where we have the infrastructure that can serve our guests the best. And I've talked to a lot of you about how our guest, who is planning their one trip a year to Breckenridge from Kansas, Oklahoma, Florida. And they're coming with a bunch of friends. They wanna celebrate an anniversary, a family reunion, a bachelor party, whatever it might be. They don't know that they're going into a neighborhood. They don't know if they're going into a, to a four o'clock road, a ski hill road. They just know they rented a house. And for them to go into a house in Zone, in a Zone 3 and have the cops call them on them at 10:01 PM while they're having a bottle of champagne in the hot tub, is not a good guest experience for them. We have the infrastructure on the west side of Maine and in Zone 1 and in the resort area to serve our guests better. Where they, they can park their car and not get in, in it again until they're ready to leave. They can walk into town. They have bus service. They can walk to the slopes. I had, I did hear, you know, the comments about the requirement of the resort communities being required to have a shovel service. And I'm open to a discussion on that. And that's something that I think council could have feedback on for the second reading and that we can talk about if that's open, because that, that is constructive criticism that my ears were open to and I, and I wanna be sympathetic to. The comment was made that this was originally supposed to solve our workforce housing problem. And I just want to clarify that it's not about solving it, it's about keeping it from getting worse. That we were losing more long-term rentals than we could build or that we could buy and deed restrict. It was about stopping the bleeding just for a second to let us get ahead, to allow the staff that is in this room, that is in your companies, to work where they live. And it's just like that, that's the point. It's, it's not about solving it. There's no silver bullet. I, I really do think that this ordinance has flex where we're going to be able to look at this down the road and see kind of ramifications of where it happens. But at the same time, we have an average occupancy rate of 42% in this town. By keeping our short-term licenses, by actually allowing them to increase under this ordinance, it's not going, we're not looking to kill the tourist economy. We get it. It is a resort community. With all the imperfections of it, I am a firm supporter of the ordinance as written.
First off, want to thank staff. Mark, your crew's done unbelievable work for more than a year. Brad, Sarah, Bella, you know, it's, it's, it's amazing the work you guys have done. So thank you for your hard work. Kirsten as well, and it took a lot of time into this. So, thanks. To the council members that have been here for longer than Jay and I have, I thank the five of you. Just in a little bit of time, I've been here, it's incredible the amount of work I've seen you put in. And then, you know, you, you add another year to that. So thank you. I know you guys have poured your hearts into this and, and will continue to do so in the best interest of our community as a whole. So, thanks for that effort. One of the neat things here that I, I think as I'm new, new to this role is there's a lot of folks out in the audience today that have reached out to me and had ideas and said, hey, have you looked at this? And hey, tweak this or think about this. And I really appreciate that. To me, that's how we, we do better. And I think that's the path forward ultimately, right, is, is making decisions, getting something out there, learning from it and making it better, you know? Andrew, you got my cell phone. Call me. You've been in this community a long time. You got a ton of experience. Sarah, you know, feel free to pass out my number to the Realtor Board. Savram, you know, it's funny running into you guys at the bistro. I wanna have those chats where we dig in, beat it up, present ideas. And then as a community with data, so thank you for sending data that we, we make it better. Ultimately, you know, I agree with Jeffrey. To me, it's about the customer experience. It's about this ecosystem, this amazing ecosystem that is really spectacular. And this cap is about protecting that ecosystem in the long run. And, and to me, when I look at sales tax revenue on short-term rentals going from 6.3 million in 2020, anybody see what it is this year? 13.2 million. It was 9.8 last year. So it doubled. Short-term rental sales revenue doubled. When I look at our licenses, we went from just over 3,720 to 4,438 in 2021. That's 700 new licenses. And similar to what Jay was saying, you know, we are a pro-business board. We're pro-tours. This is a tourist town, right? We all get that. Over time and with attrition, yeah, we're gonna lose some licenses. But I don't, it's, it's not gonna stop the opportunity for property managers to have places to sell into. We're gonna lose some of those and maybe there's gonna be bigger picture economy things that are out there and we're gonna adjust to that. Jan, you brought up a really good point about the 60 units. I'd love to see us add in. When you look, when you add up the math, we talked about 2,200, it's 60 short. You know, I think you add that into Zone 1, that probably gets us up to what, 93% dick? So that's a good math there, Jan. Thank you. Agree with Jay on looking at the shuttle. I think that's worth doing. We can, we can be smarter there. And then, hold on, I need my cheaters. I don't think what we've drafted is perfect. It's imperfect. And I've wrestled with this for a couple of weeks now and certainly a ton in the last, ton in the last week. I'd like to see some improvement in Land Use District 10. You know, the, the language around that talks about, you know, they talk about phrases, and, and I think this is for some of the places in Zone 1, within walking distance, close proximity to lifts. The interesting thing to me is, is in Land Use District 10, it talks about residential, but it's essentially what's going on on the ground is we're near ski areas and lifts. So we might be able to do better there. But I think I've got a, I'm a small business guy. I make decisions on my company. You move forward, you learn from it, you do better. And as a result, I'm in favor of what we've got on the table, cuz I wanna see something past. I wanna see us move forward and then I wanna see us make it better with help from the audience and staff and folks at the table. Thanks.
Thanks, Todd.
Yeah, I agree with much, as much of what has been said and I'll emphasize just a couple of things. This is about balance, you know, and I think we have gotten a little bit out of balance. You look at some of the sales data, as Todd pointed out, and I, I think, think some of the real estate sales, you know, kind of mirror those type, that same data. So we've, we've really had a three years of robust growth in this industry. And it's had some consequences. And so we've, we've feel, felt compelled to do something. We did something, what, eight, nine months ago? And, and then the community came and said, let's do overlay zones. We can make it better. And, and I think we have, we've tried. Are we there yet? I, I don't think any of yous think that we're 100%. We have a perfect ordinance. But, you know, I, I have heard enough people who appreciate the compromise, who, who appreciate the work, the collaboration with many in the industry, and who really feel an urgency to end the uncertainty. So, for that reason, I'm, I, I feel, I will vote for it tonight. I'm open to, to what was the 60 units into Zone 1 to get to the 2,200 exactly, since that was the original ordinance. But it is about balance and we can't forget our workforce. You know, this, this isn't gonna solve, like Jay said, this isn't the silver bullet that's gonna solve our, our workforce housing challenges. Our, our housing staff, and, and I also recognize the staff generating all this data. It's much of the same staff that's in the housing staff. We've set a goal for the next five years to add 1,000 deed restricted units to this town. That's 1,000 units that will be protected for our workforce in perpetuity. And so I feel like we're really trying to do our part in bringing either new units or existing units and protecting them. And we're well on our way to that number. And, and it seems, it's very realistic. I think it's realistic to think we might exceed it. So, it is about balance. It's about quality of life. It's about making a living. And we, we need to find that balance point. And that's what this ordinance is all about. And I understand it's not perfect for everyone. I do appreciate everyone's comments tonight. I feel like they were all very constructive. And it was, it felt like a whole different tone than nine months ago and I, I thank all of you for that. I appreciate it. So, I am in favor. I'm open to adding the 60 to Zone 1.
Well, I think everything that the people up here have said have really, you know, covered what I would have added to the conversation. I do, I was just really, really impressed with everybody who came tonight and spoke and people who didn't speak and came and listened to the, you know, several hour-long conversation. I just, it really honestly reinforces what a great community this is and why we all wanna stay here and be a part of it. And I really am excited to move forward and keep trying to find a center ground with everybody in this room and everybody in this community, because this really just, I agree with Dick. This was super useful and we will continue to use the comments that were here tonight and the committee work that was done over the last year and just continue trying to make this better and better and so that it works for more people. Just knowing that's, you know, it's not always, it's not ever gonna work for everybody. And that's a tough thing to know, but that's also something that I'm trying to learn to accept. I did wanna mention, just since the shuttle's been brought up several times, it is in there that you don't have to have your own shuttle. Shared shuttle services is definitely something we support and encourage. So hopefully that will make costs a lot more reasonable for HOAs. And certainly those ones that are in town and, you know, within walking distance, we would anticipate that you would use town services. I mean, we've had a real staffing issue, so we're not, you know, running the trolley. And so there's some of that, that hopefully you guys can provide that service for the customers and visitors. And that will help reduce traffic and congestion in town, which is another reason that we have been working towards this measure. I just, I did wanna just echo one other thing and that is that, you know, 50% of our licenses, over 50% of our units in town have short vacation rental licenses. I'm trying. And, and that's just, that's a lot of licenses and it's, you know, it's worked well for us for a long time. And we obviously wanna continue to make sure that that works well for people who are coming and visiting here and that they have a great visitor experience. And part of that balance is definitely the, all the additional employee units that we're building, you know, with help from the short-term rental or from the vacation rental licenses. And I think there are lots and lots of good things going on that are just gonna continue to make this town stronger. So, I appreciate everybody for coming out tonight and thank you to staff and for all the time that you've put in.
Thanks, Kelly. Yeah, thank you all for being here and being respectful. I, I agree with pretty much everything you guys have said. Thanks for all the hard work on this. A couple of things, I, you know, I would love to table this and just continue to work on this over the next six to 12 years. And, but the, the truth of the matter is, the minute we get to pass this, this will open 200 some licenses up in Overlay 1. And you may think that's unfair that Overlay 1 gets that, but that, you know, that with the way this is structured, that automatically creates a ton of sales opportunities for the real estate community. And multiple realtors have come to me and said, could you please just move this thing along and then, you know, work on stuff later? And I'm good with that. I mean, I, I have sat up in this chair for long enough that I know that we do polish stuff as we go. And it may not be perfect and it rarely is, but we do wanna get something in the books so we can open those licenses up. And then Zone 2 can start to sell stuff because it's pretty much a, you know, 50% one-for-one swap. So, like Jeffrey said, you know, most of us own in Zone 3. I don't think it's gonna affect the, I own in Zone 3, have a house that I built there. I don't have an STR on it and I do not think that it's gonna do anything to my property values. I truly believe that. And there are plenty of realtors, many of whom didn't show up tonight, because if you're not against something, you rarely show up to speak in favor of it, that agree with that sentiment, that there are other things driving the market. There's a 20% decrease in the market just down in Denver right now. That has nothing to do, Denver and Colorado Springs, that has nothing to do with, with what we're doing on vacation rental ordinance tonight. So, I, I think it's important that we, we keep some of this stuff in, in line. I would like to look at the Woods Manor thing and see exactly where that is on the map with a more blown-up map, because if they do have some of their property in Zone 1, I, I would like to have a look at that. I think that Woods Manor folks made an excellent point. I'm also really curious about where we drew the line in the historic district, especially Andrea's comments about, about South French and being on the block with the laundromat and the church. So I, I wanna make sure that we didn't, we didn't draw a funky line there, so I'd be happy to look at that. I'm also okay with a delay on the shuttle. I get that with the thing, either if, whether it's going to be using a shuttle from a, from a, from a association. You're still gonna have to pay for it. So I'm okay with a, I don't even know, a year, give them a year to get that shuttle thing worked out. I also would like to honor what Jan said about the 60 units and putting them into, one is fine. When you, when you sit in these, in these meetings, it does seem like everybody thinks what we're doing is wrong. But you're not the only people that we hear from. And I sincerely hope you believe me. I talked to, honestly, for the amount of time this job is supposed to take, it takes a hell of a lot more than that. With the number of people that I have had coffee with that now aren't in the room because part of their stuff got resolved, so they're not here. Or they feel that this is the right thing to do, so they don't show up. You know, Jeffrey's been getting texts. We get texts from, from friends who are realtors that, you know, oh, sorry I couldn't be there, but, you know, I agree with what you guys are saying. Well, you know, thank, thanks for that. But, so there's a lot of people that we have been listening to. I don't want you to think that, that you're the only voice in the community that has spoken to us. There are, there are a lot of people. I've, we have all had tons of interactions, you know, either, either on the trails or with serious sit-downs with people. People from Andrew's office, I've sat down with a bunch of them. I mean, all of us have done, done the work. So, I think it's important to move this thing along tonight. I think we need to open those licenses up in Zone 1. Get some stuff done in Zone 2. I would like to see these few tweaks. And as we go forward, I hope we can do something with 30.5 and, and some of the things in 10, so.
Can we, with that? Can we, so if we were gonna make a change for second reading on adding 60 units into Zone 1, do the majority of you wanna see that change on second reading? All right. And would you like to also see language in there that would delay the requirement for a shared shuttle service? They have to implement, have it in service or implement it a year after the effective date or something?
I'm okay with that. Fall of 23.
Two years if they get an electric shuttle.
More than that to get an electric shovel, shuttle.
It's true. I have to order it yesterday.
And Mary, I will do my. And Mary, I will do my best to use vacation rental instead of the three-letter word.
And then Eric, you're suggesting that those, the Woods Manor and the French Street, we take a look at that before second reading.
I'd like to look at it before center.
And that would just be a small tweak.
I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to see a more refined version of the map and to find out exactly where those are and where we, where we cut those. So I don't, I don't know how we do that, but Rick can, Rick can handle that.
I'm okay with that.
Everybody good with that? And with that, is there a motion?
First reading, we will pass Council Bill number 28, series 2022, of the title which has been read into the record.
Second, there is a motion and a second, any further discussion from council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Bergeron. Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Okay, we have other, another first reading. This is Council Bill number 29, series 2022. This is an ordinance reorganizing Title IV, Chapter One, repealing regulations, the accommodation units and replacing those provisions in a companion bill entitled An Ordinance Amending the Accommodation Unit License Regulations to Establish Mapped Areas Based on the Underlying Land Use Characteristics of the Town and in connection therewith, Setting Limits on the Concentration of Licenses by Mapped Area and Establishing Fines. Kirsten.
Mayor Council, this is just a companion bill that cleans up some other areas that are related, but no policy changes. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you. Anyone in the, anyone wish to ask a question of staff on this cleanup bill? Now, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading of Council Bill number 29? No, public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
First reading, I move you past Council Bill number 29, series 2022, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes, we have a resolution this evening, it's Resolution Number 15, series 2022. This is a resolution approving grant application with the Bureau of Reclamation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. The Town of Breckenridge Public Works Water Division has submitted an application with the Bureau of Reclamation for a water meter upgrade project. As part of the application process, the attached resolution will authorize the town manager to enter into the agreement. The project will retrofit meters with advanced metering infrastructure, which is an integrated system of water meters that enables two-way communication between meter endpoints and utilities.
Thank you, James. Any questions for James? You know, and one in the public wish to comment on this resolution this evening? And the public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
I move you past Resolution Number 15, series 2022. A resolution approving grant applications with the Bureau of Reclamation.
There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman. Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes.
Planning Commission decisions, is there any call-ups this evening? The Planning Commission decisions of August 2nd, seeing non-Planning Commission decisions stand as presented. We have the CMC Housing Courtesy Review Hearing. Yeah.
Evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Sarah Crump, Planner One for the record. Before you for public hearing this evening is the proposed Colorado Mountain College Student Housing Development Phase Two. Per the signed 2007 MOU between the Town of Breckenridge and CMC, staff conducts a limited courtesy review for projects on the CMC campus. And CMC takes our review and any comments from this public hearing under consideration? The final jurisdiction and any decisions for design are actually dictated by the state of Colorado, which governs the construction of public school facilities. This application proposes one three-story multi-unit housing building to be constructed at 107 Dennison Plaza Road. The proposed building is to be identical to the Phase One housing building on the same site that was previously reviewed and recommended by the council. This building will be 23,044 square feet with 33, 36 units, including 24 studios and 12 two-bedroom units. The building will be completed as a joint partnership between the Town of Breckenridge, Summit County, and Colorado Mountain College. And one difference I want to point out between the Phase One and Phase Two applications is that the project now includes 12 EV chargers to be installed in the shared parking area that's of 74 spaces. Staff and the Planning Commission are generally pleased with the design of this multi-unit building. We made some minor suggestions for improvements to make the building and site more livable for residents, and those have been relayed to the applicant. And per the MOU, the council will hold this public hearing and will make a decision on this project in a non-quasi-judicial form. Therefore, this project does not need to have a passing point analysis per the development code. The vote to approve this project does not set any precedent for future projects that will be reviewed by the Planning Commission or the Town Council. So however, planning, a point analysis was conducted in the project. It's a passing score of zero points and the Planning Commission recommended 6-0 that the Town Council vote to approve this project. Thank you for hearing, we can open the public comment or I'm here to answer any questions. And I believe Dave Asklin is, he's still here? On behalf of CMC.
All right, any questions for Sarah?
Sarah, what's that? Oh, did you go?
No, he said no. You can.
I, there was discussion about that the Planning Commission suggested that the two buildings didn't look exactly alike. Did you, have you guys gotten any info back on that?
They haven't come to a final decision on colors, but yes, that was a suggestion from the Planning Commission to make them more differentiated.
I agree with that comment, but I do think it looks terrific. And I appreciate that you definitely borrowed some from, from some, you know, architectural examples in town. And I think that's great because I think it looks really good.
Any other questions? Any questions for Dave, since he's here?
Dave, did you want to say?
Anything?
Yeah, I just figured you've been sitting here, I want to make sure you.
I'll just say thanks again for your support and yeah. And we are open to discussion on the color we are looking at, that we just haven't made a final decision at this point.
You, Dave.
Dave, well, thank you for taking the initiative to do this. Are you guys considering any bike store? I know you're a bike guy. And I knew you said you had surveys that didn't really sound like it was a priority, but are you, are you considering that?
Options at this point, like I, like we talked about it, the Planning Committee or the Planning Commission, that was not what students were asking for in kind of the priority list. There are spaces in the unit that they could store their bikes, which if it's a higher-end bike, that's more likely what they will do.
Right.
And so we do have lockable storage units in some of our portfolio of housing. And so students could have access to that and we could explore in the future other storage options.
Okay, thanks.
What else? Dave, thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we're going to open a public hearing on this. Anyone in the public wish to comment on CMC's new, newest building? If that, the public hearing is closed, is there a motion?
I move, you know, I move we agree with CMC to provide a, provide.
Why don't you do it?
To approve the Colorado Mountain College Student Housing Development PL 2022-0299, located at 107 Dennison Plaza Road with attached findings.
Let me show off.
Second, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Bergeron. Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Let's see, we did report a manager and staff, report to the councils, any other, other, other matters this evening from the council?
I just hope there is a security camera in the topsoil section that James is in charge of. Because I, I just question other people could be taking advantage of it, so.
You've been stealing topsoil? And with that, we are adjourned.